If you can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is our chaplain here? Tom Jones, please, our police chaplain? If you can remain standing for our invocation.
Let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the city council members, Lord, and, Lord, we thank you for all those that are in attendance today, and, God, we ask that you breathe upon this service or this council meeting tonight, Lord, that you'll have your hand in everything that goes on, and, God, there are a few things that are happening tonight and some requests that were made of me, Lord, and, Lord, I ask that you hear our petitions. You know our hearts, and, God, we ask that you just see to those needs and that you'll fill this place with your presence and allow peace to fall upon everyone here. And, God, we thank you for the Police Department, Lord, and, Lord, we ask that you give some guidance and direction to those that are in the administration now, Lord, and, Lord, the positions that need to be filled. God, I ask that you'll have your hand in that. And we thank you for the Fire Department, for the work that they do, Lord, and we thank you so much for them, the Fire Authority, Lord, and, Lord, those that are in charge of all that, we ask that you watch over them as well. And, God, we thank you again for putting your servants here in this council, Lord, and have your way with them. We pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
You may be seated. Let me call on Councilmember Solario to do the first presentation to the River View
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite up some of the board members and leaders of the River View Neighborhood Association. Matilde de Santiago Barros, Anna Gallardo, and Jessica Mejia, and finally, Elsie Robles, please come on up. As you all know, every... Yes, let's give them a round of applause. I'm very proud of our city of Santa Ana, and in our city, we have over 50 outstanding neighborhoods, and every strong neighborhood has strong neighborhood leaders, and so you're seeing some right now, and I'm really proud of their work, and I want the council to recognize them. Some of the general accomplishments of the association is that, you know, they meet often and keep up with all the communications. They also have active newsletters, email programs, and also are on the Nextdoor app. I think many of you know I'm very active myself on Facebook and Twitter and haven't made it to Nextdoor yet, but I will, and they're very active there, and that's how they get information, troubleshoot issues, and promote events. They also organize and host their own Fourth of July neighborhood celebrations and a variety of other social events throughout the year. They have interactive quarterly neighborhood meetings and provide a variety of resources to their residents. They also organize neighborhood cleanup events with dumpsters twice a year, always making the neighborhood look good. And I'm really, again, just proud of this neighborhood and their leaders, and so let's give them a big round of applause for making that community so nice. And let's have one of the representatives say some words.
Hello, my name is Matilde de Santiago Barros, and I want to say thank you to Councilmember in the City Council and our neighbors, also our neighborhood and community. We actually reactivated this neighborhood association five years ago, and all those activities that Councilmember mentioned, it's a way to engage our neighborhood into matters that impact our community and our neighborhood. So it's gaining momentum, so we're really proud of that. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite up some of the organizers with the downtown Santa Ana Farmer's Market. Hopefully, we have Sonora Ortiz. I see her coming up, and I'm not sure if Ralph Montez or Richard Espinacho are here, but we have certificates as well, but we do have Sonora Ortiz. Let's give her a round of applause. You know, we have the most lovely Farmer's Market, and, you know, it's now every Sunday, and I'll have Sonora to speak more about the activities there and what we do, but when I was previously on the City Council, we had started another Farmer's Market, and, you know, some time has passed, but we have new leaders that have taken that baton and are doing so much great work, so I wanted to recognize Sonora and the market. The downtown Santa Ana Farmer's Market is held every Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the downtown. It's at the corner parking lot, really the promenade area of the Artist Village, directly in front of the Cal State Fullerton Grand Central Arts Center. They're by the fountain, there's a promenade. We have local farmers, they sell their fresh, local-grown produce, so it's local businesses, local growers, local farmworkers that are part of this. Farmer's Markets, as you might know, exist worldwide and tend to reflect local economy and the local culture. Here, our Farmer's Market has partnerships with local farms such as Gospel Swamp Farm at the Heritage Museum of Orange County, which is here in Santa Ana, as you know, as well as artisans that are based out of the Easton kitchens at Fourth Street. We also have some cooperatives of some Latina immigrant women and a number of other great folks there. They're always innovating as well, and the Farmer's Market recently launched their EBT Market Match Program. They were awarded a two-year federal grant and are so excited to share this opportunity with the community. With that, when you visit the downtown Santa Ana Farmer's Market info booth and swipe your EBT card, you will receive an additional $10 match for free. Fifteen, so it's already grown already, an extra, you know, $15 match for free, and no one has higher standards for quality produce than those that prepare our food locally and those that organize this market. So don't be surprised when you go and see some outstanding food, some nuts, some fresh doughnuts, fresh coffee, again, all locally grown food. It's all outstanding and excellent. I know I've been there often, and we in part have such a great Farmer's Market there because of the leadership of Sonora. So let's give her a big round of applause.
I just want to thank, of course, Councilmember Solario and the rest of the council and everyone here. I hope to see you all at the market one of these Sundays. Like you said, it's 10 to 2. And just, of course, thanking all of our customers and vendors and my fellow board members who weren't able to make it.
Let's give her another big round of applause. I do want one more item covered, though. You know, the promenade area is fairly large, we have a lot of great vendors already. Speak a little bit more about the type of vendors that are there, and if we're looking for other vendor types, what they are, so that we can maybe get some additional interest, and then mention your website or your Facebook address.
So currently, we have, as mentioned, quite a few local farms. We're always looking for more local growers, even backyard growers. We can help you get your certification to sell at the market. And we also work with different local food artisans. We have salsa vendors, nitro coffee vendors, the whole gamut. So if you make something and you're here, you can contact us, and we will help you get your health certificates and everything else. We're the dtsafarmersmarket.com or info@dtsafarmersmarket.com, and you can always just come visit at the market, and we can help you out with all that information.
Thank you so much on behalf of the mayor and city council.
I'm going to call on Mayor Protem Martinez to do the next two presentations. The first is recognizing National Bike Month.
Yes, Mayor, I'm actually going to ask them both to come up, and I also see Paul Martin here with OCTA, so please join us. Natalie, Dolores, Belinda, and Marlin from Caltrans. So as these amazing individuals come up and the great work that they do throughout Orange County, May is National Bike Month, and so I wanted, you know, every year, I've been recognizing the Orange County Transportation Authority, our city, for the great work that we've been doing in active transportation, but this time around, I also wanted to make sure that we recognize some really great partners that the city has had through a grant called the OC Pitch, and as well, Caltrans, they just moved their headquarters here in Santa Ana, and we also wanted to recognize them and welcome them to Fourth Street here in Al Camino in Santa Ana, so let's give them a round of applause. We always want Caltrans as our friend. And some of the developers up here are agreeing. So, "May," as I mentioned, is National Bike Month, which biking improves overall health, reduces air pollution, and conserves energy. A lack of physical activity plays a leading role in raising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, so bicycling and walking really provides our children, our families, another alternative so they can get around within their daily routine. And we all know here in the city of Santa Ana, we have a lot of our residents that walk and also bike, and so it's just a great partnership that we have with the Alliance of Orange County and also, you know, OC Pitch. And so what I'm going to do, because I want to read some of the great partnerships that we've had at the very end, but I wanted to ask Dolores, because I don't want to steal the thunder, for her just to talk about the partnership that we've had with OC Pitch and the city of Santa Ana, and really the important role that they have been playing with our city staff. And I don't see Cory. Is Cory out here in the audience, our Active Transportation Coordinator? He's not, but he's also built great relationships with all these individuals up here, and wanting to thank Cory, who is our Active Transportation. With that, Dolores, please join us up here and share some words about the partnership.
So I'm with Community Action Partnership of Orange County, and it's really my privilege to represent the Pitch Partnerships, which is funding from CDC for the partnerships to improve community health, and we have partners, part of them are here. We have OCTA, we have the Orange County Healthcare Agency, who helped us write the proposal. We're also partners with Orange County Department of Ed, the Santa Ana Unified School District. UCI is doing some evaluation on the interventions, and as Michelle mentioned, all of this was led in Santa Ana by Cory Wilkerson, who's your Active Transportation Coordinator. And one of our goals was to increase walking and biking in Santa Ana. We knew that if we worked together, and we also have community-based organizations like Kid Healthy, Latino Health Access, Santa Ana Active Streets, Kid Works, they all partnered together to increase walking and biking in Santa Ana to improve health outcomes. I also wanted to give recognition to the Santa Ana City Council because they've done some groundbreaking work with Vision Zero, and not only have they supported active transportation, but they've really looked at the issue of safety, and your commitment to safety has really been a driving force, because we know that we don't just want people to walk and bike, we want them to walk and bike safely. And I think with this partnership, with all 10 of us working together, that we can make safe walking and biking the norm in Santa Ana. So I really want us to celebrate Bike Month and go out, and there's lots of activities, and Michelle's going to talk about, I guess, a few of the interventions that we did do.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dolores, and then I will present you guys with the proclamation with a lot of wheres, which I won't get into, but just wanted just to state, you know, really the partnership and the funding that you probably have seen out in the community, installing 46 bike racks in the downtown area, installing a walk path in the downtown area with markers on the ground indicating the distance walks. If you've been in the downtown, you've seen those little markers, it comes from them. Enhancing nine intersections to encourage and promote safe physical activity and active transportation, installing bike lanes and green Chevrons and bicycle stencils around the roadway to alert travelers to be aware of share the road with motorists and bicyclists. So how many of you have seen those green lanes, right? I remember when they first came about, everyone was asking our public works staff and even me, why is there green painted on the street? We don't understand what is going on. Why would somebody paint green? And so that's one of the major reasons, but I'm not going to go into all the other details because I do want to provide the proclamation, but also, before I provide the proclamation, I wanted to bring Paul Martin up here, who's the Active Transportation Coordinator, to also share some things, and he doesn't know that I'm bringing him up here, but I have to tell you that the work that has been done in Santa Ana and across Orange County would not happen if there wasn't a collaborative effort, and another group is missing, which is SCAG, but I'll tell you that the way we have partnered together has really made a significant difference here in Santa Ana and throughout Orange County. And I just wanted Paul to just share that it is Bike Month, and I know Marlin is going to be sharing what Caltrans is doing for Santa Ana, but there are other activities in Orange County, wanting to thank the OCTA Board as well for bringing Paul Martin as an Active Transportation Coordinator, which is really big for Orange County. Paul?
Hi, everyone. So, yes, as mentioned, Paul Martin and I work at the Orange County Transportation Authority, so my focus is on improving bicycling and walking throughout the county. We're always pleased to talk about Santa Ana as a success story. The organization, the city, City Council decided to go ahead and spend the resources to have a coordinator, so that's the other person, my peer here at the city, Cory Wilkerson. So together, Cory Wilkerson and the city and the community have pursued and won over $30 million in grants for infrastructure to improve Santa Ana, to help better accommodate people walking and biking throughout the community. My role is to help other cities throughout the county as well. Frankly, Santa Ana has a lot of energy behind it, so I'm more of a cheerleader. A lot of it is going very well because of that dedication, so we use Santa Ana as a good illustration of what other cities could do as well. So also at OCTA, we promote Bike Month activities. We've got those posted on our website. The thing I would want to promote to everybody also is, in the month of May, all month, we encourage you to ride your bicycle in some way and get out there and explore, but also you can ride MetroLink trains free with your bicycle for the week of May 15, so that work week, the 15th through the 19th, everyone is encouraged, go ahead and take a try on the train. You could just go down to Tustin, you could go all the way down to San Clemente and be able to ride and have an opportunity to experience it for free. So that's my pitch for you to go ahead and try it out this month, and have a great month of May. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul, very much, and now Dolores and Belinda and Natalie, please join me. So the proclamation, I'm not going to do all the wheres because I've read a lot of it, so May is National Bike Month, which again promotes bicycling as a means of transportation and recreation. Biking improves the overall health, reduces air pollution, and conserves energy. So whereas, Community Action Partnership of Orange County is committed to active transportation and has partnered with other organizations to sponsor related events. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, do hereby proclaim that the month of May is National Bike Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Marlin, please join me up here. So, Marlin, I'm not going to go into this, I want you to give all the talking points on Caltrans hosting this Bike to Work event, which is Tuesday, May 16, so I'll take it away.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Once again, my name is Marlin Regis Ward. I work with Caltrans District 12, Orange County. I am the Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator, and this is a wonderful event for myself and the agency. I'm thankful to be here and being recognized on behalf of May's Bike Month. Recently, the state of California has been really investing a lot of money into the Active Transportation Program, and it's been really great that the city of Santa Ana has received a large share of money for improving the streets and making them safer for walking and bicycling, and that's such a great thing for not only the city but for the county as a whole. It's really put in the spotlight on the city of Santa Ana. And once again, I just want to thank the council and the mayor for recognizing Caltrans, and I want to also mention that there is a Bike to Work Day at Caltrans, and it's a chance to ride with the director and talk with him on some of the latest issues. We'll be riding from the Caltrans District Office, the new office, which is just across the freeway on the corner of Cabrillo Park and Fourth Street, and we'll be riding around downtown Santa Ana, so everyone is welcome to join, and I'd like to invite you all to that. Thank you.
And what time does it start, Marlin?
It starts at 7:30, and we'll be riding out at 8 o'clock sharp in the morning on Wednesday, or, excuse me, Tuesday, May 16.
Fantastic. So let me give you the certificate of recognition awarded to Caltrans and recognition of your National Bike to Work Day event. Congratulations.
Thank you, Michelle.
Of course.
Juan Vegas is going to make the next presentation.
Chief Henry. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Juan Vegas, I'm also your representative on the Orange County Fire Authority Board. Thank you, Chief James Henry, who's with us today. Wanted to say real quick that this proclamation is for the drowning prevention campaign that they're doing every year. Dave Thomas, who was the chief for the Fire Department for three years prior to us switching over to the Orange County Fire Authority back in 2012, he's not here today, so I have Chief James Henry. He's still with the Fire Authority, it's been about five years for him. So the summer months are coming, a lot of people go to the pools, the beach, and all that, and they're always around water because, you know, it's summertime, and drownings do occur. In 2016, there was three fatal drownings for children under five, and there was 26 non-fatal incidents. As for adults, in 2016, we had 16 fatal drownings on adults and 12 non-fatal. So please, watch your children, remember safety comes first, do not swim alone, and if I can ask Chief James here to share a few words regarding this, thank you on the campaign. Thank you, sir.
May is the start of the drowning prevention that the Orange County Fire Authority has partnered with other facilities and agencies in the county, and from May through October, we are advocating drowning prevention, and you can find more information on the Orange County Fire Authority's website on behalf of the fire chief, Jeff Bowman, and the Division Chief for Division 6, Randy Black. I want to thank you guys. One of the programs that's out there is our water watcher tags, and we're asking everyone that when you're at the water site, a lake, a river, a beach, or even in your local community pools or your backyard pools, is that you designate somebody to watch the water. And I'm going to leave these tags here with you, sir, and the council, and basically, the tag basically explains in English and Spanish that you are to designate somebody to watch the water, because people think that by having somebody's going to drown, they're going to make a lot of noise, and in contrast, actually, people drown without a sound, they just slip underneath the water. Last year in this county alone, we had 106 drowning events, and, you know, we want to get that number down to zero, and majority of those events, if not all of them, could have been prevented if somebody would have been paying attention and watching the water and observing somebody have a problem. So it doesn't just happen to children. About 29% of all drowning events occur over the age of 50, and we think people that are older, you know, aren't going to be susceptible to drowning. And so we ask never to swim alone, always have a partner, and always designate somebody to watch the water. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So with this proclamation, we kick off the public safety campaign on drowning prevention.
Thank you, Juan. So now, our mayor had to leave, and so will be taking over the meeting here, so I'm going to go to close session and report. Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report out of close session?
We do have two reportable items, Mayor Protem. In the first case, in the fraudist case, the city council voted on a vote of 4 to 0 with Polito, Tina Harrow, and Benavides absent to approve a settlement of $39,079. With respect to the second item on Bristol Street Project Coalition properties, on a 6 to 0 vote with Mayor Polito abstaining due to a conflict of interest, the council gave direction to settle this matter. That's all the reportable action.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Next, we're moving to public comments. These are items that are on the agenda. This is a time and place for the public to address the city council on consent calendar and regular business items. If you would like to address the council on any matter within our jurisdiction but not on the agenda, we will consider those comments after we handle items on the agenda. So we do have a couple of cards, and I'm going to call on our first speaker, and that
Good evening. I'm here to speak on 19L, which is the Civilian Oversight Board. I have a document here from the ACLU and also other organizations that support this, well, this document, how we should have this oversight board. So I'd like to present it first, I'd like to present it to the city attorney, if I And second of all, I'd like to speak also on 25F. This is to do with the body, the body cameras on police officers, which I'm happy that this is happening, but also I'd like to look at it with, well, how does public access going to happen with this? Is public going to be able to see the, actually see the footage? And also, what happens to officers who turn off the cameras when an incident happens or before an incident happens, and they decide to turn off the camera? So these are issues I think that should be addressed, and also I would recommend that we have an ad hoc committee to be part of this talk. And thank you.
Thank you. Robert Oliver, followed by Jackie Cordova.
Good evening, Honorable Councilmembers and staff. Steve Salgado, name ring a bell? He was shot and killed in January, running away from a police officer. Brendan Sontag, that ring familiar? He was fired by a police chief because he committed criminal misconduct involving in the sky-high raid, petty theft, and vandalism, smashing the videotapes that caught him red-handed doing what he did. We have a personnel commission that reviewed that decision and decided to reinstate him. I don't know about you, but if you get caught stealing at work, you're fired, end of story, no review, nothing. And now this officer is back on the force. I've seen that, I've heard this item before this council several times, and I've heard we have enough oversight already, cops don't have to testify, what are you going to approve? Well, what we have isn't working. What we have has Brendan Sontag back on the police force. That's not right. I don't think anybody here can defend the guy. Anybody else out there gets caught stealing at their job, they're gone, and this guy's still wearing a badge. So as you're considering this oversight, don't ask yourself, do we have already enough oversight? Ask yourself, do we have the right oversight? Because, and also think about Steve Salgado and his family. His family's going to make a claim, the city attorney, Madam City Attorney's going to evaluate it after all the evidence comes in and is going to make a recommendation for you, and it's probably going to be the risk of liability is X, and we're going to have to pay Y. For an officer who already was involved in a previous shooting, Brendan Sontag, coming back to him, the city's already paid $2.5 million in payouts for other police force cases. What we have isn't working. What's wrong with citizen review of any of this? Whether the police officer decides to participate or not... Whether the police officer decides to participate or not, that's his right not to, but it's also our right to review these things. So what are you afraid of? I don't know. I really do hope you act on this and that you do pass some form of citizen review, because what we have out there right now is not working. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Ms. Cordova. Ms. Jackie Cordova, followed by Alan Van der, Van Dort.
Hello, council. And to our beautiful community of Santa Ana. I am speaking on item number 19L. Please forgive my voice, I've been preaching and cheering kids on that have been breaking piñatas también. I am here today representing two-thirds of our citizens of this city who do not have a voting voice. The silent majority is suffering out here on the streets. Our citizens are not against community policing. In fact, we want to work with our police department to make all of our lives easier and so that we may flourish. All we are asking for is our resources to be used for the majority. And to the benefit of our youth in our community. We will not stand for our kids to be the brunt of incarceration any longer. Corruption in our city looks like our children being executed in our streets. Corruption in our city looks like my 19-year-old son going to get his car washed to bury his friend. This is not normal. Corruption looks like kids shooting one another because they are so angry at all the injustice that they have seen for so long, angry because of the little hope for their future. Corruption looks like parents being detained and arrested while taking their kids to school. Corruption looks like shuttered businesses in our city while tripping on the sidewalks because they are in such disrepair. Other local downtown areas have found a solution for not charging visitors for parking. Charging for parking doesn't seem like a big deal, but to us, it's killing our local businesses, you guys. We are asking that you do not pay for your votes, that you do the right thing for our city. We are amazing, we are resilient, but we are repeating the same tragedies that we went through when our kids were our age. Good people are leaving this city in an exodus. Corruption, I'm sorry, where am I? We're asking that you don't pay for your votes.
Ms. Cordova, can you please conclude?
Yes, 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 I'm sorry. So for, we don't want 23 years to go in vain, we want to recall our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordova. Mr. Van De Vort, followed by Kevin Coleman. Alan, followed by Kevin Coleman.
Oh, good evening. My name's Alan Van de Vort. This is with respect to number 25C. There's a city parking lot of about 95 spaces at 2129 North Main Street. I owned the building, catty-corner to that, at 2202 North Main Street, and actually pretty much the block all the way to Santa Clara. And at one time, the city, when Main Street was narrow, they used to have parking in front of my building, and then with Buffalo, which is perpendicular to Main Street, it used to be a two-way street until they had this southbound five on-ramp. So they took away the parking on both sides of the street on Buffalo, and which left my building, basically no parking. On the way over here, I counted the cars that were in the parking lot, 72 cars were parked in that parking lot, and generally, there are at least 60 cars parked in that parking lot throughout the day. So I was over there the other day, and I followed a number of people. I was curious why so many people are parking in that public parking lot. There's no other public parking in the area, and they're going all the way to Broadway, the number of places, state process, transitional age youth, mentally disturbed youth. They're going to Orange County Children's Therapeutic Arts for at-risk children. These are all the way to Broadway, they walk all the way. It's a parade of people in and out of that parking lot. They're going to Integrity House, which serves adults with mental health disabilities and brain injuries and other disabilities. Hollybrook Senior Living, which is on Bus Street, the next street in the other direction, they use that parking lot. Schools First Federal Credit Union, which has a tremendously large parking lot, they're going, they park in the same park, like 2129, they're using that parking lot as well. So I talked to them too. And then, of course, my building at 2202, which is a makeup salon, and this particular building, art gallery that has overflow for, you know, events at the art gallery, there is going to be no place for all of these people to park, and it's going to be a difficult situation over there because there is no public parking. So you're removing that parking lot out of the system and leaving basically a number of buildings and businesses that will not have any place to park.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Coleman, followed by PJ Jangharree.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for allowing us to come here tonight and speak. I'm speaking on 25C. As the developer of this site and looking to acquire that from the city of Santa Ana, I'd first like to thank Michelle Martinez for taking the time, a long time back, and taking a large group of us out and showing us the real estate that this city owns and other sites that have not been developed in the city. And to those benefits, they're now being developed, and there's new businesses coming into the city for that. This site, we're looking at putting in a hotel that would allow the local businesses and the Bowers Museum, the downtown legal council that comes here to the courthouses, we're providing the space for them to have residency here during their week when they're here working. We're looking to develop this to create an environment that the north end of the city has not had the benefit of having for years, and it's just adding to the growth of Main Street and the community around it. I thank you all for allowing us to look at this and invest our funds into this city, into the growth of this city. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. PJ, followed by Dave Elliott.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable city council members. My name is PJ Jangharree, and along with my wife, Neda, we are here to voice our strongest support for the proposed hotel development on the site of the city parking lot on Bain and Fly Freeway. For the past three years, we have come to witness the abuse of the city parking lot by a few thoughtless individuals from auto mechanics, auto paint and body workshops, to a gathering place for drug users, prostitution and gang activities. One can easily witness their disregard for environment in the neighborhood with scattered remnants of auto parts, oil spills and drug paraphernalia scattered all over the parking lot. These activities have manifested its way toward our properties with weekly gang-related activities and tags and homeless encampment. We believe the development of the hotel project will rip the area of undesirable negative activities while revitalizing the Art Museum District and showcasing Main Street as a gateway to our beautiful city. In closing, we hope you agree with our recommendations and vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dave Elliott, followed by Jonathan Marr.
Members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we're in support of this project. We think that this is economic development, positive use of the land, and the property that's going to be there, which I believe is a Hampton Inn, I don't know, I'll ask the question, how many of you stayed at a Hampton Inn before? It's a good property, it's one of the top, thank you, Michelle, it's one of the top hotel properties in the country, and I think this will really showcase, as just the previous speaker has said, the entrance into our great city on Main Street. It's a great complement to the Bowers, to the Discovery Cube, that end of Santa Ana's entrance. So we're in support of this project, and we hope that you will approve it and we move ahead, and it's also about jobs and some tax revenue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan is our last speaker for items on the consent calendar.
Thank you, members of council. Jonathan Mayer, Main Place Mall Centennial Real Estate. I also wanted to speak on, in support of 25C. I think the city identified this parcel of land for potential development for a hotel quite a while ago. There's definitely a need for something like that on the north end. I as well echo the sentiments that this parking lot at times has uses that are not positive for the city, and I feel that this is a great property that's posed for development, and I think for economic development, this is a great project. I think we're courting developers to do great projects in Santa Ana. We bring them to the table, and I think we need to be creative about making those deals work here in the city. And if we can't make those deals work, utilizing the creativity of the city staff and the planning agency, I think these developers will go to other cities. So I think this is a great project, it's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring much-needed revenue to the budget, and I'm definitely in support of this project.
Thank you, Jonathan. We're now going to bring it back to the consent calendar items. I'm chairing this meeting, so it's kind of difficult for me to pull items first, because as you all know, if you attend these council meetings, I want to pull a large amount, and I do, but before that, I want to maybe move forward on these items, because we have some continue items. We have a continue item on 11A, which is the mobile vending. We also have an agenda item, 25J, which is interim city manager contract, and then as well, we have council member Sarmiento, who has to abstain on item 25C. So these are some of the homework, and Madam Clerk, well, we have...
Madam Mayor Protem, and 19K as well.
19K.
I'll be recusing myself on that item as well for an economic interest, and so both those items.
So before I, you know, try to do my best here, Madam Clerk, do we also have to excuse our mayor?
No, because, no, because he has been present for a portion of the meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. How about for housing?
When we get...
For housing, when we do open that meeting, yes.
When we get to that point, okay, just want to make sure that we excuse him. So what, I think the best thing, what we should do here is the items that are for continue, let's, if I can get a motion on those items for continuance.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second, just with a question for clarification on 25J. Staff, it would be clerk or council, can address how we are continuing 25J?
The item number 25J is a holding item as an agreement for your proposed interim city manager. What staff would like to ask is that you actually approve this agreement and direct legal counsel as well as staff to negotiate any changes that might be necessary, should the council make or receive a formal acceptance of any offer to come in the next few days, and that would make it possible to move forward quickly on your selection.
So...
So what we're going to do here, then, we will pull 19J right now and possibly if we're able, 25J, if we can vote on that item first, and then we'll go ahead and continue, which the item is, is to continue the mobile vending.
So moved.
I'd also like to mention on item 25J, as well as the closed session on the appointment of the interim, council had previously indicated that you'd want to adjourn both those items to Monday, May 8 at noon, in the event that we need the council to reconvene to address those items.
So do we have to take all of that in one action?
Yeah, you can take, you can take the agreement with the changes noted that I just read into the record, as well as the adjournment in one motion.
So just a, just a suggestion, Madam Mayor Protem, why don't we take that out of order and then go back to the continued items and then any conflicts, I think, and just, let's try not to bundle them all together, we'll get confused. So I'll move the, the item 25J as described by Madam City Attorney.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, motion carries. So next item is the continue item of 11A, which is the mobile vending.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to go to the extensions for Councilmember Sarmiento, which is 19K and 25C.
If we're going to, at this point, are we going to pull items?
He has to recuse himself, so...
It's just a recusal on my part for both, for economic interest.
So if anybody's going to pull those items, we could have that discussion, if not, we have to entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Which, which items were those?
That is the item number 25C and 19K.
I'm wanting to pull 19L, 25C and 25F.
Okay, yeah, we're not there that, we just want to go through the extensions on these two items, and then we're going to go to the rest of the consent calendar.
So I think 25C is one of those that he's...
Yeah, 25C is one of those.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said 25K.
19L, 25C and 25F are the ones that I'm going to be pulling for consideration, I mean, pulling for...
Okay, so we can go ahead and talk about 25C, Councilmember Sarmiento has to recuse himself.
Okay. So if we're going to...
So you, yeah, we have a motion in a second, but you're willing, you're wanting to comment on 25C, correct?
Okay, so we will need the council member to excuse himself.
The council member's going to have to recuse himself, yes.
And just for the record, that just comes from your charter provision due to a campaign contribution.
Thank you. So on this item, I just wanted to thank everyone who did come to address the council, and I know that whenever we're going to consider any type of project, there are always two sides and impacts, and there's oftentimes positive things, and in some cases, things that impact other neighboring properties in this case. Appreciate the neighbor and gentleman who came and addressed us with regard to the parking, potential parking impact issues. Looking back at this parcel, it has not always been a parking lot at one point when the city acquired it, it was something that was, for a temporary period of time, designated parking, and it provided some of that support to the neighboring properties. Although, long-term, looking at the long-term benefits, the city has looked at the opportunities for economic development, that's precisely what we're seeing here tonight, is the opportunity to continue the momentum that we have in the city, the momentum of investment, of job creation, and this has been a project that, a parcel that's been sitting there looking for the right opportunity. And I think tonight, we're seeing that right opportunity to be able to provide hospitality, location, a hotel that would allow for visitors to come and visit our great city, patronize our city, support local business, create local jobs as well. And so, given all of the pros and cons, I think definitely the benefits are very much positive and larger in picture for the long-term future of our city. So given all of that, I'd like to also thank those who are investing and doing the work and create this project, the business community, Chamber and other local businesses who have come out to support this. Thank you for taking your time to do that, and with that, I'm going to be moving in supporting this item.
Great. Any more comment on 25C? We do have a first and second for both the items, 25C and 19K. Yes, Councilmember Solario?
Yes, and with the discussion, I'm not sure that there's clarity that there is a motion in a second, but I did want to pull this item as well. I'd like for us to consider a two-week or four-week continuance on this item. While I do think there's a lot of merit to this development project, I think there's also a lot of merit to the concerns of the public. I know that there are additional steps in, you know, the final development of this project, but if the first action is to sell the land to the developer, I think that really gives maybe too much leverage to the developer at this time and less leverage for the public. I know that although this parking lot has not been there that long, it has been there quite a bit of time, and a number of small businesses and residents have come to rely on it. This business also is in my ward, and I, you know, recently elected to this ward, and I have had already one person come to me to speak about this item, but I know that there are others that would like to have this conversation, and I did begin a conversation with staff about what type of parking, if any, there might be available for the public, and I think I was generally told that there might be future discussions about it, but I'd like to have those discussions, you know, in the near future before the sale of the land. So that is generally my interest, and to the extent that maybe staff can come up and speak to what kind of dialogue there has been with the public about replacement parking, I would like an update. I also, to the extent that staff is prepared today, but if not, the future as well, I know that immediately to the north and the south of the Bowers, there's parking, but I know for a lot of that parking, you have to pay, and so I'm interested in seeing if there might be future shared parking arrangements so that the public or small businesses or others may have an opportunity at a lower or no cost to use that, but if you can maybe address those items, I would appreciate it.
In terms of, thank you, Councilman Solario, and thank you, Mayor Protem, for allowing me to respond. In terms of shared parking or future public parking, there has been no discussion about that. This was not at all something that we were asked to discuss and consider with the... This was not at all something that we were asked to discuss and consider with the developer. This was going to be a simple transfer of property with certain-- A number of requirements that the project needs to be going through the public review process and through the entitlement process. At this point, the proposed concept for the project that is before you is proposing to meet the parking requirements for the hotel. It was never considered, nor were we expected, to have that conversation with the developer and whether or not the city would be participating at all in providing additional public parking. I must say that this site has been for free available for a number of years, and it's common for a lot of cities to put a surface parking lot as a way to basically hold a piece of property. And that's how we have understood it to be so far. If it is the council's desire to have that kind of conversation and discuss potentially the cost of providing public parking as part of this project, that would be something that we would have to get clear direction from the council to continue. Otherwise, our recommendation is to consider this, and if you choose to go forward, we'll start the process of-- Transfer-- The steps towards reviewing of the project, and at that point, you could discuss parking if you'd like. So there are two options for you. You could either stop it at this moment and ask us to go back and have that conversation for providing new public parking, or you could just continue and allow the project to go through the review.
You know, so what I'm hearing you say is that although probably at some of the sunshine and other hearings, you heard the public speak to their need in continued parking. Are you saying that you've never heard from the public--
Well, there has been--
--prior to this that there's interest?
There has been a meeting that the developer held on site, and our staff did go attend. There were a number of issues that-- We got a large group of people actually supporting it, and we did hear some people saying that they're going to lose their parking.
Correct.
That was actually-- And that is still the case. However, that did not-- To us, did not come to a level to raise a red flag and say we should stop this. We thought that we could still continue having the discussion about the parking because we do know there are other things we could do. For example, during the review process, we could discuss with the developer if they could make the parking available for people to use, not free of charge, of course, but then that-- You know, when there's always a lot of parking available in hotel sites that are not being used. We could probably have that kind of conversation or anything else. But at this point, it didn't come out-- The rise to the level to say, "Let's stop it. We can't go further."
For me, when the public says, "We don't want to lose parking. We're using it," that for me is a red flag. Just today, I saw some red flags. I do understand and appreciate in the future, we could talk to the developer about adding additional parking spaces, but if we sell the land to them today, we're strengthening their hand and weakening our hand and the public's hand. And so I'm not saying that I'm not supportive of this project. I'm just saying that we ought to continue this item for two weeks or a month to have those conversations, because I'm not aware that there's any specific deadlines or strong reasons why we need to vote on this tonight as opposed to in two weeks or four weeks. Is there any--
Staff has no objection to continuing. It is up to the pleasure of the city council. You might want to ask the developer if that might cause any issues for them. Otherwise, staff has no issue.
Kevin? I'd like to just interrupt for a second as a matter of process. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
You had a motion from Tina Harold, a second from Benavides.
So the commentary is here. If you'd like to make that as a substitute motion, you're allowed to do that. You need a second.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll vote on the first motion, but I'm going to oppose it because I believe we ought to continue to continue the dialogue.
I would like to add a comment. Thank you, Mr. Bean-- Solorio. So we're going to have a presentation in a little bit about our budget and the circumstances that we face. Here is an opportunity where we've had this parking lot empty for many years. When we talk about economic development, this city council tends to pride itself, or it speaks, but then their actions result in a different matter. They say they're business-friendly, but then sometimes their actions say otherwise. Generating tax revenue for the city is imperative. We have a lot of properties, like the one Mr. Coleman is trying to purchase, that are not on the tax rolls. We're not receiving any kind of property tax. Getting that on the tax rolls is going to generate money for the city of Santa Ana. Not only that, it's also going to generate hotel tax. We have council members up here that want to hire more cops. They want to give more raises. We can't give raises. We can't hire more cops or any other employees if we don't find ways to generate revenue. This is one example moving us in that direction. We have to move forward with an economic development plan if we really want to make this city solvent. And so, you know, I understand Mr. Solorio's concern about parking, but let me be quite honest with you. That's not our responsibility with nonprofits. And just let me just state something now, and I'm very supportive of nonprofits, the faith-based community, and government, essentially. But let me be very clear. None of those entities pay property tax. They are exempt from tax rolls. Here, we're trying to get a private business entity who's going to get on the tax rolls and pay taxes to this community. So we have to find a balance, ladies and gentlemen. And there has to be a balance of bringing economic development so that we can continue to support our police officers, to continue to support our young people. So I'm not sure that we're going to continue this because we need to look at ways to find parking where we have an opportunity to build a partnership with this developer to generate more revenue to the city. And so I'm supportive because I think it's the right direction that we need to take based on our financial situation here today. We can't push or say no to money at this moment in time. Councilman Benavides?
Councilman-- Or Mayor Protam Martinez. We don't always agree on everything, but I appreciate and wholeheartedly agree with your impassioned comments there. We need to be a business-friendly city, and we need to demonstrate that through our actions. I completely understand the need for parking. We're a dense city, and we're a large city, and we need to own the fact that that's the case, and there will always be parking challenges in large cities, and especially cities that are destination cities. You look at any city, Chicago, New York, LA, people continue to go there. Parking is not an issue. It will always be an issue in those cities. We have to recognize the fact that that's just part of our reality. But delaying business and investment in the city is not the way to go. Also, the fact of the matter is, public parking is not a revenue generator. It's actually overhead costs for us, holding costs, maintenance costs, and it's definitely not something that we should be adding more of. In this case, we have an opportunity, again, to be able to generate some jobs for our community, some income, and some revenue. And again, wholeheartedly agree, appreciate your comments, and I'm supporting the item. And perhaps we need to call the question.
Call for the question. Do we have a motion? We have a motion on the table from Councilman Tina Harold and a second from Councilman Benavides. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So three to two.
That was a no.
That was-- I'm assuming it was a no. There's silence. Yes.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we continue this for two weeks. Again, I wasn't speaking in opposition to the project. I just think we owe it to the public to hear their concerns and idea and have more conversations with the staff and the developer about what the options might be. So that's my motion, which is just a modest request for a two-week continuance.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor, please--
I have a question for the city attorney.
Yes, Councilmember Benavides?
Madam Attorney, in this case, with the first vote, what does that do to the item?
In order to take action, under the section of your charter, it requires a majority vote of the membership of the council. The membership is seven. Majority vote would require four votes to approve the item.
Okay. So if the item does not move forward, then do we then have the option to, then at a later date, re-agendize? It's--
We do. I'd also like to remind the council that we didn't turn into an exclusive negotiating agreement on this project, which actually obligated the city to consider this project. So I think we do have an obligation. If the motion to continue is approved, then you can continue the item, but you will have an obligation to consider adoption of this item based on the exclusive negotiating agreement that the council entered into with the developer. Under that agreement, it provided that if the developer met all of the criteria and successfully completed the tasks that were put before him, and that has been confirmed by our economic development staff. I think Mark Morley had done an independent review of that, that we would bring this agreement to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I don't know if Mr. Accret City Manager, if there's any additional comment. I noticed that the economic development manager approached. If there isn't none-- If there aren't any additional comments, then we can--
The only comment that I did want to make in response to Mayor Protam Martinez's comments is that this project has the potential of generating anywhere between $600,000 to $1 million on an annual basis on hotel visitors' taxes. In addition to that, the sale of the land is equivalent to about just over $2 million, which would be coming in technically in '18, '19. So there's many benefits in the approval of this project. And as Madam City Attorney mentioned earlier, the applicant or developer has already met all of the elements as stated in the E&amp;A. But if there's a desire on the city council level to continue the item, to allow for more discussion in terms of parking, we can accommodate for that.
So if I can just conclude my comments, I think we are-- We don't have a full council up here, unfortunately. We are stuck between a rock and a hard place. It is very unfortunate that when business-- Member of the business community, the Chamber, other reputable community and business members come and work so hard and take their time to come before council to support a very clearly positive project for our city, that we would halt it. It sends a very negative message out to the business community that you can't just go through the process. This was something that we brought before. We agreed the exclusive negotiating agreement a long time ago, months back. You can't just go through the process because at the 11th hour, it can potentially be halted and kicked back. And it's just a bad message to send. And I just-- I would hope that the motion would be reconsidered, but otherwise, the public is seeing the evidence of how difficult sometimes it can be to just get an easy, positive project approved in the city of Santa Ana. Just ask them to take note of who is, at the end of the day, blocking and making that difficult. That's my last comment.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides. Mr. Juan Villegas?
Thank you, Mayor Protam Martinez. I just want to state for the record that I am business-friendly. I did speak to Mr. Cortez regarding-- Thank you. Regarding the project, it's a good project. I don't see any harm in waiting two weeks. The council member wants to be thorough about it. That's all for the record. Thank you.
Great. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Coleman, would you like to address us before we make this motion?
Very much so.
You.
I've spent my whole life in the city. I've spent a lot of money in the city. I spend my time in the city because I believe in the city. I sit on the Chamber of Commerce. I sit on the Government Affairs Council. I spend my money here because I believe in this city. When the city approached a group of us and said, "Here are properties that are not being utilized. They're not being looked at. They're just sitting here costing you." This property costs you $185,000 a year on your budget. This property can generate, along with that, up to $1 million in bed tax. We can provide an asset to this community. We have attorneys. We have people that visit this city and can't stay in this city. They leave, and they take their tax dollars and their money to another city because of issues like this. Two weeks doesn't seem like a lot to you, but I have millions of dollars invested. This is a $40 million project that I brought to this city because I believe in this city. I've put my money in this city year after year after year. And yes, I do deal with this situation quite frequently. When I come in front of a council that, because I try to help and support, and then I end up having to hear something like this, "Let's just carry it for two more weeks," it's not your dollars that are being carried. It's the city's money that's being carried. It's everybody's money that's being left on the street, not doing something to produce income for this city. I've reached out to all of you. I've tried to make it-- I've tried to make it so that you understand. Yes, I understand people park in that parking lot, but I also have all the photographs that shows the prostitution, the drug dealing, the gang bangers, all that stuff that goes on in that parking lot at your expense. You pay to clean it up. Not us. Our city, our community pays for all that stuff to go wrong over there. And here, we turn around and try to do something that's good for the city, that brings revenue to the city, and then I get asked to wait two more weeks. The E&amp;A that was spoke about by the attorney was signed almost a year ago. I have done everything required of me. I've brought everything into this city. The city alone has over $200,000 of my money sitting in your coffers to move this project along. And just-- I don't know if you think two weeks means a lot to you, but two weeks to me is a lifetime. And I count every minute of my life very valuably. And to hear this kind of rhetoric go on that hasn't been vetted out, "You gentlemen weren't here. It was a 6-0 vote to approve the E&amp;A, and now we come here for a vote to move on and now sell the property and put $40 million of development into your city, and you want to sit there and say, 'Let's just call it another two weeks.'" Makes no sense to me at all. Sorry.
Self-sustained. Thank you, Kevin. Councilman Tina Harold?
Mr. Coleman, I thank you for your words. I wanted to almost, you know, ask you to not say anymore. I don't even want you to have a little heart attack up there, but I feel your pain. I mean, I'm sitting here quietly, trying to just absorb the arguments. It doesn't make sense to me when we have-- We're facing a deficit. We're facing a deficit in the city, and we keep talking about, "How can we generate more revenue?" I don't-- I think part of it is because some members, including myself, have never been business owners, but I've been at this enough times to know that two weeks is a loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars because people are waiting to work. People are-- You're waiting to put in some more permit fees and get the ball rolling. And at the end of the day, it also stifles your opportunity to open, which then takes away our opportunity to gain revenue. So I just don't understand. I think one of the things that we have to do is we have to make sure that, number one, we do our homework. Number two, we really are empathetic about how hard you've worked and the hoops that you have to go through to actually get to where you're at right now, to then be told to hold off a little bit. So I just want to say that I think-- I mean, we can continue to have this debate, but I think we need to move forward. And my apologies that your blood pressure went up a little bit, but I can assure you that we want to make sure that not only do you build this project, but that you also have the energy for others as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tina Harold. I call on Councilman Solorio, then we're going to call for the question for a substitute motion.
Yeah, just wanted-- Quickly, wanted to address the gentleman that came up. I know two weeks-- You know, it's 14 days. It's real. I know there are holding costs, and there's other items that the staff and you all may worry about. So it's two weeks, but for the public, when they lose those parking spots, it's forever. And I think we heard-- Think we heard staff say that although the issues kind of have come up, they've never really have had a real conversation about other potential opportunities, whether they be shared parking arrangements, where the lots on north or south of the Bowers Museum. As you acknowledged, there's two new council members up here, so we didn't have some of these initial conversations. I know in the Neighborhood Association that I represent, I brought this issue up, and the issue of parking has also come up. But I think we very clearly heard staff saying the issues kind of have risen, and there's no need for-- There's no need for response. The Mayor Protam said, you know, I'd speak, and then we'll continue, and I'd love to follow this conversation with you as well. Again, I'm not saying that I oppose your project. I want to support your project. I want to plan on it, but I want to balance your needs and interests versus the needs and interests of the residents that live in my ward, then balance the needs and interests of the small businesses in my ward. And so I'm just saying, let's have two weeks so that the public can have a seat at the table in this discussion. We're talking about the sale of public land, and hopefully, we will have a vote on this two weeks since the prior motion failed. And again, we'll be back in two weeks, and it's common that we table items for two weeks, four weeks. There was a food truck item on the agenda tonight. That's been tabled for several months now. And so I apologize if this is an inconvenience, but I just feel like I have the obligation to listen to my constituents and the folks that took the time to come here. And again, I've received other requests as well. And again, I've received other requests as well. Again, this is just a respectful conversation that I, I'm very supportive of general developments. I like what you want to do. I just want to make sure that we have appropriate responses and maybe other solutions for your, your, you know, soon-to-be neighbor. So I, I, I thank you in advance for your patience, and in two weeks, we will, we will consider your item.
Thank you, Councilman Solario. If you can just, uh, we have a first and a second to continue the item for two weeks. Please, uh, uh, vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do we continue it?
I'm going to be, uh, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. The next item that Councilman Sarmiento had to recuse himself is 19K, which is the third and Broadway. Do I have a motion and a second?
Move the item.
We have a, a motion on the, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just want to make sure that 19K is just a receive and file. So, uh, moving forward with the rest of the consent calendar, here comes Councilman Benavides, uh, Sarmiento. My apologies, I have you on my mind, Councilman Benavides. Yeah, I do have some items that I would like to pull. 19L, 20A, 20B, 25F, 25H, 25I. Any other items on the agenda that, um, members would like to pull?
I also wanted to pull item 25F, but I, I believe you mentioned that one. That's the
Yes.
...item regarding the body worn cameras. Thank you.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim, if you could also pull 19I?
We don't have any more items, uh, so, uh, excuse me? 19L is, yes, pulled. Yes. Move the rest of the balance. Could I get a motion?
Still move?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So, uh, moving along with the items that were pulled, uh, and I feel really awkward as a chair to having to, having to address all this, so I'm going to start off with 19L. And so I'm not sure if there's any members of, uh, here on this dais that would like to speak on that. I'll let you all speak on that first, and then I'll go last, since I am chairing the meeting.
Question for?
Yes.
Question for the City Attorney. So, uh, thank you for one, Madam City Attorney, for, uh, pulling this information together based on council direction. Uh, as yet, there are a number of different options that have been, uh, presented based on the information that you've gathered. There is, the, the recommendation here is to receive and file, or, yes, to receive and file the report, uh, and then to bring the matter back for consideration, uh, in 45 days. So my question is, in the next 45 days, what the, the plan of action will be by the City Attorney's Office or, or other personnel in order for council to be able to, uh, look at all of the options and then, uh, determine what, uh, what option we would like to, to potentially consider. So...
Um, Councilman Benavides, I think an effort like the one that you would like to be undertaken in this case really requires a lot of public input and participation. I think that because it seems to me that that's what you're trying to do, is answer a need from the public to be heard on these issues. We started a staff conversation about what that might look like with Chief Rojas. Um, he, he had some ideas and some thoughts on the issue. My recommendation would be that we, um, that direction be given to the City Manager's Office, because City Manager controls staff, to convene some, some of us to get together and really start to frame out options to bring to you. So the memo that you have before you describes all the options that are out there, but I do think you need some analysis of what those look like, how much they cost, what are the pros and cons, what are the legal issues on each. So we could work on the legal part of it, but then we would need to hand it over and work with our fellow team members in the Police Department as well as in the City Manager's Office.
Thank you for that, uh, response. I think that definitely makes sense, but I'd let some of my colleagues, uh, that also have questions or comments be able to...
Great. I'll go with, um, Councilman Villegas and then Councilman Sarmiento.
Yeah, if we're just going to, uh, do some more research on it, then that's fine with me.
Okay. Councilman Sarmiento?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tim. And I, um, yeah, I'm supportive of the motion because I think we do need to give staff some direction. I appreciate the, the data that was provided to us so far. I think, um, if we can maybe, uh, reduce that to an RFCA with some options and alternatives from, um, other jurisdictions that are similarly situated like ours. I think, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, you may have provided, um, a good example in the city of Oakland, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. But there's ways and different processes that we can use to, um, identify objectively, you know, members of the public to have a role in this. I think that, um, you know, this obviously affects the public directly. I think they, um, they should have an opportunity to opine and comment and, and, um, you know, this is a way, I think, that, um, we can reestablish some of that public trust that we may have lost. Obviously, there's a risk management issue. There's, uh, additional training and resources that we can identify. These could be very positive things that could come out of this oversight, um, effort. So I just simply want to, you know, show my support for this, and, um, if you think that there's a need, I think there was even a comment made earlier, for an ad hoc on this to give you some comments. I know, Madam City Attorney and Mr. Acting City Manager, we've done that in the past where you want to get some feedback, you want a touchstone from a couple members of the council, let us know. Um, you know, we're certainly, I think, um, this is an important enough issue that, you know, we'd be available.
Any more comments before I speak?
No more comments? Uh, great. I, I appreciate the, the 45-day continuance, and definitely understand, I do think it is very important that we go out to the community and get some input. We did receive a letter today by various groups, um, the ACLU, Anaheim Community Coalition, the Asian Americans Advancing Justice, Chicanos Unidos, and Resilience Orange County, providing us some best practices and, and things that they have, uh, put here in paper. And so, um, I'm not sure if this, this document was emailed to us, if we can get a printed copy, uh, to our City Attorney, or I can forward this item to her, but it was, um, sent to the council today by Jennifer Rojas at 3:35 PM. And so I will forward that to you, Madam City Attorney, and so maybe we can, some of the first steps of convening and communicating within these 45 days is working with, um, some folks like this, because what they, uh, provided here is, is, is very detailed and, and, um, I, I believe, a, a good approach that we, we can take. But I think from a legal perspective, we need to take a look and, and, and look at some of the other models that I've sent you, Oakland, the recent report on, um, on, um, citizen oversight committees, um, that I presented to you about two weeks ago. And so the, a lot of information that we possibly can get, best practices, engaging with the community is very important. So I think that 45 days would be very key for us. And I also do agree that we should have an ad hoc so that if there are any concerns before we come back here, because I think after the 45 days, um, I am going to move forward with an action, um, because I'm, I'm tired of continuing items, and we need to move forward. And I believe that we have the support on this council to move something forward, and so I'm going to do that in 45 days. Um, so with that, I'm, I'm supportive of the recommendation here today, uh, to continue this item for 45 days. If I could please, uh, get a motion in a second?
Go ahead and move, uh, the item with one caveat. Uh, we've had some discussion before about the, uh, the, the task force, the, the oversight or, uh, task force, or citizens' task force that has been mentioned as part of the ordinance, sanctuary ordinance that we approved. So I would just ask that that would be considered and factored in as we, uh, spend the next 45 days reviewing options. So that comes, is, comes in as one of the options, uh, for us to consider with that.
I'll second that.
Great. So, um, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So the next item we have, excuse me, I'm trying to, um, we have 20A, and that is my item. If there's any members here up here that had to pull 20A, I don't think so. That is my item, and I'll be very quick. And this is just an agreement for grant-funded, designed-for-protected bike lanes. Um, you know, we're finally in this phase and just wanting to thank our staff, our entire public work staff, that's doing a phenomenal job and very excited that, um, we're going to have some infrastructure on the ground that we'll eventually be able to see and ride. So it's exciting, and I move this item forward.
Second.
Motion?
Yep, motion from Councilman Benavides. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next...
Madam City Attorney, I think I, you may have, um, I'm not sure if you called 19I already. I'm not sure if you're going in order or if we're just...
Oh, my apologies. I was just calling on my items.
Well, you do have the...
Yeah, I do have a lot of items. I was like trying to go over my items very quickly so that, yes, so let's, um, so we'll go to 19I. Um, yes, Councilman, um, Sarmiento?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, and I'll, I'll try to be brief. I, I, um, just wanted to hear from staff, um, if they could give us, um, some background on this. I see that on the quarterly report for housing projects, it lists about, uh, lists different items and what the status is on some of those. You know, one of the things I just was curious about is I know that the tax credits that all these projects are competing for are limited credits, right? So there's not, you know, an abundant amount or, um, you know, sufficient for all projects. They are, these are competitive, um, processes that, that all these, um, projects have to compete for. You know, I was meeting with the mayor of Fullerton, and what they did, I think, was a real, you know, intelligent thing to do, which is to assess what projects are before them. They see who's first in time, they see, you know, um, how they can position each project to be successful. Because normally, the tax credits are only extended to two projects per county. So we're not only competing with, um, projects intra-city, and if you have four or five projects, um, competing for the same, in the same round, um, of tax credits, we're going to bump people out, and we're not using our selections and our projects as effectively as we possibly can. So what they did is they, you know, tried to put their best projects forward in certain rounds and made sure that they were as successful as they could possibly be. I think that's something that I would recommend us look at, to make sure that we try to see how we can prioritize some, those, those that are shovel-ready, for lack of a better term, those that are going to compete well, those are going to, those that are going to present the best results to the community, um, and those that have been around the longest, you know, quite frankly. Fairness and equity matter in this, um, but also just making sure that we're as, um, we're as effective with our projects as we possibly can to make sure that they're successful when they compete. So, um, if you could do that, because I, when I was looking at the report, it's not real clear whether that's even being considered, um, and I just don't want this to be a random process where you have five of our projects competing and they all bump each other out, and then maybe none of them get credits. So that's not a real, uh, good way to go about this, so. Your thoughts?
Councilmember Sarmiento, um, you are correct. Uh, there is limited funding from TCAC that is available during the tax credit period, and what cities typically do is they phase these projects over their, the two offerings that they have per year in order to provide some flexibility and also to limit the competition even between the projects within the city. Uh, one of the things here in Santa Ana is that there's been a lot of interest in development. Uh, we currently have about five different projects that are currently underway. Uh, three of these, I believe, will be competing against each other if they do go for T, uh, for the tax credits in June. Uh, these products include, you know, the First Street Apartments, that's one of the projects that would be competing in June, as well as the Tiny Town Plaza, and potentially Aqua Housing, depending on if we are able to allocate additional vouchers to this particular project. It is completely up to the City Council in terms of giving direction to the city staff as to what they would like to see us produce in terms of projects that are going to be competing either against each other, or if they would like for us to stagger these in different phases. And I would like to defer that further discussion potentially to our ad hoc committee that's been established, because the direction right now is to help facilitate the, uh, these projects to go forward for the June 30th allocation of tax credits.
Well, since we are, you know, since these are time-sensitive, um, you know, it's a time-sensitive deadline, if we can, maybe direct the ad hoc to take this on as a, as an agenda discussion for them to consider doing that. As you said, five projects, they all sound great. I mean, they all are, are worthy of support, but nonetheless, you know, um, some or all may not get, you know, any funding, and that's not a real thoughtful way to go about this. So I hope that if the ad hoc hasn't already considered it, they consider having this discussion, having, um, you know, having put, uh, put enough energy into this, let's make sure that we're successful in the end.
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. I do have a question, and I thank, uh, staff for providing the update and, you know, where we're at with the financing and, and the gap, but some of the questions that I asked in committee was more from a policy perspective, and we're going to have to have that discussion. Um, and, you know, when we're providing a subsidy as government, you know, what's the future going to look like for affordable housing to us? And my, and I spoke to our planning director today that when we're providing subsidies, we should make sure that we have green construction as a policy, when we, we also should look at making sure that we have these affordable housing units that are able to produce energy, are able to be energy efficient, you know, because, look, what, how we view the world today, five to 10 years from now, it's not going to be the same. With the technology that we have, with the innovation that we have here in California, we have to make sure, look, we're going to be having a hearing on May 17, 18 with the Utilities Commission about Edison increasing its rates by 50% in two-plus years. So we have to be a sustainable city. We have to reduce our carbon footprint, and I know sometimes people like Michelle, you talk way crazy, way beyond the future, but these conversations need to be had now, because our preferred future is dependent on the policies we set today. That's what our future will be like. If we continue to set policies of tomorrow, we're going to be tomorrow in five years. So let's be creative, let's dream, let's have a sustainable city. And so I get passionate about this because, you know, when I look at affordable housing, yes, we're providing, you know, housing to our residents, but at the same time, they are still struggling with transportation, they're still struggling with paying utilities. We can do all of this all at once if we move towards setting policies with green construction, with energy efficiency, having them produce energy. And so I want us to take that into consideration. The other thing for me is the fiscal impact to the city when we're doing affordable housing. What is the financial analysis? Yes, we're, we're creating a subsidy, but again, as I mentioned earlier, affordable housing typically are nonprofits. Guess what? They're not paying property tax when they're developing these homes, and sometimes it's 50 to 75 years. And so when we're trying to generate revenue, we have to look beyond what we're, what we're seeing here today and figure out ways that we can be creative, at the same time, helping our community with probably, you know, and Councilman Sarmiento says it all, all the time, this is our civil rights issue, you know, of our time, providing something that's ba, a basic need, which is shelter. But we have to do it in a very intelligent way, as he says it, and this is the moment in time for us to look at those kinds of policies. Um, I, I believe that if this City Council does not have that frame of mind, Santa Ana is not going to be a future city of tomorrow. It's not going to be a, a city of promise. And so I would just urge my colleagues beyond just funding and providing affordable housing, to look at all these other policies that are going to make this city sustainable, that is going to make this community be more resilient as things change with our economy. Um, so those are my comments, and I hope that we can reconvene and continue to talk about my policy statements, that I believe this City Council has to eventually, uh, move on as we update our general plan. Um, it's, it's imperative.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Martinez. A few things, um, number one, I, I know, you know, nonprofits may not generate the same amount of tax that properties, that the businesses, um, may generate or, or others, but they provide a lot of value for, for, for our community, but we need to continue to grow our, our economy, but, uh, our nonprofit community is very, very important as well. Um, I, I agree with, uh, what our acting City Manager, uh, Cortez, mentioned, there's, there's so much, you know, demand and interest in Santa Ana, including on the housing side, that it's exciting, but it also means, uh, more competition and, and more work, uh, for all of us. As I've mentioned before, we have about, uh, 1,500 affordable housing units in the works over the next 18 months. I think that's very exciting. Uh, and I think though, you know, having said that, Councilmember Sarmiento makes a good point, that we ought to think about, you know, which of these type of projects may compete sometimes. Many don't, and that I think some of these projects, uh, are only seeking section, uh, housing vouchers or certain types of veteran, uh, vouchers. Some are looking at other tweaks to other city policies, but to the very point, well taken. Uh, I, I know, uh, Acting City Manager Cortez, uh, you, you envision us having the ad hoc meet again, probably next week, and, you know, we'll coordinate. probably next week, and you know, we'll coordinate. It's, uh, Mayor Protem Martinez and I that are on that committee. And I do think and agree that we should have on that agenda a discussion of whether there's, uh, competition for this June deadline phase between some of those projects and whether we have any recommendations related to, to that. Also, um, I know that we have a lot of projects in the works right now, and, uh, you know, we don't want to, you know, make too many modifications because we've seen, you know, tonight, there's a, a lot of, um, uh, you know, there's a lot of interest just in getting things down, and I share that, you know, sense of urgency. But I think we'll have to consider the projects that are kind of in the queue now, and that's what our ad hoc has been focused on. Uh, but Mayor Protem Martinez makes a good point, uh, that we also need to, moving forward, have, uh, more foresight in the kind of type of housing that we want and where, and the policies, uh, and then this issue of maybe phasing some of these projects so that we don't have some of our very good projects competing with other very good projects. So we want to be mindful of, of that as well. So I want to thank you, Councilmember Sarmiento, for bringing this point that sometimes they compete, and if they're all in the same little pond, uh, you know, we're competing with ourselves rather than other counties in the state. So point well taken. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Solorio. So I think, um, we have a motion on the floor to receive and file.
To receive and file.
To receive and file, so we don't need any motions. So great discussion. Moving on to 20B, which is my item. And again, it's just more bike infrastructure, and I just wanted to highlight that because I believe as we're speaking about Bike Month, it, it's really great that this bike infrastructure is actually going into, deep into the community. Um, so it's, it's really exciting. Uh, so I'll move this item forward?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Um, next is 25H. Um, so I think, um, Councilman Solorio, um, yeah, this is the item you pulled along with myself regarding the cameras.
Yes, uh, you know, I've, I've had a lot of interest in, uh, making sure that we move forward on, uh, actually purchasing these body worn cameras, because I know they've been on the city's radar for a few years. So I want to thank the police department and the city staff for moving this along, uh, for the benefit of the public. This is a five-year agreement, uh, to purchase, I think it's between 500 and 600 body worn cameras for our officers. Um, and I, I just want to thank the, the staff for finally bringing this forward. And, uh, it's, it's my understanding, as we've discussed here in our Public Safety Committee as well, that, uh, starting this summer, uh, our officers will be able to wear these body cameras. And I also want to speak to, uh, the question, uh, by one of our other constituents, Albert Castillo, uh, in that we ought to have a conversation about what the policies are going to be around, uh, the use of, of those cameras and accessibility, both from the public and the media. So hopefully, if the, if the police department already hasn't begun to put those policies together, which I'm sure they have, and maybe the manufacturer has some thoughts as well, that we, through our Public Safety Committee and through other avenues, uh, have that conversation with the public as well. So, uh, with that, I am in support of this item. Thank you.
Great. Um, we have more comment. Um, we have Councilman Sarmiento, then Councilman Viegas, and then Councilman Benavides. Councilman Sarmiento?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. And I also want to thank staff, and I, I want to thank, um, you know, my colleagues here in this, you know, I want to give a shout out to Councilman Benavides, who chaired the Public Safety Committee. Um, and I know under his leadership there, we made a few visits to Washington DC, met with DOJ, and, um, were able to discuss the whole idea of, you know, um, uh, body cameras and adopting 21st century policing practices, which this is part of that whole effort. So, you know, um, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, and I'm not sure if Acting Police Chief Schnabel, if you want to maybe give us your thoughts on how you see this being part of, um, you know, part of the effort that, um, we can draw this in? Is it going to be a tough transition? Do you see this? Um, you know, we, we see other communities that have done this really well, and they've gathered data on this, and they have accessibility, um, and, and openness and transparency. So I really do see this as a mechanism to not only, again, build trust in the community, um, and fulfill something that they've been looking for, but also to keep our officers safe, right? I think that that's another, it, it really has so many multi-layered benefits. And so, you know, what are your thoughts as to how we can, you know, do the training, do the transitioning and, you know, those?
Sure. It does, uh, it does have a lot of great benefits. We started off by working with, uh, our officers to bring them into a committee, to ask them a lot of questions about, um, how they saw it, uh, being used as part of the department. Uh, we met with , uh, different groups within the community to find out what their expectations were of, of the officers and the body worn cameras. Uh, we had a pilot program that we used to, to test out some of our theories, to see if they were going to be accurate before we rolled out the, uh, the original RFP. Uh, with the RFP, we've been working with the cameras now. We have them out into, into small groups. We're continuing to collect the information. So all the infrastructure's in place. Uh, we've been building that as we've been preparing for this. Uh, as soon as the contract is signed, uh, we're looking at finalizing the, uh, the product built in and everything in the next two months. Uh, we'll be working on training with our officers, and, uh, once they're trained, they'll be out and running. And, and I think the expectation for the community has to be that, um, there's a, an initial learning curve on the part of the officer, uh, getting used to having that be a, a part of what they naturally do. Uh, you know, or it'll be on there, and, and initially, it'll be kind of a second thought, but through training and, uh, and practice, we'll, we'll get officers to, we're, that's a, it's a first thought. As, as they make contact with the community member, boom, they'll, they'll tap the camera on without even thinking about it eventually. But there is a transition period before we can get there.
Thank you, Chief. And that's, that's basically what I wanted to, again, I know Mayor Protem says this a lot, let's manage expectations, right? Not, it doesn't mean that the moment they're out there in the community, they're operable and, and they're flawless. I mean, there's going to be a, a curve, a learning curve that we all have to adapt to. And, you know, we want to be supportive of our department and our officers that are going to be, um, using those for the first time. And so to the extent that we work, and I'm glad you've gone, you know, the, the department's gone out to the community and asked for its, its comments, because it's always good to do that in advance as opposed to later, right? Um, so we want to do those, you know, preemptory.
And one additional thing, Councilman, I think that what we see from, uh, a lot of the other agencies that have rolled out body worn cameras is that there, there's a pretty quick acceptance on the part of the officers as they realize what a tremendous tool it is for them. Uh, it protects us from, um, from false allegations of, of use of force or things that officers said. Uh, we have a very professional, disciplined, uh, police department. So to have this type of, of backup to say, hey, we, we responded appropriately, uh, it should support us for the most part. And if it doesn't, then we need to handle that through, through training and, uh, potentially discipline.
Well, thank you, and thank all the officers that had a role in making sure that, you know, this is going to be a successful program. And with that, Madam Mayor Protem, I'll move...
Thank you. Um, move to, um, Councilman Benavides, and then Viegas, and then, uh...
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I'll be seconding the item. Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento, for your comments as well, and acknowledgements of, of all the work that, uh, the previous council did to be able to bring this, uh, this far. Remember back in, uh, I think it was either 2014 or 2015, uh, Councilman Reyna, uh, brought this, uh, matter up, discussion, the rest of the council, we rallied together, uh, and gave clear direction that this was something that was a priority to, uh, to the city. And we moved forward. Uh, back in October of 2015, we designated and approved $350,000 to be able to begin the body worn camera program, uh, and have taken steps, uh, since, clearly in the, in the report here back in 15, we allocated those funds. And, uh, 2016, the, the RFP was issued, uh, September, March of 2016. As you mentioned, Acting Chief, there is a, a pilot program that has been going on for months because we wanted to make sure to not, uh, rush to implement, uh, something that we ended up having to later backtrack. I know it's been a very thorough process, both internally within the department, externally out in the community as well, obtaining feedback from, from both, uh, the community, uh, members of, of the police department, so that we can get to a place where we are today, where it, it's a smooth, uh, process. It's, uh, the community's been involved, the officers have been involved. There isn't, uh, pushback, uh, from either, uh, you know, very important, uh, members of the community, both, again, officers and, uh, and, and residents. What I would recommend and, and ask, uh, both for the police department and, uh, as our acting city manager, uh, for your, your office and our communications managers, this is something that's very positive, both for the officers, protecting them, protecting our community as well. So it's something that we should highlight, that we should provide and inform the community, uh, about. Uh, I would recommend that we create, uh, a page within the, the police department's website, uh, an FAQs, uh, these frequently asked questions. There's, uh, some members of the community came and addressed us earlier in the meeting with valid, uh, questions as to how this is going to be implemented, how this is going to be rolled out. I know we have some of the answers to some of those questions, some that we're still also, uh, as we roll the program out, we will be, uh, building, uh, some of the best practices. Uh, so just creating, communicating, uh, that, uh, going out with a press release as well, and directing folks to a place where they can gather some of those, uh, those questions, place for people to be able to give input as well, and provide, uh, provide some, some feedback and input. Again, this is something that we should be, uh, celebrating in reality. It's, it's this idea of, of community-oriented policing, uh, building trust, which is of paramount importance for our city. So let, let's bring attention to it. Let's prepare. And as we, over the next couple of months, as our officers are being trained, as we gain the equipment and officers are trained, I think we can build, build, uh, this communication, uh, strategy as well, so that when we're ready to roll out, we're, we're ready to bring, uh, to address some of these, these questions and point people to that, that, uh, to, to a page or location so that they can gather that information. So, given that, uh, again, I'm, I'm glad to have been a part of bringing this, uh, this far. And again, appreciate your leadership.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides. So we have a first and a second. We have more comment by Councilman Viegas.
Yeah, real quick, I thank, uh, Mayor Protem Martinez. Just wanted to say, great job on the vendor that you folks picked. Uh, it's the future in policing. It's a great tool. This helps out with the reports. Uh, also helps with the protecting the officers. I think it's a great tool. I remember, uh, at the, uh, the Safety Committee meeting where, uh, Councilmember Solorio and I were, uh, were at, uh, it was just great demonstration, the film that, uh, they, the department provided, uh, for us, and all the different things you can do with it. It's just amazing. So can't wait for something like that to be, uh, shown to the public. Thank you very much. Just wanted to commend you for that.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Great. And Deputy Chief Schnabel, um, I do have a, a quick question, and it's probably in there, um, but from a transparency and a data perspective. Uh, and I know, as Councilman Solorio mentioned, that, you know, there will be processes in place, processes for our officers on and so forth. But just for transparency purposes here, and we are in the public, uh, can you share with me, um, when we do go out and we, we started off with the pilot, but how will we be able to store that data? How long will that data be stored? I think those are some important questions, and I know, you know, many times, you know, look, the public is not going to be able to read through all this information, and sometimes it's not put on our, our website. And so I, I'm as transparent as, as, you know, I can get here, and I just wanting us to, to, to voice that here, so that they all have some comfort that, uh, what we're doing is, one, being open, but more importantly, making sure that we do have accountability and that we are storing this information and that it's just not being discarded.
Sure. The, uh, the body worn camera will record anything that the officer directs it to record. Um, from that point, it, uh, as soon as it gets, as soon as it gets docked in the station, it uploads. Everything has to be uploaded. There's no way for the officer to delete anything off the camera. Uh, it runs sequential. Uh, everything that, uh, that gets uploaded is retained for two years, uh, minimum. And if it's identified as evidence in any type of court case, or, uh, it's flagged otherwise, uh, it can be retained indefinitely.
Fantastic. Thank you. Look, I'm a big believer in information technology, predictive policing, policing, um, intelligent-led policing. That is the future of, of policing to, to today and tomorrow. I just came back from New York City, and I tell you that, you know, with issues revolving around pensions, even there in New York City, even here, they are using, they're using technology. I've never seen so many cameras in my life. They have cameras in every single corner, right? I, I did see police officers, but you have to imagine, you know, um, New York, um, state itself has over 56 million people visiting, you know, so you have tourists from around the world. But in New York City, you have about 27 million people visiting a year. And so for them to, to have all those cameras, I was extremely impressed. It seems to be working. I spoke with some of the officers. I did selfie with the cop, um, in New York City, and I asked them, you know, how is it going with, with the cameras? And they're saying, look, with today, you know, we can't in continuing to hire more officers, that we have to use technology. They have the cameras themselves. And they're saying that is the future of policing, and that the, the, essentially what I'm wanting to state, that as we move towards body cameras, um, we too are going to have to, you know, um, move into a direction. I talked about, you know, Los An, Los Angeles has drones now, right? When there's a, a chase going, you don't have, you don't have police cars following them. You actually have a drone, right? It's more safer on and so forth. So as we move, um, um, in, in, in the arena of technology and, and open data, big data, the internet of things, um, you know, I do want to thank you because you've been, um, very paramount to our police department as it talks about technology and integration over the years, when I was on the Public Safety Committee and the work that you were doing. And so I've, I've been having this conversation for quite some time, and the work that you've done for our police departments. I just wanted to thank you for your efforts in moving us along. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks. And some of those projects are just now starting to come to fruition. So I think we have a great future ahead of us.
Fantastic. Thank you. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great motion carries. I will be, you know what? Um, because there's a young man that's waiting. We have two more items in the consent calendar, which really are a no, but I want Richard Santana to please come up here because we need to do an oath of office. So 25H and 25I, I'm a no. It's Bristol Acquisition. Uh, do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move the, those two items.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No? Great. So that's the end of the consent calendar clerk. We're going to administer the oath of office to Mr. Richard Santana for the community redevelopment in housing. And I'll pass that real quickly to Councilman Sarmiento, since that is his appointment.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And, uh, I want to welcome Mr. Santana. What a great name, right? Richard Santana. So, um, you know, how, how, how more appropriate can we get? But Richard's been working in the community for many, many years. Um, you know, he works with our domestic workers. He, um, is very active in, uh, the Madison Park Neighborhood Association, and he's just been somebody who's been an asset to the community. I'm very proud to have him as my commissioner. Thank you, Richard, for accepting. And, um, Madam City Clerk, I'll let you do your job.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I, Richard Santana, do solemn swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I take this application freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. I will well and faithfully discharge the duties I am upon to enter. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Great. We are now moving forward on the business calendar items. The first item, we have 50A, which is an ordinance to update the city's emergency services, disaster preparedness, and emergency operations. The recommendation action is to place an ordinance on the first reading and authorized publication of title. Do we have a motion?
Second.
I do have comment before we move this. I have enough people here on the dais. We have four, just very quickly. Uh, this is something that has been, um, very dear to my heart, in particular, emergency services and disaster preparedness. And we actually hired someone for that position, and he's actually in the front, and wanting to thank him for the work that he has done with the very limited resources that he has. And the police department took, took over, um, you know, our emergency services, um, emergency preparedness, because the fire department had that responsibility. And when we transferred it to the Orange County Fire Authority, you know, it automatically by default went to our police department. We really didn't have someone. Chief Rojas ended up hiring, um, you know, our person to do this. Um, but what I wanted to make clear to this council is that we really don't have funding behind, you know, our emergency preparedness and disaster. It's not if, it's when. And tomorrow, I'm actually going to be on a bus with, uh, 68 people with the earthquake lady, Lucy Jones, um, off to the desert to look at, um, all the, um, the different faults. And I will tell you that a big earthquake will be coming. And yes, we always wanting to talk about emergency preparedness, but the reality that, at the end of the day, it's really what happens after. And how do we recover? How do we become resilient? And there's resources that are needed, not just from the infrastructure, from the education, but we have to have a plan that's in place that has money behind it. And so I'm just wanting to just bring that to my colleagues' attention, that as we move forward and continuing to support actions like this, there has to be money behind it. And at this time, they don't really have a budget. So we have a position, and, and, and it's great that we created it... So we have a position, and it's great that we created it, and that we're moving forward with all of this stuff, but there's really no funding dedicated to moving us in a more resilient and secure way, when we do have a major catastrophe or disaster, and so I just wanted to share that, and I'm hopeful as we move forward in budget discussions, that we make this a top priority, and I understand that we do have deficits, but it's something that we need to consider as we continue to move the city forward with that. We did have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
I do have one.
Oh, yes, Councilman Solorio.
Mayor Protem, I appreciate your comments and what suggested, although we may not have dedicated, full-time staff to address this on an ongoing basis, if there are emergencies in our city, individuals from our police department, fire department, Public Works and other agencies do come and they go to our emergency center. I know when we had the big rains, they did a great job assembling in quick order and addressing the, they're the big issues of trees and creeks and flooding and a number of things, so, you know, our staff does, you know, come together and within their existing responsibilities, when there is an emergency, come together and protect and keep our community safe, and, you know, if and when our budget does get better, obviously it would be nice to have, you know, full-time, ongoing staff, but I don't want the public to believe that we aren't funding these emergency disaster situations when they occur. Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, Councilman Solorio, and I didn't mean that, but I'll just give you a great example, just from our city's perspective, not the additional help that we get from various agencies. For example, our EOC Center is at the yard, and that is not retrofitted, we had issues with our roof, and so how can we have our EOC Center, knowing that we have a place that, first off, if an earthquake does hit, it's gonna collapse, it's gonna fall apart. And so what I'm meaning is that when we look at our infrastructure, then when we look at our resources, that we need to put money behind that, so I don't mean in particular agencies coming to our aid, we have partnerships along those lines, but I'm meaning more internally as an organization, and the resources that we need to put in case there is a major emergency here in the city. So with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Great. The next item is a Resolution 55A, which is designating officers authorized to excuse the authority of the city manager in the absence and benefits for acting city manager after service of more than 30 days.
Motion approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is 55B, which is application for state and federal disaster reimbursement for January 2017 storm damage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. The next item, we're moving very quickly here, 55C, which is declaring support for grant application to the OC recycles for Orange County Food and Families, Food Waste, Energy and Organics Recycling Program.
Move the item.
They have a first and a second. I do have comment, I'm just wanting to make sure to staff, that I know that we are, our agreements with our hollers are going to be expiring, and this is possibly a five-year grant, and so I want to make sure that if we do enter to this agreement with the county in partnership, that if, just say we go out to an RFP, we have something else, that it actually transfers to whatever new holler I see, Ms. Christie indicating yes, and so I just wanted to state that for the record. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All, yeah, there's five of us here. Great. The next items are reports, 65A, which is review and adopt the 2017 federal state legislative platform.
Madam Mayor Protem, I'd like to move the item with comment. I just want to thank staff for all their help in drafting the platform and working with the committee. I know that we have some great advocates on our behalf that have been helping us at the federal level and at the state level, you know, I think that this council's worked very hard on trying to prioritize some of the, some of the real pressing needs. I know that, you know, as we talk about federal funding being compromised, as we talk about the continuing resolution that was just adopted by the Congress and how it's going to impact the city, a lot of good things, and I think that we even have some good news on the fixed guideway, the streetcar, some money was embedded there for us to continue working, I think it's to the tune of $50 million. So all those efforts are really things that this community has been, you know, been working very hard on, and I just want to thank the staff for all its efforts, and please extend our compliments and our thanks to both our lobbyists at Townsend Public Affairs and at Holland and Knight, because I know they've been doing yeoman's duty on all these things. So with that, I'll move the item, Mayor Protem.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have 65B, but before I go to 65B, so that we just could get right into presentation, and we have a 65C, which is a matter we want to continue, which is revise the budget and fiscal policy.
I'll move the item, Madam Mayor Protem, but I see that there's also some language here that it would be moved to committee.
Correct, yes.
And so that would be something that I would be supportive of, so I'll move the item.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. So now, Mr. Cortez, 65B, which is the fiscal year 2016-2017 third quarter budget update.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you today the third quarter update for fiscal years 16, 17, and also the trial budget for fiscal years 17 and 18. And before I get started, I do want to thank Gerardo Mowet for his efforts and his leadership during this process, because he was instrumental in helping us put this trial budget together, as well as Francisco Gutierrez in our budget. So thanks to them. Tonight, what we will be doing is providing you a brief update, not a high-level review. You will be receiving a high-level review on the 17, 18 budget in the May 16 City Council meeting, that'll become a work-study session. So what we're presenting to you today is just a snapshot, it's a point in time as to what we've developed so far, okay?
Mr. Cortez, if you could please speak closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So as far as the agenda here that we have for tonight, we have the 16, 17 third quarter update, we'll review the 17, 18 trial budget for the general fund, we'll briefly review the CIP, a draft of it for 17, 18, and then next steps in terms of budget and its development. So the general fund third quarter was present, or the second year, or the second quarter was presented to the city council back in February, and we had identified a $3.1 million deficit, based on current trends of the first two quarters. We were anticipating on receiving additional information as far as our holiday sales, additional development that was going to be happening, utility users tax, we've been keeping a close eye on that, as well as our expenditure trends, in order to identify if this operating balance, negative operating balance was going to materialize or not. Good thing to note is that our revenues, for the most part, have continued their positive trends. As far as the holiday sales, we did generate $500,000 more than what was anticipated, so from a revenue standpoint, we are meeting our targets. Utility users tax continues to have a bit of a decline, part of it is tied to the weather and the less consumption in terms of energy, and in particular, electricity is the area that we're seeing some decline. As far as expenditures, the departments have done a really good job in managing their budgets. As of the end of the third quarter, they have expended about 73% of their budget allocation, and that by far is helping us drive our third quarter number projections down in terms of a deficit. So what we look like for the third quarter, based on those trends that we are currently seeing, is a $2.2 million operating balance to the negative, okay? A couple of things that we're doing as we head into the final of this fiscal year is to continue to look at departmental savings, there's also encumbrances or projects that remain idle. We're hopeful that through these measures, we will be able to mitigate this negative 2.2 operating deficit, and if that is, if that does come to fruition, then there will not be a need to use one-time monies for the current fiscal year. So that's just a snapshot of the third quarter and where we're headed. Next, we'll have the trial budget for fiscal year 17 and 18, and this is where we provide you a high-level overview of what we've accomplished so far in terms of forecasting our revenues and expenditures. The trial budget is basically, it's a point-in-time assessment of the city's projected base budget. In essence, the trial budget only takes into account baseline assumptions, so it's basically your status quo. Where are we today? And it's the continuation of current programs and services, and then we project what our revenues are going to be for the coming fiscal year. The baseline assumptions or elements that are included as part of the budget include the recognition of the loss of the ICE contract, which totals approximately 10 or 11 million dollars in loss in revenue on an ongoing basis. Reduction in water transfer, so this is as a result of a water transfer study that we've been working on for a number of years. That's equivalent to 2.4 million reduction in our revenues. Continuation of graffiti abatement programs on the general fund to the tune of 1.2 million. It includes PERS cost increases, and you'll notice here, one of the things that our finance department has been able to do is, in the past, we would combine both the fire and the police department's PERS costs, only in the police department, and this is as a result of the city outsourcing its fire services to OCFA. What finance has been able to do now is separate the costs, so we can be, so we can identify what is the true cost of the police department's liability as it relates to PERS versus the fire. So this is one of the changes that you're going to be seeing as we move forward, you'll see that the fire department's budget slightly increased, while the police department's budget remained relatively flat, and it's because of that reason, this change that we did on the PERS cost. It also includes health cost increases, 9% is what we're projecting, that's equivalent to about 1.3 million dollars. All these figures that I'm referencing, they are all tied to the general fund only.
Robert, you have percentages, what are the actual amounts of money for safety and miscellaneous?
So for the general fund, I do have the total value of the safety, as well as miscellaneous, that's equivalent to about $33 million to the general fund on an annual basis. Overall, total PERS cost is roughly $50 million. Okay?
To clarify, the 33 million that you referenced, that includes both?
It's both safety and miscellaneous.
So the PERS, I'm sorry, the PERS, the PERS cost, which is $50 million out of our general fund?
No, it's 50 million for all funds. For the general fund, it is only 33 million.
Okay, and that's including our city employees and our public safety?
Correct. So any, when we reference safety, that means police, so any sworn officers. When we mention miscellaneous, that is everyone else. So that includes line staff, management, executive.
And is there a, is that anticipate, is there an anticipation that that's going to continue to increase as the years continue?
Yes, yes.
And what's the percentage?
PERS rates will continue to rise. I don't have the figures here in front of me, but we can certainly bring that information back when we do the work-study session on the 16th, but we've been on this path of PERS cost increasing, and it's not just a citizen, I mean, this is something that's happening at the state level and at the national level, where cities are starting to face what they call a PERS or a retirement crisis, and it's because the costs are growing astronomically.
Well, in the city of Los Angeles, I believe back in like 2006 or so, they actually allocated about 5% of their general fund was going towards PERS, and now it's up to 20, and I mean, that's, we're not even talking, it's up to 25, so it's, I mean, that's a huge jump in 11 years.
Correct.
Robert, just the standard, you know, of PERS cost a city should be, is under 10%. Anything over 10% out of the general fund, that's like alert, red alert, 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 we're in trouble, and we are over 10%.
Yes, I think we're close to 15%, we're a little bit above 15% of our general fund operating costs, go to pensions. Additional baseline elements that are included as part of the trial budget include the fire and medic cost increases, you know, we are capped at 4.5% with OCFA, that's, as well as care ambulance, so that equates to about 1.3 million additional costs. The allocation of matching funds for the cops grants, no, this is the third year in cops grant hiring, and as the two-year allocation of funding goes away, the general fund starts to subsidize it at 100% level. Okay, so it becomes a bigger cost for the city.
So right now, we have one more year in the cops grant, or two more years?
For the third year, we should have an additional two years.
Two years.
So this will be, the 17, 18 should be the first, 18, 19 should be the second, but we already, this would be the third round of cops.
Got it.
Folks that we have on board. It also includes funding for the animal shelter, the construction of it, financing of the backbone for the 800 megahertz. It also, one of the things that we do need to mention is that this trial budget does continue the attrition rate values that were included as part of the 16, 17-year budget, okay, in order to balance it. It also maintains current program levels and current program services coming up.
Robert, just wanted to bring to your attention, because, and I'm not sure if it's true, maybe you could go and do some research, but, and not saying that we're going to go away with it, but when we look at our core services, what are core, what are not core of our city function, the OCFA ambulance cost that the city is covering is at 1.3 million, but we were just recently told that by state law, it's really not mandatory for a city to provide ambulance service. Is that a true statement? Not a true statement? And if so, can you look into that? Because we have to put, we're going to have to put things out on the table and really have a true discussion on how we manage expectations moving forward, as I just alerted that, you know, when we're over 10% of our paying, you know, pensions, you know, we're at 15%, that's very troublesome as we move forward for sustainability purposes, and so I just just wanted to bring that to our attention.
Sure, we can do some research and find out exactly what the, what we're committed to do or legally binding to do.
And a follow-up question to that point, that line item specifically, the OCFA ambulatory cost increase, the reason for, what is the reason for that, that increase?
Cost of living increases, we are capped at, I think, at 4.5% on an annual basis for CPI. So depending on the cost increases at OCFA, then they will submit a memo to the city informing us as to what the increase is going to be. That is completely separate from the care ambulance increases.
As I say, the care ambulance, are we not on a fixed contract there? Is it, are there regular increases, annual increases to that?
I believe that there's regular annual increases, and I'm going to be referring to our finance staff to see if they have any, any details or not, and if we don't, we can come back and provide the city council with that information.
Sure, okay, if you could.
Just those items are currently fixed.
So the care, the ambulance item is fixed, but the OCFA, there is, or what does the increase here consist of?
Oh, this is the, this is primarily the OCFA contract, which is capped at 4.5%. So annually, they submit basically what their costs are going to increase by, and they pass those along to the city.
Okay, but the ambulance costs at this point?
I want to say that, but you know what, I, let me get back to you, because I know that there was an RFP process, that I think that was being conducted, so that may actually highlight the costs themselves.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't sure if they purchased some new equipment that was needed on some of the fire rigs, so I'm not sure if that...
Usually they pass those costs on, we have like regular facility maintenance costs that they pass on to us, that we actually, they bill us like at $15,000 a month, but then they true up at the end of the year, and in terms of the facility rigs, they, most, those are pass-through costs to us.
Okay, so moving on to the next slide, so here is a snapshot of the general fund revenues for fiscal year 17, 18. This is still preliminary, we are still working on identifying other alternatives in terms of revenue increases. One of the things that we do want to mention here, to the bottom left of the pie chart, is the use of money in property. Last year, this value that was presented to the city council as part of the adopted budget was, the value that was on there was over 17 million, so now we reflect a decrease in revenue associated specifically with the loss of the jail revenue, okay? So total revenue is equate to about 224 million for 17, 18. As far as the expenditures for 17, 18, we're projecting 238 million in expenditures, this represents approximately $10 million more than, when you compare it to the prior fiscal year, okay? And a lot of the increases here are really tied to PERS cost increases, health insurance increases. increases, and other benefit increases that we have built into the base budget. So the results of the preliminary revenues and expenditures gives us a result of 14.4 million dollars as a budget cap. Okay? Primarily as a result of a loss of revenue, increases in PERS, health insurance. But when looking at this budget, okay, 14.4 million is a relatively big number, but I think in the past, we have been able to tackle much larger deficits. But I think this year is a little bit different when we're starting to look at 17 and 18 because when adopting a budget, I think it is prudent for the city to start looking at a two-year process because we need to find out exactly the path of the city in terms of its finances. So what we did in finance is prepare for the city council consideration of looking at a potential two-year review of the budget as to where we're headed. So current year that we're in right now, again, we are projecting to end the year about 2.2 million in the negative, but hopefully with the trends, we should be able to make it up. But going into 17, 18, now your budget gap is 14.4. For fiscal year 18, 19, the budget gap grows to 19.5. Again, making the assumption that we have a status quo budget, it also takes into account revenue increases. It takes into account continuation of PERS cost increases, health insurance cost increases. This also assumes that the jail operation continues as is right now. The cost increase or the expenditure line, the growth on there is about 5% on an annual basis. The revenue line increases about a 3% increase. Okay? So there's a difference of 2%. Technically, when you have your revenues, your expenditures far exceeding your revenues on a consistent basis, this is basically your definition of a structural deficit. So any measures, any changes that we do to the budget really need to be from a structural perspective or an ongoing basis. There's many other elements that are not included into the trial budget at this point in time, but it's something to be cognizant of as a city council when you make your policy level decisions, just making sure that we, we as staff are providing you with the information and options to consider to make fiscally prudent decisions.
Mr. Cortez, just to clarify, so these projections that you're showing here is based, again, on status quo, so current staffing levels throughout the city, current salaries throughout the city, any changes particular, any increases to staffing levels, increases to salary, all of that would then only increase...
It would further impact your deficits, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Viegas.
Thank you, Member Protem Martinez. So real quick, out of this 14.4 million gap, 11 million is about, is from losing the ICE contract, correct?
Correct.
Just wanted to make that clear. All right, thank you, sir.
Do you want the ICE contract? Because they didn't want us. Okay.
Okay. So moving on to the next slide. So here are some additional impacts that we may need to add to the budget depending on the direction of the city council. So we are going through a enterprise program review. The results of that assessment may have additional impacts into the budget on a go-forward basis. Now negotiations, I mean, that's something that we're currently working on. So any structural changes that we implement on negotiations, if it's raises or any other elements that are negotiated, that's going to be further impacting our budget if they're structural, if they are on an ongoing basis. There's also the final cost of the SEIU job classification study. If there's a desire on the body of the city council here, or the results produced by the personnel department to move forward with whatever the recommendations are from the study, that would further impact our deficit. There's additional needs in terms of deferred maintenance for facilities, vehicles, and equipment that we have in the city. Liability premium increases, pension stability fund, and most importantly, your fiscal policy. I think there's going to be a conversation that will happen at the council committee that's scheduled for, I believe, May 15th, to have a dialogue and a discussion as the potential options to help us solve this budget over a two-year period, but would require a mechanism used of maybe one-time monies, or maybe it's a review of the current policy and see what options exist to help us bridge this gap over a two-year period.
Yes, Councilman Dina Hidal.
Mr. Cortez, I just wanted to clarify something else. I mean, we've been in the jail business for quite some time. And even with the ICE contract, when we had the ICE contract, were we subsidizing about $3 million a year from our general fund to...
I don't have the values in front of me, but the jail, the way it's been operating, it is just not fiscally sustainable.
And it hasn't been for years.
And it has not been. That's correct.
Because one of the, some of the data that I received is that since it's been open, and I'm being conservative here, we've paid out close to $100 million over the span of 20-some years to keep it going. And so it's just, I mean, that's something that, I mean, we can't recover today, but it's just to put it in perspective, how much this has cost our community in subsidizing the U.S. Marshals and all these other agencies.
Mr. Cortez, I do also want to just speak on the jail. You know, I said this, you know, when I first got elected and when I came to this council, you know, and I got in various fights with the previous chief of police, not Mr. Rojas, but at the time, Chief Paul Walters, where I said that this jail was never sustainable. We should have never been in this business. And he told me and had a presentation given to me that the jail was actually making money. And just based on, you know, what I observed and what I saw, it was never sustainable from day one because it was, the police department was subsidizing the jail in the tune of almost, I think, $4 million. It's beyond 3 million. It's about 4 million. And the reality is that going into contracts with ICE or Homeland Security, those are not sustainable sources of revenue. And we should have never been in the business. And I'm going to be urging my colleagues, and this is a tough decision, but we should not be a type-two jail. We need to go to a type-one jail immediately. If we do that immediately, we save 5.6 million dollars. Next year, we automatically save in the tune of 11 million dollars. This is common sense. We have to stop being irresponsible and realize that we have to manage expectations. I want to then move towards something that has been very concerning to me for the past seven years, and that is, you're calling it the enterprise program review. And I've gone public. I'm very frustrated, but I do think staff now wanting to do a comprehensive review on our Proposition 218. But, you know, when I look at this general fund ballot, budget, you say you have in the tune of 228, 238, 741. You remove the pension, you know, what we're paying out in pension, you know, that ends up going to about 154, 158 million, you know, to manage our city. But then you have to realize the amounts of money that we're transferring from our enterprise funds, and just hypothetically, it's 15 to 20 million dollars. And the reality, that budget then goes to, you know, a lot less. And how do we move forward? You cannot continue to move in a path that's unsustainable or co-mingle funds to hire police or to use other funds in the general fund. It's illegal against the law. I'm glad that the city is moving in a way to create a plan to phase out, but again, we're going to have to realize, you may be phasing out as we did with the water fund. When I first got elected too, I was very concerned about that water transfer. Based on your guys' second study, you all decided to move forward in the direction to reduce that transfer. And I want to applaud you, I want to applaud this council for moving in that direction. But again, right there, you're removing that money. If we now move into this phase, you're going to have to remove 3 to 4 million each year. That is going to take another hit. And so I think we need to manage our expectations and really realize what revenues do we really have for our general fund so that we know what core services we actually can do and not do. It's very important as we move forward in the city. We need sustainability. We have a major structural deficit. We're going to have to generate more revenue, and we're going to have to be very creative. But at the same time, we're also going to have to be honest with ourselves in how we get there. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to next slide, here are some of the key budget challenges that we're going to be facing. So it's providing a balanced budget to the city council. So per our fiscal policy and our charter, we are obligated to present to the city council a balanced budget. So that's one of the things that we're going to have to try to address over these next couple of weeks before we present to you the work-study session budget. Also, it's the continuation of core services. I think there needs to be a discussion at the council level in terms of what is a priority, what is considered core, and how do we move forward on a go-forward basis. Continuing to meet our city's pension obligations, you know, if there's, are there any opportunities there to reduce some costs on a go-forward basis? You know, maintaining...
Can you tell me on the pension obligations? Currently, what is public safety, pain, and what is miscellaneouss?
We'll get those, we'll get those figures too.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. And then exploring new revenue opportunities and cost reduction strategies over the course of this next year, so.
Mr. Cortez, and just to make a brief point, I think all of the, majority of these are maintaining, balancing, cutting, that revenue generation. I think that is of paramount importance for us to zero in on because that's where we have more, you can only cut so much, you know, you can only get so thin. You can only put so much additional responsibility on the few staff that you have. We've already gone through a position of, over years, of reducing and scaling back. And so exploring every opportunity to be able to support economic development, business generation, that's why it's very frustrating, the action that was taken tonight to halt a project that was ready to move forward. But I just also just implore you and our staff to look at and explore every opportunity to be able to support, again, economic development and new revenue sources. And we may need to look at and explore here at the council some actions that are more policy-driven in nature, but then also just making sure that staff is looking at every opportunity.
You're absolutely right. See, during the recession, the city reduced its full-time staffing levels by about 37%. Okay? That's well over 700 positions that we had in the city. Now, you take into account that there, you know, the fire services were included in there as well. But there does need to be a discussion on priorities and setting expectations for staff because we are understaffed. There's just no way that you can solve this budget gap through reductions in staff because we just don't, you know, we're limited. Our options are limited. So we do need to start thinking outside the box as to other alternatives to generate revenue for the city.
I think that's important.
It's an important thing to start thinking about.
If I can just add a last point, not allow you to continue your presentation, but it is as we, again, as council and policymakers, look at where we need to focus our priorities. Again, if economic development is so critical to the sustainability of the city, we need to look at positions. You mentioned that we were understaffed, and that has been acknowledged by the council before. Our planning division, certain sections of our public works division, our economic development division, we don't have a department, we have one person, economic development manager, a city of our size. So it's one of those things where it's somewhat of a catch-22. We need to generate new business, new revenue sources and opportunities, but we don't have necessarily the infrastructure to do that, so we're sort of crippling ourselves. Again, that's just something for us as a council that we'll have to, definitely we'll need to have some of that information, education information from staff, from you and the staff, so that we can then make the decisions to where we're going to invest a few resources that we do have.
Absolutely. And just to go back to the pension question that Mayor Protem Martinez posed, so I have some numbers here in front of me. So public safety, the cost associated with PERS is 20.7 million dollars on an annual basis. The fire safety component is roughly 7.3. And the miscellaneouss, this is every other employee, it's to the tune of 5.7 million. So that's about 33 million dollars.
20.7 million for public safety.
For PD safety.
Yeah, for fire safety, 7.3 million.
Correct.
And 5.7 for miscellaneouss.
Correct.
Great.
Well, one of the things that we did want to mention is that staff worked really, really hard to get input from our community. We conducted a total of 13 meetings in various areas within the city. I believe there was two in each ward, and also we had a meeting here at the council chamber. So we had about 177 participants total, a lot of feedback, a lot of input. But the top three areas or priorities that were raised were in the areas of public safety, investment in our youth and recreation programs, and also traffic and pedestrian safety. All the information that was collected, comments, emails that were received, suggestions from the public, we've made that available for the public or anyone who's interested in reviewing that information. We do have that on our finance and budget website, so if anyone's interested in taking a look at that information, it is available. As far as the capital improvement program going on to 17, 18...
Acting City Manager, before you go on to the next, on this prior slide, you know, I appreciate this, like, because I know I sometimes am told, why do you spend so much time talking about public safety and that's all you talk about? And it's really not just because I believe that public safety is a core function of government, which it is, at least at the local level, but because our public really demands it, seeks it. We've had some very unfortunate incidents. And also too, when we speak about public safety, at least when I do, I'm not just talking about the enforcement piece. I really do believe that we need to focus a lot on prevention and intervention and just good policing and community-oriented policing and all the rest. So I appreciate this just as an acknowledgement that the community is asking for public safety as well as, you know, more investments in youth. And, you know, a few of us up here are on a youth education and community services committee, and I know we're getting ready to meet with the school district on partnerships, whether it be joint use opportunities, more of them, or summer job program partnerships, et cetera. So I do appreciate all the outreach that you and others in the staff have done.
Thank you. So as far as the CIP, the preliminary CIP for 17, 18, and again, this is just a snapshot in time, public works staff is still doing their presentations and going through their process in terms of preparing this, but these are the values that we have so far. So for 17, 18, the entire CIP program for one year is just over $46 million, comprises state improvements, traffic improvements, utility drainage and lighting, and city facility improvements. You will receive much more details when we have our work-study presentation in May 16. So next steps in terms of the process, we are scheduling a city council committee meeting to be held on May 15th to review the fiscal policy as well as potential options to consider in addressing the budget on a go-forward basis. May 16th, we will bring forward for city council consideration, the work-study session for the budget. Elements included here will include the entire city budget, not just the general fund. It'll include the CIP, the miscellaneous fees for city council consideration, as well as the workforce changes. June 6th would be the first hearing of all these elements for the city council to consider, followed by June 20th, which is the second reading and potential adoption of the budget. And we anticipate starting new fiscal year July 1st. So with that, that concludes the presentation, and I would like to open this up for council comments or questions.
Fantastic. Thank you, Robert, you and your staff. And of course, at Artemo Wett, you did a good job at really capturing our financial situation. So I'll just open up to some of my colleagues. If they have more questions, Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem, and thank you, Mr. Acting City Manager, for that. And I do want to compliment the, our Director of Parks and Recs, who started the whole discussion on the budget when he was in your chair. You know, I think that what's important is that we realize that this is a moment in time, but it can be much worse, right, if we make bad decisions. While at the same time, I think we can improve this condition if we make some good, responsible decisions. I think that, you know, many of us on this council faced some pretty daunting numbers when we were going through the economic crisis and the recessionary period, as you spoke about. I think the hole that we had to fill was much larger. I think now, we see the trend, and that's what bothers me, is the trend, right? When you see lines that are not just plateauing apart from one another, but these are, these graph lines are moving away from one another as we go off further in time. So we need to make some structural decisions, and that's what's difficult because they're decisions that are going to be ongoing, and they're going to affect us, you know, into the future if we make a bad decision here. So I, you know, I want to say that the numbers are, they've been confusing because at one time, we thought, well, we're going... time, we thought, well, we're going, we're heading in a positive direction, there's money in the surplus account, we have some reserve monies in the reserve fund, and so, a lot of that unfortunately is, you know, it's confusing, right? Because, you know, you do see that things are moving, and one cancellation of one contract really throws things off, but that's not the sole reason why we are where we are. I think that problem, we could probably tackle, and I think, you know, Madam Mayor Portem mentioned about the conversion to a type 1 versus a type 2, and there's other, you know, there's other options for the jail. I think that, I think you and your staff are going to be visiting with the county tomorrow to see what other potential reuse efforts could be done at the jail as well. And so, I think we can solve that problem, but these, I guess I'm more worried about some of the structural issues, right? The pensions and everything else that we have to deal with that we just can't escape from. We know the Supreme Court is dealing with the whole pension question and issue before it, and the whole California rule and how they're going to deal with this. And so, depending on what, how they deliberate and how they come down on that will affect not only San Ana, but it's going to affect all the, you know, cities in the state. So, all I would say is that, you know, it's important, and I'm glad we had this, because I know we were considering deferring it and maybe, you know, waiting, but it's important because as we make decisions now with respect to our jail, negotiations, core services, everything else, it's important that we have a context. We can't make decisions in a vacuum. So when we're asked to, you know, fund something, you know, we need to make sure it's going to be, we're going to be taking money from someplace else, right? I mean, these are not indefinite funds. And I know that you have started looking, and this is something Mr. Mowet started, which was looking to retain an independent auditor to come in and give us even a more precise picture of what we've done in the past three years and where we are now, so we can even have a better idea of what we need to do. So, I just want to make sure our expectations that we have with the public are ones that are, you know, real, and that we look at this soberly, and that we, you know, try to manage expectations, but to the extent that we can have that discussion on the jail sooner than later, and if you could maybe agendize that for committee as well. I know we're going to look at the one-time monies, but also a conversation on the jail and what we can do to accelerate, you know, conversion, accelerate options for that. I would certainly appreciate if you could also include that on one of the agendas.
More comment?
Just a quick comment, if we're going to have a discussion on the jail, make sure that we have the jail administrator present with their numbers.
Good idea.
Absolutely.
Thank you. More, I have comment, but yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Just actually, a brief comment, some of my questions, we address, and we address some of our questions throughout that presentation, more than anything, just, it was very helpful to be able to have some of this information, have it this, at this point in the process as we look at the budget preparation. So, just want to thank you, Mr. Cortez, and your team, and definitely Mr. Mowet, for helping us get to a point where we can have some real numbers, and appreciate just the full picture. And again, not just looking at this year, but a couple of years out, it's, some would prefer for it to be, for the outlook to be stronger and more in the black and the positive, but it's better to have the information early on. And this council has worked diligently in the past, we've closed larger gaps, there are some options, in fact, that we do have surplus funds that have been carried over, I think will be able to help us, but at this, as one-time funds, definitely need to look at the structural, long-term, sustainable budget. But I'm confident that this council will end up working as a team to be able to address that and move our city forward. Thank you for the permission again.
Thank you, Mr. Acting City Manager, for your report today. I just, I think that something that Councilmember Martinez has been talking about for quite some time is about our fiscal stability here in the city of San Ana. We have an opportunity, as Councilmember Sarmiento said, to also remedy this. That means that people have to sacrifice a little bit, and we also have to be very forward-thinking and creative on how we can solve for some of these problems. One of the things that we need to do is we need to go after every possible economic development project that we can bring into the city of San Ana. 65%, or I'm sorry, 65.9, so basically 66% of the population voted in favor of Measure BB. That's been a huge success. It's taken out well over 100 illegal dispensaries that used to be near parks, near schools, near neighborhoods, and we've regulated them and put them in industrial zones, and we're using those funds to continue the enforcement. I think there's an opportunity for us to look at other aspects of that as well, to bring in more revenue to the city. We also have, I've, we're looking at possibly bringing in other entities to come in and stay at our hotels and have national tournaments here in the city of San Ana. We need to look at that and aggressively go after that as well. We also have to take a look at re-establishing or reformatting the way that we have, the way we function in our departments. I think we have to look at more efficient, efficiency, and those, one of the things that I think we need to take a look at is we want officers on the street. I did a little research, and I found out that there are some officers, that are sworn officers, working in desk jobs, that could be worked, that could be, that job, that those jobs could be operated by non-sworn. And so, we talk about a possibility of shifting some of our workers from the jail over to those positions, and then putting more officers on the street. The other thing that we want to take a look at is, we've talked about going into, away from a type 2 jail and going into a type 1. Here's something else, we have a cost, we have a mortgage cost on the jail, we also have maintenance that we have, and I know that right now, we have an issue with the homelessness in our community. And many of our homeless folks out here are mentally ill, and the city is looking, I mean, the county is looking to find places where they can invest funds to serve that community. And so, that's an opportunity for us as well to stop the bleeding in that area as well. So we have inherited some, I think, poor decisions. If you think about the cost of the jail over the longevity of it, and let's just put $100 million on that for the community to make it easier to understand, I think it's more than that, but $100 million, could you imagine what we could have done with $100 million that would have directly benefited the community? Because see, here's the thing, there is no direct benefit to the community to have a jail. In fact, we have subsidized it, so taxpayers, we have used your money to subsidize that jail, instead of using that money for parks, for abatement, for street repair, and all other kinds of services that we could have used. So here's a time where we just have to take a deep breath and admit that some things are just not working, and have the courage to make the decisions that are going to keep, continue to keep us afloat. So I think we need to have more of this discussion, I appreciate the time that you've given us. I think there's creative ways where we can also reward our workers, I think our police officers need to be rewarded, but we also have to do it in a manner that we can sustain. So, thank you so much, Mr. Acting City Manager.
Councilman Solario, and then Councilman Vegas.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Martinez. A few things, first, you know, when we look at, you know, the city, and we look at the type of feedback we got from the community, there's interest in, you know, public safety, parks, infrastructure, and improvements. I know that the police department budget, you know, really is a percentage of the city's budget, you know, it's comparable to other cities, but I do know that, you know, we have a number of budgeted, authorized vacancies there, and so I think when we speak about adding, you know, Mark Park Rangers, because, you know, over the weekend, I was at Birch Park at that Dia de los Niños event, and, you know, the mothers there that helped prepare the park were concerned about all the needles that were there, and they had, you know, youth, you know, pick up the trash and the needles, and they were quite frankly embarrassed and concerned for their safety, and citywide, we have for about our, almost 50 parks, just one park ranger, so we clearly need to do better there. We spoke about emergency services and community-oriented police and other things. And I think with all the vacancies that we have, we can, within the existing police department budget, manage it better, fill the positions that we need to, and do a better job there. In terms of Parks and Rec, I think there's some modest proposals that some of us have. I know at our last committee meeting, I think it was our youth education and community services committee meeting, Parks and Rec staff was recommending cutting the number of youth that would go to the Catalina trip, and we said, you know, "Why would we do that?" You know, it's such a minimal cost for a high-impact activity for youth, and so, we asked that staff, you know, protect that program, and if anything, grow it, just because we know that that has a positive life-changing attitude for our youth. Also, I want you to speak, Assistant, I mean, Acting City Manager, to one issue that I think people will begin to notice, that it's really more of representation of fund allocations, but there were some fire personnel, I think pension costs perhaps that used to be viewed as if there were a budget department expenditure, but I think appropriately so, starting with this budget presentation, those obligations now have moved over to, you know, the fire services piece of the organization. Can you speak a little bit to the history of that and how substantial that is? Because I think people are going to see that now, as a percentage of the budget, that there's been a change, and I'd like the public to begin to familiarize themselves with that.
When, and that's a good question, thank you, Councilmember Solario. When OCFA was contracted to provide our fire services, the city of San Ana still needed to maintain paying for certain pension costs associated with the individuals tied to, that were employed previously by the city of San Ana. So, when we would calculate the cost or the PERS rates, you know, through the actuarial studies, it was very difficult to separate the component tied to public safety fire and public safety PD. So for years, you know, since 2013, I believe, we've been combining those costs or those PERS rate increases all into the police department. One of the things that the finance department has now been able to do is segregate the costs attributed to the fire versus the police department. So, starting with fiscal year 1718, you will now see a true picture of what the true cost is for the fire, including their PERS, as well as for the police department. So you will see a slight reduction in their budget, because now, the PERS costs associated with fire are not going to be included in PD, they will be included in the fire services budget.
And can you speak to what that net dollar figure is approximately?
Sure. I believe the fire safety amount is about 7.3 million.
Okay, so, so folks will begin to see that the police department budget is about, you know, almost $8 million less, and it's really just a reflection of-
Correct.
-fire safety pensions that are now being put appropriately in the fire services section. So I appreciate that, because I know in the future, that'll be something that folks will want to take note of. I also want to make note of, I know we're going to have a broader conversation about our capital improvement program, but one of the things I want to highlight now, to the extent that it could be addressed between now and then, is in terms of major streets, I get the most complaints about sections of Bristol that are really bad. It used to be our best street, and some parts of it really are slacking off, and I think, I don't see enough there in the budget for that. And then also, Rate Street, Rate Street especially from about, gosh, you know, Edinger to about Sixth Street or so, it's really, really bad. And I know it's to the point that, you know, it's not really a pothole repair effort we need to do, it's like major reconstruction, and last time I checked, it wasn't, you know, in any of the foreseeable out-years, and I really want staff to take a hard look at that. I know we're also trying to, at some point, implement hopefully a smart program that will provide ongoing revenues to our street maintenance program, as well as through the statewide transportation tax that got approved, maybe some resources from that can be used to Fix Rate Street. But Rate Street has major structural problems, it's a street that is in the area of, you know, some of our lower-income communities, and we really ought to do a better job there, so I want to put that on the record. Also, I know that I individually have met with you and our budget folks about possible revenue opportunities, cuts, reforms, I encourage all my colleagues to continue to do that, and maybe even at some point, we'll have to do a study session to look at the variety of different types of reforms or revenue measures that might help our city in addition to cuts. And on that note, on the revenue side, I know, you know, we've made mention of the development project on North Main Street, but we have about 90, at least 90 lots that are city-owned or owned by our housing authority, and we gotta put that out there either for folks to purchase, as well as I want to give an opportunity for nonprofits, for others to consider public-private partnerships. We have to also share that list with our school district and college districts to see what kind of interest there is, because, you know, an empty lot could be, you know, a vibrant small business, it might be a park, a skate park, it may be an expansion of a school, it could be a number of things, and I know what we've talked about, there's an initial list being worked on of something that might be put out to some type of bid. I'd encourage that, you know, sooner than later, we put the entirety of the list out for public consideration, either, again, an outright purchase or public-private partnerships, just to make better use of our land, and I think it also will generate some resources too. I've also asked the staff to consider, you know, it's nice having, you know, one-time money that you could spend towards something, but maybe something like that's what might consider, putting it into some type of deferred maintenance fund that can be used in multiple years for the type of things that we can't do, which is, you know, keep, you know, up to date some of our swimming pools or community facilities. I know we mentioned the yard and how their roof is falling apart, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that you can't get a fancy or big grant for, and so we have to look for opportunities for other one-time dollars that might be used for things of that sort. So, I want to thank you, Acting City Manager and the staff for putting this presentation together. Thank you.
Councilmember Vegas.
Just a real quick comment, being on this public safety committee, we asked the healthcare agency to see if they can have their personnel out seven days a week out here in the civic center, because it's really needed to have the therapists out there for the 5150 holds, because, yes, it's true, I've been working with the homeless population for over 25 years, I understand it's a great need, and many of them do have mental health issues. And one thing that Councilmember Tina Hedo mentioned about maybe using the jail or something like that regarding a mental health facility, my understanding is, I believe that the county, I'm hearing that the county's already working on four different facilities out there right now, like a crisis center, so that's food for thought, we might want to check on that. I'll look into it, but just kind of wanted to mention that. It's a little difficult to kind of convert the jail to that kind of facility, because it needs to be a special type of environment when you're working with that population, but just a brief comment on that.
Great, thank you, Councilman Vegas. Now, I have some comments, but I'm going to start off on a positive note before I give doom and gloom here. I just, you know, the explore new revenues and cost-saving opportunities, because when I just bring up, you know, issues, I also try to bring up, bring solutions to the table. And so, Councilman Solario mentioned this, the 90-plus vacant parcels that we have that the city owns, they've been vacant for 20-plus years, and we need to put those on the tax rolls. And I appreciate him wanting to give to schools and parks, but I just want to make it very clear that government, faith-based churches, nonprofits, education are all tax-exempt. So this city of San Ana, this county seat, has been subsidizing our educational institutions as our churches are faith-based, because they are tax-exempt, they don't pay property taxes. And so there has to be a balanced approach in how we generate money. I am supportive of using those parcels if we have cooperatives, if we have real human capital cooperatives, or we then sell those to developers to put those on the tax rolls. Look, the city has to find ways to generate money, we have to be creative in how we do that, and so, that's something that's for broader discussion. The other thing that I would ask is looking at value capture. And so for those of you that don't know what value capture is, is it's the process of retaining some percentage- some percentage of the value provided in a transaction. So, you can have business assessment districts. We have a streetcar that's coming and there's, the property values within that streetcar are going to go up. How do we capitalize? And so, you could also use land value capture, which is a method of funding infrastructure improvements as Councilman Solorio's talking about. So, improving that, successful recovering, you know, those funds and using that money to fix deferred maintenance within the city. So, there are ways. I know our Planning Director Hassan has done that in other cities. We have the capability at looking at that. This is our moment in time to do so. The other thing that, as I mentioned with, you know, our faith-based and education and government that don't pay property taxes, looking at doing pilot fees. And look, we have to put everything out on the table. I'm not saying that we're going to, you know, impose all these fees, but we have to be honest with ourselves and figure out what are the best ways to generate revenue. So, pilot fee is in payment in lieu of property tax. In many other cities across the United States, it's happening. And so, you know, when a church or a nonprofit calls for public safety, police and fire services, they're not paying for those services as our residents and other business communities. So, just wanting to be open about that. I'm very supportive of our nonprofits, very supportive of our faith-based, but we have to find a balance and figure out other ways of how we could actually generate money because I'll tell you that, you know, I know there's possible consideration in this council moving forward with doing some kind of tax measure, whatever that's going to be. And I'm going to be honest with you, I will not be supportive of any tax measure unless we deal with the Proposition 218 fees because at the end of the day, we cannot go to the voters asking them for money when we're already, you know, taking money away from them from other enterprise fees. And so, I just want to be very clear about that. I also made a suggestion to our Acting City Manager about the potential, you know, beyond looking at our jail as we're doing this study, you have, you know, the possibility of doing a health, a mental health center. If that's feasible or not, that's to be determined based on our study. But, you know, as we move forward and Mr. Cortez mentioned it, our user utilities tax, in particular utilities, it is decreasing. So, that's not a sustainable source of revenue as the state of California is moving forward with its cap and trade program. Look, there's unintended consequences, you know, big corporate, big corporate America like Edison is buying those offset credits and we have more of our residents being more energy efficient, so we're not generating that revenue. But another way for us to look at, how can we create an energy hub and possibly using and looking at the jail of some kind of form of consuming or generating energy for the city or for our residents? So, that's something I ask for us to look into. The other thing that I wanted to also bring forward is making sure that, you know, we have a couple of departments that generate revenue. We got to get out of their way. Our Planning Department, they're, they generate revenue, right? With all the development that we have, but for some reason or another, we seem to get in their way. We got to get out of their way. They are generating revenue throughout development and so I want to encourage us to give them the flexibility, to give our Planning Director the flexibility to do his job, to work with the development community, to move these processes very quickly so that we can generate that money and can go to our coffers. These are easy dollars that we can get, but for whatever reason, we always seem to get in the way of that generating department. And, you know, I want to move forward and hopefully that we can bring this process, Mr. Cortez, as it pertains to, and I spoke about this in the past in regards to our budget format. And I just wanted to take note that the way the format is in particular in regards to vacancies, we don't know, you know, what that number is. Every department has, you know, you know, an amount of positions, but, you know, like the Police Department, I think at a point in time, it was like 50 positions that were vacant. What is that total amount of number? I really believe that we need to consolidate and have one account that we were, that we would be able to put in, that it would be transparent and open, that we know, you know, when people can fill positions, when they're filling positions, when they're not filling positions. So, we actually know at this moment in time, I think there's a lot of confusion, you know, we're being told that there's these vacancies in the Police Department, that there's these vacancies and the reality is that the funding is not there, right, for some of those positions. And so, we have to find a transparent and accountable way to make sure that we're able to move forward in a transparent fashion. The other thing that I would ask for as well, that as we talk about one-time monies, we really didn't have a surplus. It was really tightening of the bout of our city department, but in December, I think we made the, a motion to not spend any of these one-time monies. But there are commitments and so now these one-time monies that we have available, 13 point something million dollars, are going to go to cover the deficit that we have. But we made commitments with those dollars because we said to continue it to doing many programs, the homeless, the homelessness, we were going to hire more folks out there, we were going to clean, and none of that is happening because the reality is we're not going to be able to do that. We're not going to be able to do the other programs that we said we were going to do because you have to fill those one-time monies for the budget. And so, I just want us to take that into consideration as well before we make any other determinations of using that one-time funds for anything else, that those dollars were already committed and we continued. And so, we got to be honest with the community. We said we were going to do X, Y, and Z and we said we were going to carry over until we knew what our financial position was. And now, our staff is making a recommendation to this council to use those one-time funds to cover the hole for this budget. And so, I just want my colleagues up here to realize that those monies were already committed. We're not, we're going to move them to something else if we do move forward in using those one-time monies with the fiscal policy moving forward. And then just finally, I just wanted to talk about the financial audit that we're going to be doing and I'm hopeful that it will be comprehensive and looking at some of the formats and processes because I believe it's imperative as we move forward that we actually have an understanding, a complete understanding of where the dollars are, the kind of line items that we have on our budget and are not always in detail and so, and they're on different pages. And so, making sure that we're able to consolidate, you know, the different funds and what they're being used for would be greatly appreciated. And with that, I just, again, wanting to thank, you know, you, Robert, for your candor here today and really shedding light in our situation because it's important for us to understand where we're at and where we're going to be headed. And so, I believe that the city has a bright future. We just got to manage our expectations, manage our expectations with the community and with our staff. I really believe that we have a tremendous staff here and a lot of them here are in the audience. They work very hard. They're doing two to three people's jobs. I respect everything that you all do. It's not easy. You're running a lean operation. This is a big city with big city problems, but you all don't complain. You just roll up your sleeves and you get to work and I do appreciate that and I think our residents appreciate that. Sometimes they call and they want the things immediately, but sometimes they don't understand either that you're doing two to three people's jobs. We have reduced our workforce by a lot of, and I'm not sure, I don't want to say how many positions, but I want to say over 400?
Including the transferring of PD to OCFA, it's over 700 positions. So, it's about 37% of our staffing level.
So, 37% of our staffing levels have changed, you know, since when we first came on here on this city council. And so, I see you all out here. I just want to thank you and just hold on tight. I'm hopeful that this city council will come together to create sustainability and move us forward and to thank, again, thank you all for the work that you all do for the great city of Santa Ana. So, with that moving forward, we are going to recess the city council meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Housing Authority meeting. We have Consent Calendar Items 1 through 3. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam City Attorney, are we going to excuse the mayor?
Oh, we have, that's right. We have to excuse our mayor for the Housing Authority. Do I have a motion to excuse Mayor Polito?
I'm moved.
We have first, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, now is Consent Calendar Items 1 through 3. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a first and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. So, we're going to adjourn the agency meeting and convene the successor agency meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have to excuse the mayor on this item as well?
Yes.
Make a motion to excuse Mayor Polito. We have second. Mr. Viegas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we have Consent, Calendar Items 1 through 3.
Motion approved.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Adjourn the successor agency meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. We have two items, 85A Review Actions Taken Late 2016 and 2017 to Address the Homeless Crisis and Provide Additional Direction to Staff. Councilmember Solorio?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam Martinez. As you all know and much of the public knows, about eight months ago, the city council declared homelessness a public health crisis in our city and some recommendations were made then and I think there's been some good progress on some of the items, but there really hasn't been reporting out to the public. And so, I really wanted staff to give us an update of the actions that were taken then, an update on some of the things that we've done since, as well as provide an opportunity for myself and my colleagues to make other comments. I think for both this item as well as the Measure BB Merewana item that follows this, both these two items have been the subject of our Public Safety Committee that Councilmember Tina Herro, Councilmember Viegas and I are on, but these, both these topics are so important to the public that it makes sense to have a presentation here to, again, report out. I do have some comments and some additional ideas on this homeless item, but I wanted to give the staff an opportunity to present to the public on this very, very important work.
Mr. Solorio, if you're going to take any action, I do have public comment on this item, so if you are going to take any action, if you please allow me to allow the public. Okay, great. Thank you before, thank you, Mr. Garcia. If I could please have Phil Becerra?
I know you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Good evening, members of the council. Phil Becerra, longtime resident and a planning commissioner here in the city. I want to thank Councilmember Solorio for agendizing this review of the status of what our city has done since September of 2016 regarding the homelessness issue. In September, members of this council supported a resolution that included support for the county to provide homeless services out of the former bus terminal on Santa Ana Boulevard and Ross Street. The purpose was, to quote the resolution, "to move the homeless population from the Civic Center area where business is conducted at government offices and the court buildings." As one can see outside these chambers, that has not worked and the homeless population is still camping in our Civic Center. Unlike any dignified, suitable living environment, the Civic Center is not equipped with easy access to bathrooms, to showers, or to electricity. The former bus terminal at Santa Ana Boulevard and Ross was never meant to be a facility for the homeless. Half of the facility does not even have a roof. The county proposed using the bus terminal as a temporary site until another site was identified to facilitate helping our homeless brothers and sisters. Our Civic Center needs to return to being a place where, as your resolution stated, where business is conducted at government offices and the court buildings. So, going forward, I would like to respectfully suggest that this council direct city staff to identify sites that comply with previously approved SB 2 zoning, such as being located in the M1 and M2 zones, and to present those potential sites to you within 60 days, if not sooner. One such site to consider is located on MacArthur Boulevard between the OCTA bus base and the Santa Ana River. Let's not wait for the county to come to us with ideas. Let's put the ideas out there. We've already seen what happens when the county brings us their ideas for locations. I want to believe that this council recognizes that the Civic Center is not a place even remotely suited to provide dignified care and shelter for our homeless brothers and sisters.
Mr. Becerra, if you could please conclude?
I will. I also want to believe that this city council recognizes the value of our city being the county seat and fulfilling its obligation and that our Civic Center to be a place where, as your resolution said, business is conducted here in government buildings and the court office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jorge, that was our last comment on 85A.
So, Mayor Protam and councilmembers, I just wanted to briefly mention that we have made significant progress since the council took action to consider the, say, public health and safety crisis back in September of 2016. Jorge Garcia has been instrumental in carrying the, these efforts forward and making sure that we are on task and completing these items. So, he's going to be covering a quick update for the city council as well as other measures that we have implemented above and beyond what was requested.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protam and members of the city council. A brief overview, as was mentioned, on September 6, 2016, the city council did declare a public health and safety crisis related to homelessness. And there was essentially four actions that that resolution covered and I briefly wanted to go over those. These are a summary version and not verbatim what's in the resolution. So, the first was that we would outline the elements of the Civic Center Safety and Security Enhancement Program that was approved at the subsequent council meeting. A request to the County of Orange to communicate its plan to open the transit terminal for homeless services, that was completed. To convene a meeting with the county's 33 cities and the County of Orange to discuss homelessness situation, that's currently tentatively scheduled for June of this year. And the fourth item was to request that each city in the county send a letter or a resolution to the County of Orange to take action and that did occur following the September 6 action. So, just as a brief overview and a reminder on what the elements of the Civic Center Safety and Security Enhancement Program entail, as well as the current status. The first action was to move our employees that were parking at a remote site closer to City Hall, so that was completed. The relocation of the Needle Exchange Program is in process. We do have active and open communication with the students from UCI that run that program and are working with them on relocation possibly to the courtyard or to another facility. Their current program allows them to operate in the Civic Center until 2018, February of 2018. Improved lighting, that's in process. The County of Orange is the lead agency as part of the JPA that the city and county are members of, so we do anticipate that that project, which is now approximately $200,000, will be out to bid shortly and we'll start seeing construction pretty soon this year. In terms of coordinating the feedings, that has been completed and is now being coordinated at the courtyard. The increase of the security guards is complete. We did add three specific security guards for the common areas, specifically the parking structures where our employees and members of the public park. The increase of the power washing, that was just approved a couple council meetings ago, so that has now started. The installation of the kiosk and information center, that has been completed at the courtyard as well. The increase in police presence, we did complete that immediately after the resolution. The then-city manager worked with the chief of police in order to implement that right away. We did subsequently get concurrence with the County of Orange on a lot of these items where they're providing a 50/50 match, so that is now being managed through the JPA. The increase in staff for enforcement has also been completed, as well as a safety assessment that was completed in 2016. The opening of the courtyard did follow the resolution by the city council and it was opened on October 6. As a result, we have seen a reduction in the amount of homeless individuals that are residing in the Civic Center common areas. This chart really shows you what we were looking at, where we were getting close to about that 500 individual mark in August of 2016. Now, we're seeing that hover around 115, 120 in our latest counts. The County of Orange does do the counts on that, so they provide that data to us. So, they tell us how many individuals are both in the courtyard on any given day, sleeping overnight, as well as being serviced during the day. Roughly about a little over 800 people are receiving some type of service daily out of the courtyard. As a result of the courtyard opening, we have actually seen a reduction in the calls for service. The Police Department did add an additional classification in their CAD system to respond to homeless. to homeless service calls, not just in the civic center, but throughout the entire city. So, as you can see in that, kind of that later third of the chart, where you see September 2016, our calls for service actually have decreased. So, the services being provided out of the courtyard, as well as a lot of the other measures that the various departments and the Santa Ana Police Department have been implementing are working, but there is still a lot of work to be done. So, in terms of other actions that the city has taken to reduce homelessness, the first is the HART program, which has been a very successful program that the police department started. Really, their goal is to address homelessness in the city and have a positive impact on the quality of life issues. The program is designed as a collaborative approach with the federal, state, county, and nonprofits in the area, as well as collaboration with the County of Orange with the healthcare agency and the probation departments. In addition, the city council in April 2017 allocated its latest round of ESG funding of $439,000 to nine homeless service providers. And the city also has taken a very proactive approach in a housing-first model to address homelessness. This graphic here, obviously, is a map of the city and shows, really, the three most recent projects that total 204 units that would classify under the housing-first model. The three projects, the Aqua Housing Project is 58 units, the Orchard Housing Project, 71 units, and the Santa Ana Veterans Village of 75 units. That does conclude our presentation. We'd like to thank you for your leadership on this matter and look forward to any comments.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes, thank you. Just mainly comments and suggestions for us to consider as staff, and, you know, this issue is also so important, that for every Public Safety Committee meeting, that we have this homelessness issues also on the agenda. Just some thoughts and some observations. First, thank you for your excellent stewardship over this program. There are a lot of elements and partners and issues and questions and considerations, so I do appreciate it. One thing I want to highlight really for our viewing public, because I know the PowerPoint slide maybe wasn't as clear as possible, and we have to put this presentation online, and it is, and I'll share it as well on my Facebook, for those that follow me on Facebook. But one stat here that is just staggering is, on the calls for service, you know, in about the 12-month period, in the past year, we've had about 4,500 calls for service, disturbance-related of the homeless, that's huge, in terms of trespassing, you know, a couple thousand at least, various drunken public battery over the past year, probably about, not many, five, but a lot of calls overall in the thousands, literally, and I'm glad to see that based off the actions that we've been taking, that those numbers are slowly reducing. I do also want to make the observation that when the county talks about how many homeless there are in the civic center, because they primarily take the lead in doing that, you know, and I've been, you know, in the bureaucratic world, having worked at OCTA for eight years, when they speak about how many homeless are living in the civic center, they talk about out in the open, which is, you know, the common areas you talked about, but I think for the general public, and myself included, the folks that are in the courtyard are homeless as well, and so, really, you know, the number is, you know, really about the same, but, you know, many of them now are in the courtyard, and the courtyard clearly is a better place for them, that's safe, that has restrooms, showers, areas for folks to keep their belongings on a temporary basis, and I know one of our commissioners was here and spoke to that. It's my hope that that's a temporary shelter, not something that be permanent, it was never intended to be so. I am also interested in the idea of exploring possible campsites that are not in public areas, like in, you know, near, next to libraries that our children visit, or near areas that have, you know, a lot of public coming through. And then, I also make mention of this, because I know county leaders are also having those conversations, and so, I don't want them to have those conversations unilaterally. I know I've had a couple meetings with Supervisor Doe, as well as the county homeless czar, and that they're entertaining sites, et cetera, including our own town, and so I want us to be part of that dialogue. I know in the city of Lake Forest, they have an officer assigned as part of the Sheriff's Department that's considered a homeless liaison officer, and I know we do some of that, but if staff in our police department, I know our acting police chief is here, if we could look at that. Also, another neighborhood leader, Chris Schmidt, shared with me and others, I think it's a memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Ana and the Sheriff's Department that says that we have joint enforcement responsibility over our creeks and river, and so, rather than us taking the lead and dealing with issues and problems with the homeless along the riverbed or along Santiago Creek, that we meet with them to see how we might be able to share that burden a little bit more, and maybe with our acting, you know, our acting police chief and acting city manager, I'd like to be part of that meeting, and then later, for our Public Safety Committee, that would be a good item. On the legislative front, and I know we did pass an item, there are few bills that are, I think are significant, that bring resources of flexibility. I won't go into the details, but Assemblymember Sebastian Ridley-Thomas has a bill, Assemblymember Daley has a bill, as well as Senator Morlock has a very significant bill that deals with a state-operated center in Costa Mesa on Fairview, that he intends for it to be a very large mental health facility, and we ought to learn more about that and possibly involve. Some of those are grant programs, we should explore that. I know, too, that many of us feel other cities need to also pick up the slack, and I know for Mayor Protem Martinez, she's made that issue, and so, we need to send out more letters, have more conversations with them. And then, my last point for now has to deal with, I think, an idea that I began to discuss with our city attorney, but I want broader dialogue on, and that is that we have many cities that, not allegedly, but really do, drop off their homeless in our city, and they use their police departments, they use their vehicles of various types, and I used to think it was an urban myth, but as I've now been working on this, there's been numerous officers, city staffers, others, that have made that point real and that have examples, and I don't know if it would be appropriate or legal, but maybe we ought to consider doing our own city ordinance that prohibits that, unless if there's been, you know, some pre-arrangement, if, you know, someone has a place at a permanent shelter or something like that in our city, but we need to send the message to other cities and communities that we don't really appreciate that, a little bit harder to police, but similar is the idea that they often will say, "Here's the bus, and take this route, and here's $250 for your day pass, and go to the civic center." You know, they ought to, you know, stay in their communities. And then, finally, I was also told by another county worker today that something else that happens is that the county jail, which is in Santa Ana, that when folks get released there, late at night, I think often, you know, like at 2:00 AM, they are just let out the door with very little, if any, money, so even though they maybe came from South County, or North County, or West County, they get released here in the middle of the night where there's nowhere else to go nor transportation, so they come to the civic center. And maybe we ought to explore with the county and our sheriffs and others the possibilities of returning folks from where they were picked up. I know that the state, you know, in theory, tries to do that, if that, you know, folks go to state prison, they go to a particular facility, and then, an effort is made to send them back to the community from which they originated, and, you know, Santa Ana is sure we need to do more, and I think the staff is doing it. I know we have approved various housing projects with homeless folks, particularly veterans, in mind, but this needs to be a shared responsibility. Finally, when I did meet with the county homeless czar, I was also pleased to understand that the way she's envisioning is that we have a county, and the county is being divided, at least in her mind, into north, central, and south, that is, homeless services and facilities are developed in certain parts of the county, that homeless from those three regions need to go to facilities in those regions, so that it's not just all the facilities in Central County and everybody being to Central County, so that is something that I do appreciate. I do want to thank my colleagues that last fall began to work on this, and the staff that have made, you know, real progress on these items, but it's a big issue, it's impacting a lot of folks, and the community's starting to harden up, in, you know, in ways that I'm not necessarily happy about, and you're all about. You know, I often do meetings, for example, at Polly's Pies on North Main Street, and they, about a month or so ago, they hired a private security officer, that now is the greeter at the door. We've never had that, but between the motel there, between the homeless at the creek, I'm sure the customers began to feel unsafe. And so, now you have a private guard greeting you at your local's Polly's, a very unfortunate cost to our local business. Also, good old norms, on Main, on 17th, they now, for the first time ever, have, in the restrooms, you gotta get a token out the front if you wanted to use the restrooms. That wasn't a cost, you know, that's a cost, that's another inconvenience on everybody, so the community's hardening up. We still get a lot of calls for service, but also, a lot of folks don't make the calls, and much remains to be done, but I just wanted to share those comments, give an opportunity for my colleagues to talk more. Again, I don't expect this to be the first or the last update or report to the public here on this dais, but we'll continue to at every city council meeting for our Public Safety Committee, bringing it up there as well, and thank you to the staff and my colleagues for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Solorio. Councilmember Sarmiento, followed by Councilman Villegas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I just wanted to make sure that one of the items that was presented in the PowerPoint, not get lost, which is the HART program, and I know that our officers, our award-winning officers that have that program have been a model for other communities, because they do such a good job with, you know, that segment of the homeless population, which does have mental illness problems, and they've been, you know, they've treated folks with dignity, with care, and have tried to place them in facilities where they could receive services. So, you know, the issue's been around with us for a long time. We see that the issue hasn't been resolved by the courtyard that's been set up, but we are certainly grateful that at least there was some relief provided there, and I want to thank Madam Mayor Protem, because I know, you know, during that election cycle with the county, I know that the county moved very quickly, and I think that had she not made the homeless problem an issue, I don't know whether we would have that facility or not. So, I think that it was a function, not so much of political will, but a political expediency for winning a campaign. Whatever the case is, we have that there, and it is addressing some needs. It hasn't resolved the problem. One of the problems I have is that there isn't a fair share, right? So, Santa Ana and Central County seem to be burdened with these problems, and we seem to bear the brunt of the entire county's problem and have the responsibility of shouldering that. So, to the extent that we make it clear to our friends across the street, who've already fenced off their part of the civic center and their part of this campus, forcing the homeless population for us to deal with, it really is their vested responsibility. They have that obligation to deal with the homeless problem, because they receive funds from housing and urban development to deal with this. Now, in Los Angeles, they had the same exact problem, where the city had to deal and absorb with mitigating and abating the homeless issue, and it was really the county's responsibility. Well, they ended up suing the county, because they realized that they were getting no relief, they weren't getting any of the monies, and they finally got fed up, because we can't subsidize what the county is supposed to be doing. If we received their monies, if they were to somehow direct those monies to the cities and say, "Okay, here's the money that we received, we can't handle the problem, you guys do it, you tailor it to your community standards," that's different. We could do it that way. Unfortunately, you know, they're holding on to those monies, they're not expending them, you know, the right way, and not quickly enough. So, to the extent that we continue speaking with them, that's fine. I think that conversation is always a good thing, but at some point, we have to realize that either they're not listening, or, you know, we have to take more affirmative steps with them and make them realize there's 34 cities in this county, and it can't be one city that shoulders that entire burden. And so, I'm grateful for what Anaheim's trying to do, they're trying to locate a site for a shelter, but two shelters for a county our size is just not going to solve the problem. So, to the extent that we are a little bit more assertive with our friends across the street and demand, not ask, and, you know, speak forcefully, and not just have a conversation, but tell them, "Look, we're willing to work with you, but let's bring the other 33 cities to the table." Thank you.
Councilman Villegas?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Martinez. Real quick, just wanted to say, I remember when the mayor said he didn't want to have the service center here at the river, at the bus station, because it was gonna bring a lot of people and from the outside, and that's exactly what happened. There was a big increase, and we are getting people from around the county coming here. One of the reasons, I'm not on the Safety Committee, one of the things that I brought up was that the reason, and I know this firsthand, that the city can't clean up everything, is because when they're picking up things from the homeless via the property, they have to store it for 90 days, and the city yard gets full, so they don't have any room. So, I asked them to see if they can coordinate with the county, maybe we can get one of their old warehouses or something where we can store things. I'm waiting to hear back on that. And I believe that some of the numbers that are going down, that we see here going down from the courtyards, possibly because there's an increase of people going to the riverbed, and that's what's kind of happening. So, some are getting housed, and that's great, but also, a lot of them are heading over there. A lot of these folks are, they're in a real bad spot, because, you know, they suffer from mental illness, and then they're using drugs to cope with it, so you can't really deal with drug abuse when, or you can't deal with the, you can't diagnose the mental illness when you have the drug addiction going on. So, they're kind of caught in between, it's really sad. And yes, it's true that when people leave the jail, there's two places they go, they go to the civic center, or they go to the 7-Eleven at First Street and Flower. So, hey, I know firsthand, it's just, you know, I used to work out here for a very long time. And thank you, Phil Becerra, for bringing this up, you know, your comments about looking elsewhere. We need to do that, but at the same time, you know, we cannot do it all, and those are my comments.
Great. Councilman Tina Herro, then Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. One of the things that fascinates me is, whenever we talk about students right now affording college, and whenever we talk about free college, everyone always says that we can't afford it. We don't have a problem so much with money in our country, it's more about, we have a problem with will. When we want to fight a war, nobody asks the question, "How much is that going to cost?" We find the money. When we need to educate our students, you know, now we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it, which is such a fallacy, when you really think about it, because the educational component is what helps us continue to thrive as a society. Well, I look at this, too, as a country, we've been kind of obsessed over the years with a war. We have, we fight wars, we have a war on drugs, we have a war on exploitation, but I never heard anyone really say, "We need to have a war in solving homelessness in our country." And I think part of that is, unfortunately, the reality is that there's no money in it. Elected officials, if they could, if homeless people could donate to elected officials' campaigns, trust me, we would solve for this immediately. And that's the reality, is that sometimes, one of the things, in all my years serving as an elected official, I have seen the power that money has in influencing policy in a variety of different areas, which is a sad, sad thing. But I'm happy that Councilmember Solorio brought this up, because by bringing it up, we have a true conversation about this. And I believe that it's an ongoing conversation, because the reality is this, many people were not worried about homelessness, because it was concentrated here in certain parts of our community, but when it started to spill out into other areas of our community, now people are starting to say, "Wait a minute, we need to do something about it." I think what we need to do is, going back to what Councilmember Villegas talked about, about mental illness, is not react to this, not create policies as a reaction, but create policies as a solution and an opportunity to help people get out of that situation. There's a slippery slope that happens with mental illness. If you're mentally ill and you lose your job, now you don't have the money to pay for your medication, and so, then what ends up hap- money to pay for your medication. And so then what ends up happening is some start to self-medicate. So there's a big component here, and I think we could be creative in trying to find ways to try to solve for it, because ultimately, it's about a quality-of-life issue for everyone, for everyone. So, thank you so much for bringing it in.
Thank you, Councilman Tina Harrow. Councilman Benavides?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I thank you, Councilman Solorio, for bringing this up, and also acknowledging the work that has been done. And it started some months back, even last year, by council. A couple of things to highlight and to just kind of reinforce perhaps from some of the comments my colleagues have made. One is the point that Councilman Solorio did make about individuals being dropped off or being sent here from other cities, other jurisdictions. Something that Madam City Attorney may recall, there was some initial conversations via email that we've had around that, as well with Chief Rojas, and some conversations with, that I've had with Supervisor Doe around that. It's one of the things that he's mentioned, that he's noticed since the courtyard opened, that there has been an increase of individuals that have come in and come in from other cities, are connected with Chief Rojas, and he has some narrative around incidences specifically that some of his officers have noticed. So I think he did some initial preliminary review as to options that we might have with regard to ordinance, as was mentioned, sending a strong message to some of these neighboring cities and jurisdictions, calling them out even, going to the point where we can highlight these practices, and to a certain degree even shame them from doing that. So I would encourage us to look back at maybe some of those initial conversations and exchanges we've had, to see what options we might have around that. And I've heard also before, the late-night releases of inmates and how they end up oftentimes in our civic center. So looking into that as well would be helpful. Working ultimately with the county to reiterate some of the comments that some of my colleagues have made. I appreciate that our approach here as a city, I believe that we've been leaders in intentionally adopting policy and adopting housing projects to be able to go with the housing-first approach. We have quite a few units that we have designated toward that, although recognizing that that's, that there are a lot more need than what we have or are creating housing for. Ultimately, we need long-term and short-term solutions. The idea of a shelter is one that we should definitely look at, how we can make that a reality. Here in Santana, on Thursday, they're having the grand opening of the facility out in Anaheim. Several cities coming together there, Anaheim, I believe, was Placentia and Fullerton around that project. And here in Santana, you know, there's definitely an opportunity and need that we have to work with some of our neighboring cities. I would encourage, I think there is interest from the county, on the part of the county, to look at even the way that they're promoting the opening of the center on Thursday. I believe that they're calling it the first shelter, around shelter. So they have language around, and what I believe, and I'm hoping, is a commitment to be able to see more long-term solutions. So I would encourage us, we need to, you know, work with the county, with the CEO across the street, with some of our supervisors. Their identifying locations, I think, would be a smart thing for us to look at. There have been a few options that have been mentioned. At one point, we talked about the Alton Yard, I believe, over by Dyer and the 55 on Alton Street. This other area that was suggested tonight by one of the speakers on, I believe it's MacArthur and the riverbed as well, being another potential location. I'm sure that there are others. So we do have to be proactive. I think there have been steps that we've been taking. But I would definitely encourage us to look at options, approach that the county, look at practical next steps, so that hopefully soon, we can start working now that they've got that facility opened up this week, that they can start looking at something else here in the city of Santana. Those are some of my comments, and hopefully some action steps that we can take for follow-up action. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Benavides. And I would just make a couple of points. I've been working with our city, I haven't stopped, and working with Robert and Judson in trying to convene. But there have been several convenings on homelessness here in Orange County. I've attended a couple. And in particular, the Association of California Cities, Orange County has been taking the lead. UCI has done this study. You have the ACLU, they've been involved, they've been going to the county as well, and really trying to come up with a comprehensive approach, the county czar. And so we're scheduled to have that meeting that we were committed to. But because of all these other meetings that were occurring, it was kind of redundant in trying to, you know, have our own meeting. And we're going to be discussing and taking a different approach. I really believe that we need to gather more open data and information about, you know, some of the issues that we're addressing with homelessness, specifically here in Santa Ana and the region. And homelessness is not just happening here in the civic center. It's happening throughout the entire city. Whether you go to the west part of town, to the north or south, there is homeless throughout our entire city. It is a crisis here in Santa Ana. It is a crisis here in Orange County and across the United States of America. We've had this discussion here on this dais, not once, but various times. But the reality is this, this city has made a commitment over the years to contribute its funds to a lot of the nonprofit organizations for shelters and providing our, really, our Section 8 housing now to our veteran homelessness. We're creating a first-model approach. We have committed our dollars from the JPA in partnership with the county. But ultimately, the responsibility of homelessness does not lie on the feet of the city of Santa Ana. The county of Orange receives funds for housing, it receives mental health funds. You know, that is what they're mandated to do. A lot of people get confused, well, what's the role of the county? Let's just be honest, why they exist. They exist for, their role is mental health services. They get passed through from the federal government and the state government to provide these services. I am not going to talk negatively about the county. I want to partner with the county. We need to partner. But ultimately, you know, they, the reality is that the responsibility is theirs. We have to deal with the civic center. We have a joint powers agreement with him here in the civic center, and that's where we need to partner. Beyond the city, beyond the riverbed, on and so forth, that responsibility should not fall in the city of Santa Ana. The reason why the homeless come to the city of Santa Ana, it's obvious. We are the county seat. They get the services from the county. They have social services here. They come and get other services throughout, you know, the campus here. And so this is where they come. And we need to realize that as being the county seat. We have taken an approach in the early, in the late 80s, early 90s, where we took a strong approach, and we created these ordinances, you know, camping ordinances, on and so forth. And we took this really harsh approach, and we were sued, and we lost. Right? This happened in the 80s and 90s. Here we are in the 2000s. The economy has shifted, this has shifted. Homelessness has increased here in Santa Ana and throughout Orange County. No one would have ever thought off the 57 freeway going to an Angels game, that you would see encampments off that riverbed. No one ever thought that that would be happening here in Orange County. So when we talk about homelessness, let's just not talk about it here in the context of the city of Santa Ana, but of all of Orange County, and really, who has that responsibility? And so I agree that there has to be a comprehensive approach to solving this problem. But we also need to come together. There's 34 cities here in Orange County. There's the county of Orange. We have three redevelopment agencies, the city of Santa Ana, actually four, my apologies, the city of Santa Ana, Anaheim, Garden Grove, and the county of Orange. We receive all the funding for housing, those four entities. We have to figure out, how can we work with all four of them? And there are, I think all four of us are part of that map that the czar has put together in calling it, is it North Orange County? North, North Orange County. And so I'm glad that she's moving in that direction, where we can take a collective approach of various cities within North Orange County to help address the issues that are occurring within those cities. I believe that we can solve and address many of these issues if we sit together at the table. And so that's one of the things that I am trying to do with this convening in June, so that we could have some kind of direction, not just coming from Santa Ana, but how can we work with Anaheim? How can we work with the city of Garden Grove? And continue to partner up with the county? And how can we leverage our resources? Because ultimately, Santa Ana can't invest all its public safety resources. We can't invest all our housing dollars towards homelessness. We have other, you know, services that we need to provide to our community. But we're understanding that this is a huge problem. This is not a problem that is not going to be solved overnight. The city of Santa Ana could continue to put hundreds of thousands of dollars, even millions of dollars, and we're not going to solve this problem, because we can't do it alone. It's not one city that can solve this problem for Orange County. And so it's my hope in June, I know our staff is working and trying to get to moderators to help present. And soon as they affirm that out, affirm that date up, they're going to send out the invitations to the various cities and the various partners. And in particular, I just want to go back to the Association of California Cities, that has been doing, again, an amazing job at bringing elected officials to the table. And I know, we're not members of the ACOC, we're members of the League of City. And I know, they've been asking, and they've been taking the lead, and they've been very helpful to our staff, and how can we continue to work with them, and how, maybe have them take a lead, and help us and build some guidance of what's, what are some next steps for us in partnering up with some of the adjacent cities that are part of the Orange County czar's recommendation, and how we should move forward in a collective manner in trying to solve this homeless issue. And so I want to thank Councilman Solorio for bringing this issue up. I think this item should come to the city council, you know, every, maybe possibly every month for an update or going to committee. But I will say that from the moment we approved that resolution, Jorge has done a tremendous job in collaborating with the county, working and getting his job done. And so Jorge, if you can please continue to work with the county, but continue to send updates to the city councils, put it, put what we're doing on the website, so the community is aware of what we're doing, and we're being transparent about it. And really, I think at the end of the day, how much is the city of Santa Ana allocating to this issue? And if we want to continue to allocate more, what is that number, right? And what is that number going to equal to? What are we going to accomplish? I think it's important for us to understand that if we want to allocate more resources, we got to have some outcomes. And what are those outcomes? And so we need to figure that out. Those are policy decisions and financial decisions. But I think that's where we stand. Mr. Solora, I'm not sure if you have any more comments?
Just a couple more last quick items. Number one, I had today a coffee meeting with my college good friend, Dr. Jose Moreno, who is a new council member in Anaheim. And in Anaheim, they've taken, you know, tough on, you know, homeless stance for a few years with real ongoing enforcement of their anti-camping ordinance. Here, we take more of a selective approach. And so he asked, well, how has that worked? And apparently, even though they've kind of been tough in terms of, hey, you know, move your stuff along, you can't be camped out here, their number of homeless in their city during, let's say, the past, you know, five-plus years or so, has doubled. So this tough-on, you know, you got to get out of the way, shush your way, doesn't work either, which is why I think this council really is a bigger believer in, you know, in housing first, and wraparound services, et cetera. So I wanted to share that. Also, I know we have some great leaders here from CommLink, which is the umbrella group of all the neighborhood associations. And they, I think, at their next meeting have Supervisor Andrew Doe, that's going to be speaking at their May meeting. And so if folks want to Google, you know, CommLink in that meeting, that is later in the meeting, and the subject is homelessness. So that is good. Finally, our next Public Safety Code Enforcement and Neighborhood Empowerment meeting is next May 9 at 5:30. So if you want to hear more, and I'm going to, we're going to, I think, hopefully take all this discussion to see what additional items we may want to consider at our Public Safety Committee meeting. But that's May 9. I know also on May 9, we have, you know, the Measure BB and the marijuana issue also regularly on our agenda. So I'm hopeful that with this next item, ideas that come to discussion here, that we can continue the dialogue there, because likewise, the staff has done an excellent job teeing up some items that might be updates to the Measure BB ordinance, so that we can keep our community safe and generate some revenue as well. So thank you to the staff and my colleagues for this great presentation and this great dialogue. And I agree, for the full council, you know, maybe on a quarterly basis, or at least twice a year, we'll have to have the broader council and the public be part of this conversation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is 85B, direct staff to consider updates of Measure BB and provide a work-study session. This is Councilman Sarmiento and Councilman Benavides's item. We do have a couple of comments, and so let me take those, so that you guys can start your conversation on 85B. If I can please have Robert Oliver followed by Alex Vega.
Good evening again, honorable council members and staff. According to Laffier, Pulido said, you guys got money? Laffier said, Hertzberg replied, of course we have money. Then according to Laffier, Pulido said, he would make sure that there would be a position on the marijuana task force for campaign contributors. At that point, Hertzberg wrote a check to the PAC and handed it to Pulido, Laffier said. This is a Voice of OC article dated June 2015, medical pod advocate alleges Santa Ana mayor traded influence for campaign cash. The reason why I bring that up is because I don't know where you intend to go with this 85B. But let's take a look at how it started, because it started right here. This very council drafted the measure and put it on the ballot, which passed. And it created 24 licenses around the city to control where they would be, away from schools and industrial areas. And the, those 24 licenses were supposed to be per lottery, just completely random lottery. And I think we've all heard the stories, how that lottery maybe was not so random, right? We've seen the reporting from OC Weekly, saying that a lawyer was going around to the dispense series, saying, you want a license? I'm the mayor's lawyer, you need to talk to me. Okay? So it passed. There were 24 licenses created pursuant to some lottery. And so what you did was you created an oligopoly. And oligopolists being what they do, they protect their turf. Now the licensees are suing the city, protecting their turf, because according to them, you're not enforcing all the unlicensed dispensaries around there. So I think before you look at what you're going to do, you ought to go back and look at how this process was started, how the licenses were granted, and was it legit? Was one of your members profiting from it? And if so, how? Is one of your members, and I noticed the mayor isn't here, profiting from any of this? Who's behind the licenses? Who owns it? Who's behind the owners? And so we're all just tired of having someone use their official seat to profit from these activities. And we just ask you to help us in the corruption, in the corruption.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. And Mr. Alex Vega.
Yeah. Buenas noches. I love that. You know that I started, Julian, being a community activist because of corruption. Today, May 2, I finally found a bullet. I said I was looking for a bullet. Meant I want to die. No. A bullet killed my brother Rudy. They killed Ram Vega. Another bullet killed Christian Ramirez. It was a hollow point. Today, walking through Santa Ana, coming to downtown, I found a bullet, hollow point, 40 caliber. I put it in my wallet, and I lost my wallet today. But that's okay. In my wallet, I only had one card, Villegas card. While I said Villegas, I've been watching him, the new blood, sheriff, jazz, the spirits, jazz. yes, homeless. When the idea came about in the industrial area, you said, "No." Wrong location right now? Yes. Wrong location for the homeless shelter? Yes. Using politics for things because you want a vision? I don't know. Villegas is the new blood. I support him 100%. Corruption? Mr. Tinajero is the master of lottery. Remember baseball? The lottery you did? The lottery you do with the most? Yes. If all of you have to live 2018 in Villegas, being a sheriff, working with our police officer, and let me tell you about me. First of all, they say about pro-Mexican? No. My mentor, Paul Hickey. I miss Paul Walters. Mike McCoy, my brother. Officer Kupler, Henry Sparza, Commander Gominski. And right now, a full patrol? Manuel Delgado. Yes. And then we have LaSardi.
Alex, you have to conclude this.
No, 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 no. Let me please finish. Anyway, in the new, the one that is our new chief, Carlos is gone. Well, he had to leave. And Roberto, Robert.
Alex, thank you very much.
Robert Cortez, felicidades. La política es, pero él le dejó el lugar. Le dejó el lugar si no le hace. Le dejó el lugar a Gerardo. Por qué? No sé, pero él fue. No, no.
Thank you, Alex.
No, no. No, no.
Great. Thank you. Yes, you'll be back. Public comments. Yes, thank you. So, back to 85B, Councilman Sarmiento, Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. And I know it's getting late, so I'm going to try to be as brief as I can with this. I wanted to thank staff for circulating the presentation that it has scheduled to present at the Public Safety Committee meeting, and I'm glad it's going to be addressed. I think it's important that there be multiple opportunities that the public gets to hear and comment on this, and also for, for the council to be able to give, you know, as a full body, to be able to give some comments as well. You know, I remember, and I think somebody was reminding me, when we had a moratorium, you know, which was, I think, a few years ago, and, and we, I think the moratorium was in place for about six years, as far as I recall. And there were about 120 unpermitted illegal operations going on in the city, and we realized that the moratorium wasn't working. And, you know, we had them close to sensitive receptors like neighborhoods, parks, schools, and there was very little that, that we could, you know, do about them. And then, you know, the, the industry put its own ballot measure forward, and, and the city had to put a competing one on just to give the public an opportunity to, to opine on both. You know, they came back supporting the cities, which was good because it allowed for this effort to go forward. And now, I think the latest report I've received is that there is probably less than maybe 15 unpermitted operators somewhere in that neighborhood. That's always a fluid number, obviously, but it's much less than 120. Right? So, what we did is those proceeds from the sales and from the revenue that was generated from those operations go towards enforcement. So, that was a real critical step that I think we took. And we, you know, we certainly wanted to listen to the public, work with the public, make sure that the voters had an opportunity to dictate where we went, and I think that's been the case. This has been a voter-led effort, and this is something that we, we decided to codify as a result of the direction that we received from the voters. I want to thank the operators, and I believe the number of operators is technically 20. I know that there's maybe 15 or 16 online. There's about four or five in the queue. But I know that the measure has been in place now for close to a couple of years. And so, I know that there was a term or a condition in there, Madam City Attorney, where we were going to have an opportunity to come back, make some adjustments if we saw it necessary, make some amendments. And I think it's a, you know, it's been far too long, because I know that the operators and the industry has been very patient. And there are some very simple things that can be done, some simple adjustments that I think were highlighted in the presentation that will be presented to Public Safety and was circulated to the members of the council. So, you know, these are things that we've heard individually from the operators themselves, and they've been, you know, patiently waiting, they've been, you know, responsible in the way they've conducted themselves. So, that's been a good thing, because we've seen other communities that have tried to go down this path, and they just haven't been as successful. I mean, you see and hear a lot of litigation involved, and I know we've had our, you know, our, you know, litigation that's been here. I think we've resolved almost all our cases with the exception of a few. So, that's been a good thing. But I do want to make sure that we give some clear direction, because the industry and the patients have been very patient and have been, you know, willing to wait us out on this. And so, I think it's important that we also start giving some, some direction on things that we can improve in the measure. And so, I know that the, some of the suggestions that were made, were made directly from the industry and the operators and the license holders after some roundtables that the city had conducted with them. So, some of those recommendations were to adjust the hours of operation and to see about extending them for a couple of hours, to relax some of the signage requirements and to see how we can improve that and make some, some adjustments for them there, to allow for some testing and research and development on that, and to allow for some cash-on-hand adjustments and some delivery as well, because we know that some of the patients are not in a condition to drive or transport themselves to some of the collectives. So, those are, to me, very, very reasonable, in addition to continuing the robust enforcement efforts that we have against the unpermitted operators, right? Because obviously, the, the less unpermitted operations we have, the more we can do and help with the, with the legal ones and make sure that they're conducting themselves properly and that they're following all, all the rules. So, I simply wanted to just put that before us, and maybe we could look at a specific timeline as to when staff feels comfortable bringing those back to us after, obviously, they go and vet this a little bit more at Public Safety, they can talk a little bit more about those. I just want to get these issues before us and back to us in the form of an RFCA that we can all discuss. And, and I know, I know the staff has already gone down this path, because I know that they went with the, I think it was last fall, they went and visited Colorado, went and visited Nevada. So, there are some good recommendations on best practices or better practices that we can be adopting as well. One additional thing that I would just suggest, and then I'll turn the floor over to Councilman Benavides, is that we consider doing a study session on some expansion of the industry, because really what we've done, what we tackled with the 20 licensees, is handle the retail side, and that's the real difficult side. That's the one that has all the secondary impacts of, you know, loitering and, you know, onsite use. But then there's parts of the industry that really have very little secondary impacts, which is, you know, manufacturing, testing in pharmaceuticals, cultivation, areas that I think the city could lead in if it's a responsible, you know, if it's a responsible party business. We know that the voters in November of last year adopted Prop 64. So, we know that these regulations from the state are going to be coming down and, and are going to be basically mandating to counties and cities on how they should operate and how they should conduct themselves on this. But this is an opportunity to get ahead of this and be able to tailor our, you know, our regs to our community standards. So, that's something that, you know, we can, you know, we see all the benefits of that with respect to jobs. We were talking about revenue generating efforts. This is certainly one way we can, you know, attack that, because there's all kinds of things that, you know, flow from being a hub in this, in this industry. Packaging, you know, legal pharmaceutical, I spoke about. But, you know, I just think we need to have a specific timeline. You know, the work-study can follow maybe our adoption of some of these, you know, more attainable goals, and, and we can start moving from there. But I just think, you know, it's, it's, it's been, you know, I think we had it on our plate to tackle, I think, last fall, but then the election got in the way, and then, you know, obviously, a lot of other changeover and our staffing took place, so this has been put to the side. I certainly don't want to pile on staff and give them one more thing to do, but I know a lot of steps have been taken towards this, so I just don't see that there's going to be too much difficulty in at least making those first adjustments and then coming back with some suggestions about how we can consider amplifying and expanding the, the industry opportunities that we have before us. So, with that, you know, those were my remarks as I turn it over to Councilman Benavides.
Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Some of the comments I have are similar, and we discussed bringing this item before the council. You know, there's no secret that I was not a proponent of Measure BB, of putting Measure BB on, on the ballot. I was not in favor of it, and some of my colleagues here and I arm wrestled around that fairly, quite directly. And one of my main concerns was the fact that we had over 100, 120-plus illegal, unpermitted dispensaries already that I felt were a significant problem in our city, and my concern was that we were going to perpetuate that by then allowing additional dispensaries. Now, at this point, looking back and seeing the, the impacts and how we've been able to scale back the, those, the majority of those, a large, you know, alliance share of those, those illegal dispensaries, and seeing how the problems around those have significantly decreased, and actually going out to, to visit some of the, the, actually, a particular, a couple of, of the permitted dispensaries, one of those tours that I took with Akron City Managers sometime back, I realized that we, we were very thorough in the regulations that we put into place and that the, the operators are clearly being very responsible operators. And I was actually impressed by all of the, the mechanisms from security to the operations that, that city put in place and that they're, they're heating to, that are making it so they're legitimate businesses that are providing a service to the community. And at this point now, looking at where we are now, a couple of years later, you know, there are a couple of things. We have as a city, by way of the voters, have permitted and allowed for, for these, for the dispensaries. They are now, have demonstrated that they have, are operating in a, in a responsible way. They're now a legitimate business within the city. So, when we talk about being business-friendly, and I think it is important for us to look at, you know, how can we continue to support legitimate businesses to be able to operate and do, do their, you know, business within the city and potentially expand some of these, these, you know, requests they've made, the hours of operation, some of the basics, hours of operation, the signage rules, some of the other questions around manufacturing, cultivation. Again, once again, the voters, in this case at the state level, have passed Proposition 64 that's going to come into effect January 2018. We've made strides as a city to ensure that we have certain regulations in place. Now, when we look at Prop 64 and its impacts, I think it's incumbent upon us, and it would be prudent for us to look at how we prepare now for the impacts that will be coming in 2018, not only from the standpoint of regulation and enforcement, but also the potential for revenue generation. I think from, when it comes to the region, the county in particular, we, Santa Ana has been ahead in game on this. I think it's going to be very significant or very important for us to continue to, to stay ahead. So, I would echo some of the comments and, and requests that my colleague has made with regard to some action steps for, simple action steps that I know that we've been preparing for some time, some I think that are, might be in the queue already. White paper that I know was developed, some of the research recommendations that have been made for staff, from staff to council. At the same time, one of the things, so I would recommend that we definitely look at some of these low-hanging fruit, if you will, to be brought before us for action. But then, when it comes to the larger scale, when it comes to, to potentially retail, again, responding to the passage of Prop 64, I also think that it's important for us to recognize that our staff and some of what we've discussed earlier, we may not have necessarily the, the bandwidth within the current staff that we have in place to be able to, to take on proactively some of these, preparing for, for some of that. So, so I think it's important for us to hear from, from you as well, is what it might take. Maybe we need to bring somebody in to be able to serve in some consultant role or capacity or, or a position, or whether it be within one of the departments within the city, whether it be City Attorney's Office, somebody also to look at from, again, from a business perspective, some of these, these revenue generation opportunities. So, but we do, we do need to hear from, from, from staff so that we can, again, capture some of these opportunities, again, to regulate and to provide for economic development and not miss on the opportunity, whether it be, have other cities around us kind of capitalize on things and have us miss opportunities, or for us to, on the other side, not be ready to enforce if things end up, you know, going back to a place where people start coming in and, and trying to operate without, you know, legitimate, legitimate authority to do so. So, some of my, my feedback request for us to, to look at, and to, Councilman Sarmiento's point, a timeline would be important for us to be able to be ready to take some, some action. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Tina Jaro.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protam, and thank you, Councilmember Benavides and Councilmember Sarmiento for bringing this up. I do believe that we do have to look at and, and basically tip our hat to those that we, that are in those industrial zones right now that are operating and have had a great track record moving forward. I believe that we have been able to eliminate many of the illegal dispensaries that were near our homes, that were near our parks, that were near our schools. And so, I think it's been a great success. Now, I think it's time that we start to look at possibly expanding ours and looking at that as well, and also taking a look at manufacturing and cultivation within those sites that, with those people that are already here in our city that have been operating. I think they have a track record now that we can look at and then move on to the next level. But I'm going to ask, if possible, if we can just move this to the Public Safety Committee that's coming up this, next week, that, so that maybe we can agendize what we're talking about here and have a thorough discussion there at Public Safety, and then maybe bring it back to the council. And also to the Finance and Economic Committee.
Yeah, so I think we have regulation side, and then we have the Economic Development side, so agendizing. And that's one of the points, actually, that I missed from what I was going to ask for, for it to come before the Economic Development Budget Finance Committee as well.
So, two committees, Economic and Finance, right? Economic Development and Finance and Public Safety. Is everybody okay with that? Councilmember Sarmiento, you chair that committee.
More comments?
I mean, I personally think that we need to have clearer jurisdictions, or else we're going to have multiple committees discussing the same thing in full work-study session. I like the idea of bringing it back to a work-study session here, but to have all, all the committees discuss the same thing, especially with the staff.
I'd just like to point out from a procedural matter under the Brown Act, you would not be able to have multiple committees working on the issue, because you'd have more than a quorum addressing the items.
Yeah. That's another reason why it's, for things where particularly there's ordinances and stuff involved, you want to keep clear jurisdictions. And we've been, and we've been working on this ordinance already, and I think, you know, for us to consider it there, I think the idea is to, we're meeting next week, we're going to look at the draft ordinance, and it's, I think, scheduled to come back to the full council at our second meeting in May or the first meeting in June. And then I would recommend that we meet with the stakeholders and the staff on what might be an appropriate study session for future items. I think has been discussed by Councilmembers Sarmiento and Benavides, there's, and Tina Jaro, there's some initial things that make sense and are easier to do, like, like, like the hours, onsite manufacturing or other activities, so that we keep it contained in these industrial areas, and so that we do the, the quicker measures first, that we also continue to do enforcement. And really, I think we want to do the initial stuff because it's contained, it's working well, we're dealing with the enforcement. On the revenue side, the city- On the revenue side, the city staff had estimated that for this current fiscal year, that the revenue generated, where the city's general fund was going to be 1.5 million. And even though we don't have all 20 up and running yet, the revenue is now expected to be 2.5 million for this fiscal year. And I think with the further establishment of this industry and maybe adding a couple more dispensaries under the Measure BB limit and these hours and other changes that we'll be considering and bringing back, I think we may, might be able to get to 5 million for this next fiscal year. And if we keep cracking down on the illegal ones that aren't paying taxes, I think that's a real positive. So I wanted us to consider as the committee, and my colleagues have mentioned that we do those things first, bring that back in quick order, we work with staff, the stakeholder and others on what might be appropriate study sessions for the future. Because on the large-scale stuff, you know, I'm a little bit concerned that we have manufacturing areas, and so we don't want to replace very good, advanced manufacturing jobs and replace them with low-end jobs. We want to be careful about the type of changes there so that it's really economic development rather than changing the workforce in a way that is not helpful. I know too, I and others have been encouraging the unionization of this industry, the United Food and Commercial Workers, and that would be one way to address some of the economic impacts. And then I know other cities have considered doing economic impact assessments if you are going to do some larger-scale stuff. So I think for those things that might be larger scale and might impact other areas or that might get closer to our residential areas, we want to, you know, proceed with caution on that. But I think the staff has a very good framework for some of the initial changes, and it's been vetted also with the stakeholders, which is, which is good. So I appreciate that this discussion, and we'll take this to our Public Safety Committee and come back with some work-study session items and a proposed ordinance for the council, full council to consider at the second meeting in May or the first meeting in June. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Sarmiento?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, we certainly don't want to violate the Brown Act and have it go to multiple committees. I think, though, you know, to the extent that the Public Safety Committee is one more forum for there to be some discussion, but I think, you know, there really can't, there really can't be any decision-making until it comes back to the council.
Counsel, yes.
And that's why I think, you know, it begins here, it goes to the committee for maybe another round of discussion, but we should know from you when it comes back to the full council so we can make those decisions. And Mr. Acting City Manager, what are your thoughts on it coming, what's the timeline for coming back to this, to the council?
Thank you. Yes, as far, I mean, from a staff perspective, I think the recommendation needs to be that we phase, it must, it has to be a phased approach. So there are many things that we can do in terms of improving Measure BB, the ordinance. Easy, low-hanging fruit, we're calling, like the signage, operation hours, delivery services, let's see, there's also testing and R&amp;D, all those elements, the cash limits, those can be done fairly quickly. And we think, working together, we could possibly bring something back for City Council consideration the first meeting in June. Okay? Now, the other elements, the additional uses, so, which is called indoor cultivation, manufacturing production, there's also distribution, those elements do need more research, and in particular from a planning and building perspective, because we do not have the expertise on hand. We would need to go out and seek additional assistance in terms of what staffing levels we would need, what are the operating standards that these facilities could operate under, how do you handle hazardous waste materials that are produced, what type machinery, what type of chemicals would you allow? And that does require body of work. Our Planning and Building Department has been doing some research on this, but bringing something of that magnitude in June, I think we need to set realistic expectations at this point.
Right. So I think my direction would be, and, you know, see if the council considers this or indulges this. And I think the idea was when Councilman Benavides and I spoke about this, was to do exactly that. In other words, it's almost, it's almost a dual element, you know, direction. First, to bring it back to council to handle some of the issues that you've had, that you mentioned in the PowerPoint, which are fairly simple, things that you've dealt with and things that, quite frankly, have been asked for for a very long time by the operators. And so, no reason to delay on those. I think we can bring those back, which you say, you know, first meeting in June, which I think is fine. I think for the study session, that's what we could do, maybe even 30 days out from that, to do something where it's just, where we're discussing, you know, what is it, you know, what do these involve, you know, what, you know, what are the revenue benefits to it, you know, again, are we, we're not talking about displacing businesses or manufacturing operations, but there's some dormant space in our M1, M2 zone. So these are opportunities that would be, as an emerging industry, and that's why I think there is a real economic development to this as well. So I, so I don't, we're not, at least it wasn't my direction to say, bring back the larger conversation. In fact, for adoption, you know, let's adopt the ones that the industry has been asking for, some of the low-hanging fruit, but, you know, maybe soon after that, in short order, let's do a study session on the more, on the expansion of the ancillary industries to this. So, you know, that would be my direction for staff at this point.
So is that direction?
Madam City Attorney, can you draft that into a motion?
Yes, I just think the motion would be to address each of the items which you formally described, including the adjustment of hours, relaxing signage, allowing testing, research and development, looking at the cash on hand and delivery services. And we would go back to the public safety with some specific regulations, like the form of a draft ordinance, which we think we could do fairly quickly. And then if the Public Safety Committee makes a recommendation, we'll bring it right to council. You could have your first, second reading and adopt it fairly quickly. We were thinking maybe early June.
So for the...
Phase one.
Low-hanging fruit, I think, the first meeting in June, and that would allow us to have further discussion on the additional uses.
And that would just depend on the recommendation that you get. We'd give some draft language to the Public Safety Committee, and then they could make whatever recommendation they want to make to the full council.
There are additional elements from an administrative standpoint that could help us in the city be more successful. So we would also make recommendations in terms of making some changes tied to the auditing procedures that we have in place in the ordinance, codifying established administrative policies, reputation process, transferability of permits. All these elements are critical for us to be able to operate very efficiently and as well. It'll transition into helping the industry be successful as well.
Well, it's not an exhaustive list, so I think whatever, you know, staff sees as ways to improve the measure and improve the operations oversight and monitoring, you know, those would be welcome, I think, for the council to consider.
And we've been keeping a list of those items as we've implemented, and we've said, oh, we could have done this better, we could do that. So we could have all those administrative operational items in one category, and then the council-generated items in the next.
Perfect. So, you know, that sounds like a motion, and I'll go ahead and move that.
First and a second, we have comment from Solorio, and first Benavides, and then Solorio.
I would respectfully say, though, that for us to adopt these type of items and then send it to Public Safety Committee, again, to vote on the same thing, to then bring back in June, does not make a lot of sense.
My recommendation was we take it to Public Safety.
Yes.
So they can vet the details.
Consider those actions there, yes.
And the Public Safety would be then making a recommendation for the council.
And then we send it back.
Correct.
So I think, I don't know that we really need a motion on this, other than to say that, that's the expectation. And I could see how, after the Public Safety Committee considers those items, sends something back to the council, and maybe there's a work-study session in July or August, you know, a month or so afterwards on the other things. I see that making sense, but for us to adopt some of these individual items that are in the exact presentation that our Public Safety Committee meeting's doing, for us to approve it as a whole, then send it to committee to consider the same thing and bring it back, that doesn't make any sense.
So Councilwoman Solorio, I don't think you understood what the motion I was making. I think when Madam City Attorney was reciting it, it was a little bit more clear.
Well, why don't you recite it then, if you know it?
Simply, the motion is to go ahead and send this to the Public Safety Committee, but for it to come back to the council once you guys have had another opportunity to discuss.
Sure, and that's what I'm suggesting as well.
So nobody's going to adopt anything, but it's talked about those lists of issues.
Excellent, excellent.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Motion carries. Councilman Benavides, I know you had a comment.
Just the one thing, and I appreciate the fact that staff made mention that there have been some items that you have been making note of as far as cleanup language that would be of interest to city and to operations on our side. I know that when we did discuss this sometime back at the Public Safety Committee and suggested doing that exactly, and if there's anything, at this point, we're talking about is providing a certain amount of concessions to the operators, and it's, I think, important for us to look at and consider if there's anything else that would be our ask, if you will. And one of the things that has been discussed is the signage, we're talking about relaxing signage on the specific dispensaries, there's, they're, one of the concerns our community has had is the billboards along freeway sign, you know, freeway billboards that highlight, you know, just promote their business, and it's, there's, anyway, there might be some, you know, give and take there, where, you know, would be of interest to the city to be able to kind of address in a better, more tasteful way on how, you know, some of that promotion businesses is done, but maybe by providing more hours of operation and other, you know, some of these other items might help their business in a way that would be, you know, win-win type of situation. Address some community concerns, but also support the business and their operation. That was my comment.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Benavides. We're now moving into public comment, so thank you all who are out there in the audience for your patience. Start with Mary Ann Hare, followed by Peter Katz.
Thank you to the City Council for allowing me to speak. My name is Mary Ann Hare, and I am currently the President of the Board of Directors of Assistance League of Santa Ana. We have had an active chapter for 80 years in Santa Ana, and we're currently at first in flower. We've been there since 1951. In addition, we are a nonprofit, and we pay property taxes. Just to make that very clear. I am here to address the homeless situation in Santa Ana, and specifically in our neighborhood and how it affects us at our campus. We have a busy thrift shop that is open five days a week, our offices and chapter house, where meetings and events are held, a dental center, and various other programs throughout the year. Just last Friday, April 28th, we awarded $21,000 scholarships to students graduating from Santa Ana Unified School District, excuse me. I'm very tired, I've been sitting in that chair for almost six hours waiting to do this. We had a full day of interviews with students and their teachers at our campus. Now I would like to give you an idea of what is currently happening at our campus with regard to the homeless situation in Santa Ana. On April 21st, just a week before those interviews with the students occurred, a man was found on our roof of our thrift shop. After a large police presence, including a helicopter, the man was removed from the roof. He told the police he had been praying, and he was not arrested and was let go. The police did not conduct any further inspection of the campus or buildings. Somehow, this man or another man completely knocked out our power to our building, so we had to close down early. The second incident occurred a bit later that same day, when our alarm went off, approximately 30 minutes after everyone had left. Judy Chatter, a member of our board who is here with me tonight, went back down to the campus to rearm the alarm and then heard a knocking or banging sound above the thrift shop. She left the building immediately and called the police. I got down there as quickly as I could, by which time many police officers were there. A bit later, there was also a police dog, helicopter, fire engine, ambulance. Ultimately, the police surrounded the area, the roof, and entered with the police dog and determined there was a person in our building. To make a long story short, the man was apprehended and arrested. He was an IV drug user, not mentally stable, and probably homeless. He also told the police he was conducting religious rituals.
Mary Ann, your, the light is red. If you can please conclude.
After sitting for six hours, I'll conclude. I won't bloviate like the City Council has been doing all night. We are appalled that the City of Santa Ana and Orange County has not addressed the homeless situation in this city. We have been here for 80 years, helping the residents of Santa Ana. We have spent millions of dollars on aid to Santa Ana residents, providing millions of dollars through school uniforms, scholarships, dental care and more. Regardless of the number of new locks, barred windows and entrances, security cameras and security personnel we put in place at Assistance League, at some point, if this problem is not addressed as it should be, we will have to shut our doors. I want to know what the City of Santa Ana is doing about this problem, and I actually heard some of it tonight, just serendipity, I guess. There are numerous incidents that have occurred just over the last few months. Like I said, we've been here 80 years.
Mary, thank you. If you can please conclude. Thank you.
We're finished, please.
In addition, I was on jury duty for three weeks on a murder trial that just ended last week, and I was in the courthouse on the eighth floor looking down at that homeless camp. It's not safe to walk around there. You can't walk down Ross, down to Fourth Street to have lunch. So I'm just saying, if we have to shut our doors, it's going to affect the city, it's going to affect the children of this city. And we have older women working in that campus every single day. We have to have, we always have security.
And they come as volunteers.
We are volunteers.
I totally understand, Mary. I actually participated in your carousel to raise money, helped raise $4,500 for your program. I actually donate my clothes to the Assistance League, and so I've done that every year, been very supportive, so I certainly understand your situation. I think many members of this council have been very supportive, doing, actually supporting what you guys have been doing with the downtown and promoting the restaurants and the contributions. So we're certainly aware of who you are and the great work that you all have been doing in our community. We certainly understand there's a homeless problem, we do need to address that. If you can please leave your notes with us so we could have our deputy, our acting chief and our, and our acting city manager, so that we can set up a meeting and see how we can address this manner and help you.
Thank you. And I just want to say, we don't hate the homeless people, we help them too with outreach programs.
Correct. I definitely understand your frustration.
Okay. We don't hate them, and I feel sorry for them. They need help. So I just want that to be very clear. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Peter Katz?
Good evening, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Peter. I guess I have to give you, I have to give you an extra minute, so.
It's fairly late, and we don't have much of an audience, but I would be remiss if I didn't say a few words as President of Comm联, and my two board members here of our dear departed friend and colleague, and you name it, Renee Guzman, Lieutenant Colonel Renee Guzman. But you know him as an activist in the community, you knew him with COPD, you knew him with Comm联, you knew him at the senior center, volunteer with the police department. But I want to tell you just a little story about a man that is a true patriot, and as a veteran, I want to thank him for his service because he was a true American patriot. Many people do not know how famous this man was. He has accommodations from every president that was hanging on his wall, from John Kennedy to Barack Obama. Renee Guzman spent 33 years in the Air Force, and he had a lucky break in 1959 or 1960 when then-Senator Lyndon Baines Johnson was coming home to his ranch in Texas, and his driver called in sick. And the officer today tagged Renee to drive Senator Johnson to his ranch, and because Renee was from Texas, he was a good old boy, and Lyndon Johnson loved him, and Lady Bird Johnson loved him even more. And the next morning, he was made his permanent driver. Lyndon Johnson took him everywhere he went when John Kennedy ran for president, and he was tagged as his vice president. Renee went to Washington and spent many nights at the White House driving for LBJ. He spent three summers at Hyannisport with President Kennedy. And in that fatal day in Dallas in 1963, he was in the fifth car of the motorcade when President Kennedy was killed, and he used his body as a shield to protect Vice President Johnson. He flew back to Washington on Air Force One with Lyndon Baines Johnson as the new President of the United States. He spent five years servicing President Johnson. And when Johnson left office and decided not to run for reelection, he got Renee a job driving for General Spicer, who was Supreme Commander of NATO Forces in Europe. He spent five years driving for General Spicer. 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 He spent five years driving him. They went big game hunting in Africa. He has, these are just some of the stories about dear Renee. In American history, he took to the grave a lot of the questions we've been asking, what happened that day in Dallas. And he was sworn to secrecy, and it tore up his family, but that secrecy, he took to the grave, and he was a true American patriot. And I could tell you so many stories about him. But as a veteran, he only shared many of these stories with fellow veterans, and that's the way we are. But, you know, if my dream comes true of building a veteran cemetery at the great park, there will be a marker for Renee there. He was a big part of this city, and I loved him so dearly. And these two guys are up here to keep me from crying because he was really a lovable man, and he was very humble, and he didn't ask for anything from anyone, and nobody knows how famous this man was, so.
He was a very human being, Peter. I definitely agree. Loved him when he came here.
You know, and we're going to have at the Neighborhood Heroes Award and the Most Beautiful Yard event at the Bowers Museum in June for the Comm联 meeting. I've had the Heritage Museum dig up an interview they did with Renee, and we're going to show it and give him the proper send-off. But he was a very, very dear friend of mine. I've known him for a number of years, and, I mean, he is the heart of this city. And this was his love. He could have settled anywhere in the world, and nobody knows what a decent and humble man he was. And so, I know you're going to adjourn the meeting in his honor, but I know how much you guys knew about Renee, but I wanted to share that part of American history with you. So, thank you.
Thank you so very much, Peter. We greatly appreciate, yes, your testimony.
I also feel a card. Can I speak at this moment, if I may?
Irma, yes, you are next, so please do.
I'm just thankful for the opportunity to share many years with Renee as a family, as a father, as a mentor. And it is just an overwhelming experience to see this individual so humble. Many of you have the privilege to work with him, and even though he was, he was a strong individual, you have to know him, you know, all his background to understand why, and yet, he loved Santa Ana like anybody, anybody that I know of. I see this fight that you guys have for bringing businesses to Santa Ana that, like the marijuana dispensaries. He wanted a better Santa Ana. He believed in education. He believed in empowering the students, the residents. It was so sad for him to see this neighborhood deploring. He used to own apartments over in Highland, in shelter apartments right there. And it's unbelievable that it's still the same. Forty-some years, this is still nothing but crime and drugs and gangs. You know, his efforts all these years in his life, I don't want to say it was worthless, but let's please help him to keep his memory alive and do something positive for the city and the residents, because we have neighborhood, neighborhoods in Santa Ana that are so in need. We don't want no more drugs. We don't want no more gangs. We have to have a quality of life for all the residents in Santa Ana. I really appreciate you taking today, at the end of the meeting, to close Renee's name. Many of you are here because he somehow was part of your walk in this life. Thank you so very much.
Great. Thank you, Irma. Thank you. Next, we have Ilia Madlin Spencer, Mr. Ilia Teschen, followed by Robert. So, Robert, if you could please just come up by your father, and so we can get you both.
Good evening, Mayor Portem and respectful City Council members. My name is Ilia Seglin. About two months ago, me, Robert, and Michael Klabnikin had a meeting with City Attorney Sonny Carvalho. I talked about the case. I gave her CD, and I confirmed her to share the CD with every member of City Council. Why I wanted to talk about the case, and she promised me that she will respond, because this is a case of kidnapping innocent people medically, enforcing them to toxic drugs, torturing, robbing from every human dignity, recycling, medical experiment, extermination, profiteering. Few minutes from here, you have a court. Fourth floor is a probate court. I want that you would visit this court and see, listen, especially Judge Hubbard, public defender, and what is going on in this court. This is not a place that it should be with dignity and with trust. This is a place of robbing people for money, profiteering, and everything what does not have nothing to do with justice. Rule of law thrown out of the window in probate can go to court.
Sir, if you can please, thank you, Mr. Ilia. Mr. Robert, but before that, yes, I'll say.
Yeah, Madam Mayor Portem, and maybe a question for the city attorney, which maybe has asked before, and I'm reading again here the guidelines for public comments. So, the first set of public comments at the beginning of the meeting are for public comments on items on the agenda, with the exception of, you know, if it's a public hearing, there's a public comment portion there. The second set of public comments, which are at the end of the meeting, are meant for public comments, not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the City Council. I've heard this, this kind father and relative speak on this issue, and I keep asking my colleague here, Councilmember Regus, you know, if we can't help them or somebody can help them. But I think it's really more something in the jurisdiction of the county of Orange or maybe the state of California. So, City Attorney, you probably have given this some thought, and maybe you can offer some suggestion to us as well as these kind individuals, because I also don't want them to waste their time coming time and time again on the same item if it's not in our jurisdiction, which is probably what we haven't been able to help to date. But if you could kind of speak to that a little bit, City Attorney, that would be appreciated.
Councilmember Solario, actually, at the request of Councilmember Sarmiento at a previous meeting, I did meet with both individuals. I invited them to our office, and I have been provided with a DVD that has an extensive collection of research and documents and court cases that go way back. We requested that information in an effort to determine whether we might be able to refer them to another agency that might be helpful. When these individuals first came to the City Council to comment, one of our immediate reactions was that this is not within the jurisdiction. And the City Council does have the ability to make a motion and vote and decide that you won't hear public comment if you can make that finding that's not within your jurisdiction. There have been moments when the individuals will directly say that they're complaining about the operations of police officers here at the city in relation to one of their action items. They do that normally to just then be able to talk about other items. It is within your rules of decorum and procedure. You have a resolution that does restrict public comment to items that are within your jurisdiction, so it certainly is an option. I don't recommend that if we haven't exhausted all of our other alternatives, and that's one of the reasons why I invited them in, to see what I could find. The individuals are really requesting a full-blown hearing before the City Council. They want an opportunity to be heard. They feel that no matter how many times they show up at the City Council or at the County Board of Supervisors meeting, that people are not listening to them and not giving them an opportunity.
But in whose jurisdiction is it?
In terms of jurisdiction, it really is a state licensing and state health care agency. There's multiple agencies here. What my explanation has been, that even if they had a hearing before this body, there is nothing we can do for them. My goal, quite frankly, in meeting as a constituent, because their son and brother is a constituent, a resident of Santa Ana and the home in which he resides, is to try to find them resources. The problem here, quite frankly, and I'll just tell them, they've had multiple lawyers. They've had multiple people try to help them. I think it is a very complicated situation, but in my own review of what's happened, I'm not sure that they have very many legal options remaining to them.
Well, I guess just my last point then, you know, to these two kind individuals. When you speak, if you could try to connect it to something the city can do, a particular department as an example. If not, you know, this just may not be the most appropriate avenue for you. Thank you.
And I know these gentlemen from the Board of Supervisors for years, and very, very nice, and I know you're very respectful when you come in, and, you know, I know the Board of Supervisors had, at one point, kind of, well, a few times, said they couldn't help you in the jurisdiction.
Mr. Ilia, just in the interest, you know, as a chair, I have the ability to really ask someone or not to speak, but if you all want to agendize this, because we really can't talk about this unless it's agendized. But, yeah, we're going into more than brief comments, but it really, it's the discretion of, you know, as the mayor and whoever's chairing the meeting of who can speak or not. And so, you know, just in the interest of time, just, you know, Robert's been standing here for quite some time. Please, Robert, I want to be respectful. I certainly want, respect their rights.
Hello, this is Robert Seglin, brother of Nate Seglin. As I've stated previously, my brother Nate Seglin has been withheld within the 903 South Harmon Group Home in Santa Ana, 92704, and I would like to address the misrepresentation of your city attorney of the case. It's quite simple and not complex. My brother was released by three different judges, by three different writs of habeas corpus. And so, the case, from a judicial point of view, is very simple. He's illegally confined. Moreover, he was, the conservatorship was illegally removed despite the third release. His third release and the third writ of habeas corpus after three separate kidnappings, one in San Diego, twice in Irvine, by the same Irvine Police Department. That's the, of course, that's the Irvine Police Department. That's their liability, but it's a very simple case of multiple kidnappings.
Mr. Robert, can you just please make sure you connect it towards the jurisdiction? Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so, right now, he's currently within the Santa Ana Group Home, 903 South Harmon Street, as I've stated before. And with regard to, obviously, you have Adult Protective Services who have had over 170 reports of abuse, and they have to have a lot of reports and so forth. And, of course, that would be also, that's the Orange County Board of Supervisors in Santa Ana. I understand that usually, police are usually involved in more like hands-on situation or serious situation, but this is a case where you need somebody to gather information, reports, and so forth. And so, my frustrate, well, my father's frustration with the police is that if, there was a few times when we were able to come into the home, and they'd come in and visit and do their own evaluation, and they'd listen to my brother and see how he's doing, and they've seen before that he's been shaking either, or he has abrasions on his body and so forth, but nevertheless, those reports have not been documented. So, while usually, the reason why there's a big problem here is because in the Irvine Police Department, they wrote paragraphs, maybe over eight pages, when they kidnapped my brother from his home. Why, they were able to write a lot of stuff ahead.
Robert, thank you. Can you please conclude? Thank you.
So, the issue is, if they would write the reports, that would be helpful, then the judge would be forced to release him.
Fabi Hakome, followed by Jackie Quijera, and we need translation services. Is Fabi here? Okay, great. Followed by Jackie Quijera, who needs translation, so we could come down. And then Victoria. Thank you, Fabi.
Thank you. Hi, good night, council members. My name is Fabi Hakome. I am the deportation defense organizer with Orange County Immigrant Youth United. I am here in front of you tonight for two reasons. The first one is to, I did bring some of the transgender women, and along with the other volunteers that have been helping with this project, that have been released, as you can clearly see them in front of you, from the Santa Ana jail. We are here also to ask for your support. There are still 10 women inside of the jail, and ICE is not allowing them out on parole, and they're not allowing them out under any, in any way. And their cases are actually very, very different because they're, they're very mixed, so there are definitely some folks that are up on appeal. We wanted to ask if there's any way y'all could make a call, send an email advocating for their release as well. We do have sponsors lined up. We do have housing lined up for them. It's just more of them being able to, of ICE releasing them. And so, also, thank you for the support on this project, as you can see the fruit of both the organizing that our organizations have been doing on the ground, as well as y'all taking the right steps towards not allowing the jail to continue. So, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Jackie, followed by Victoria. Jackie?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Jacqueline Quijada, y vengo a exponer, vengo a exponer la necesidad que hay de ser escuchada como una mujer trans recién salida de la detención de Santana. Creo de que ya es bastante todo el trauma que hemos vivido al salir de nuestros países buscando refugio acá en Estados Unidos, y hemos atravesado muchas circunstancias duras y difíciles que nos han llevado a muchas de nosotras a tener problemas traumantes psicológicos en nuestras vidas. Y ahora las chicas que han quedado en la detención vienen ya de sufrir y se están enfrentando a un nuevo problema, el miedo de ser trasladadas, porque ya este fin de semana sabemos que las van a empezar a trasladar para otro estado, para otras detenciones. Creo que ya es bastante lo que ellas están sufriendo, y creo que es necesario de que sus voces sean escuchadas acá afuera, y esperando pues de que ustedes puedan hacer algo por ellas para que ellas no sean removidas para otro lugar, ya que creo que han sufrido bastante en general. Espero pues de su ayuda, ¿verdad?, y que nuestras voces sean escuchadas. Gracias. Buenas noches.
Good evening, Jacqueline Quijada, and I'm here to tell you about the great need of the, to be listened as a trans woman that was just recently released from the detention center. There's, there's a lot of trauma that takes place from us coming, from our countries, seeking refuge in the United States, and then we encounter lots of hardship and more trauma, physical and psychological trauma. And I'm also speaking on behalf of the girls that are still in the detention centers. Now, they have a new problem because they are told that this next Saturday, they're going to be transferred to other places in other states. So, they've suffered enough in their situation, and you need to listen to their voices. You need to do something to help them remain here and not be moved away from here, so please listen to their voices and to their problems.
Great. Victoria, followed by Magli Mendez, and then finally Alex Vega.
Muy buenas noches. Soy Victoria Aguilar. Soy una chica transgénero. Pues yo hace poco también salí de la detención de aquí de Santana. Pues también vengo por lo, porque vengo huyendo de un país discriminativo. Es un país muy peligroso Honduras. Yo soy hondureña. Pues vine aquí a pedir refugio a Estados Unidos. Pues vengo a hablar de las condiciones de la cárcel de Santana, que yo vivía con una depresión horrible en la cárcel. Y toda una chica transgénero vivimos una depresión en la cárcel porque es un lugar que no estamos adaptadas a ese lugar. Yo no estoy acostumbrada a estar ahí. Entonces, estas chicas necesitan salir porque ellas necesitan que sea pelear su caso afuera porque ellas tienen ese temor de ir a otra cárcel sin saber las condiciones de otra cárcel. Entonces, yo lo único que pido como mujer transgénero y como las chicas que están en la cárcel, que por favor, los ayuden para que las chicas pues puedan salir solamente. Muchas gracias.
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 Good evening. My name is Victoria Aguilar. I'm as a trans woman recently released as well. I had to flee my own country, a country that has lots of discrimination, Honduras. I'm from Honduras, and I'm here seeking refuge, and I'd like to tell you about the conditions in the jail. When I was there, I was deeply depressed when I was in jail. Many women, trans women are there. I'm not, I'm not used to being in a place like that. The girls have a... The girls have lots of needs there. They need to be released so that they can fight their case from, from the outside and not be transferred elsewhere. So, as a trans woman, I ask you to please help them, the trans women as well.
Great. Magli.
Hi, my name is Magali. I'm here to support and uplift the voices of the trans women in the detention center in Santa Ana. People's livelihoods and mental well-being is not a game and it should be taken very seriously. Hearing people's trauma and not taking necessary steps to end its violence, disregarding the real needs of folks that continuously have to fight to just live, and transferring them from one cage to another is also violence. You cannot say you support immigrants while quietly supporting the continuing detainment of people in these traumatic places. That's why I'm here demanding and supporting to help the transfers of the remaining trans women in the detention center by ICE and demanding that you take necessary actions to uplift and have them released. After all, it is because of the Santa Ana contract that they're there in the first place. Thanks.
Thank you. Alex.
First of all, I call myself Santanero for Life, Santanero in the afterlife. No car wash needed, I already got my blood in, free heaven. And about you, Michelle, you look like my sister Teresa, and when I met you, I believe your energy, all the things where you suffered, I know what you suffered. I really do have feelings. My pastor, my advisor has been struck. She lives in San Diego, and because she always told me to pray for electoral officials, city officials, and she is my wife, mother, and pastor. She got a stroke, and my daughter, Alejandrina, born in New Mexico, raised in Santana, doesn't want to bring her to Santana anymore. And it's sad, in my birthday, I couldn't be with her. Last Sunday, she came to Santana, Main Street, her church, and she's not the same. So, I was going to ask her about what she thinks about me supporting and praying electoral, electoral officials, and it's sad, I do not believe in electoral officials anymore. And I do believe police officers, yes, even at the shelter, when they have a problem, they want police. When they have a problem, they want police. Staff, yes. Cortez, I predicted it. I said, he's going to be the next one, and somebody's here that I told him. Gerardo, yeah, he's still in staff. He told me he was going to retire. That's his choice. I don't know. He is still in Parks and Recs. And Cortez, congratulations to the new chief of police, congratulations, because it doesn't matter. They do their work. Public safety, I said, number one. And when they use public safety as excuse for parties, like I was on early probation programs. Thomas Gordon want to be mayor. Amescua want to be mayor. And Michelle, I heard you want to be the manager. City manager, oh my God. No, we need somebody that took that on school, like public, yes, well, public administration decrease.
Alex, please conclude.
And no, she had a map. And Villegas, the new blood, 2018, you know what's, Pato Cojo, Lambda, yes, December, three Lambda's. And Villegas, yeah, he's here for the long run.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Thank you. We are now going to move to city manager comments, and for the record, I don't want to be city manager of Santa Ana, especially not working with this council. That is for sure.
Just a couple of comments. The Santa Ana Works Center, in partnership with the Employment Development Department, hosted a summer youth fair this past Saturday. Forty-five businesses were in attendance, as well as over 400 youth were there to seek Second item here is that the city of Santa Ana is going to be hosting the 18th Annual Cinco de Mayo Festival this weekend. It'll be Saturday, May 6, as well as Sunday, May 7. The event is free and open to the public. Festivities begin at 12:00 PM on both days, and events offer carnival rides, food, merchandise booths, as well as live entertainment. So, we encourage you to go attend.
Great. Thank you, Robert. We are now going to move to council comments, and I'll start with you, Councilman Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I know it's late, so let's be very brief. And, you know, I like the visuals, by the way, though, Robert, that, you know, the visuals make a difference when you speak and you put something up there, so let's, let's keep those going. I know that Councilman Dinajero wasn't feeling well, and he did want me to mention something that was important to him. He tried to hang out as much, as long as he could, but he was successful in bringing the National Forensics Association, which is a college national debate tournament here to the city for 2019. And that's a big deal because about 1,000 participants come, and that means that they're going to be coming and, you know, staying in our hotels, eating at our restaurants, visiting the city, and spending money here. More than, more importantly, they could be good ambassadors and messengers, that the city is very accommodating. So, let's tip our hat to Councilman Dinajero for that accomplishment. And my brief comment is, I know that we're going to be adjourning in Rene Guzman's memory. He was a good friend, so, you know, thank you for those of you who came and spoke on his behalf. I, you know, when Idma called me with the news, I was just stunned, you know, because I, you know, was going through some photographs that I had, and he and I and Idma were in a photograph right in front of the police department when they were having their police fair, and we were under a canopy because it was a really hot day. But he was, you know, just always a gentleman and just loved this community. And I don't think I ever met anybody who was as selfless as he was, and I didn't know the story that you told, Peter, about, you know, how special and what an important place in history, you know, he found himself in. So, that makes our loss even greater, right? Because he wasn't able to share that with as many people as I wish we would have. It would have been great for him to go to, you know, elementary schools and tell that story himself, because it's just so important to know that he played such an important role here in our city. But, you know, finally, I just want to tell our staff thank you, and the public out there. I know that, you know, there's been a lot of harsh headlines and, you know, articles written about the city and its turmoil and its condition. You know, we faced these things before, and we've had some, you know, difficult headlines, and we've overcame, overcame them, and I think we're going to overcome these as well. I really do believe that we are, you know, I'm really optimistic about, you know, where we're going and, you know, who we are. So, these are bumps, these are transitional moments. They don't define us, nor are they, nor are they going to be things that we can't overcome. But for staff, thank you for having that trust and confidence in us. I think what we're trying to do is, more than anything, stabilize the organization because we know it was in a place where it was very fragile for a moment. And I think that, you know, you'll find that those of us that are trying to work towards that end are trying to make responsible decisions so you all and your families feel safe and feel like you're in an organization where you have a future. And that's what was troubling me when I'd look in the faces of some of our staff and directors, and I'd see, you know, real uncertainty, and that's difficult to wonder, work under those conditions. So, I personally want to thank you. I want to thank the public for understanding. Be patient with us, we're going to come through this. You know, I think those of us who are working towards that end are going to make sure that we, you know, work our way, work our way out of this. And with that, I'll bid everybody a good night.
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento. Councilman Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I also want to thank the members of the community, our neighborhood leaders that came and shared about Rene Guzman. When I learned about his passing, I also was stunned and shocked. I was just, no more than a couple of months ago, that Rene came before us and spoke to council, and is always very dedicated, serving our community, volunteer with our police department for many years, and man with a big heart. So, thank you, Peter, for sharing some of that background history that we didn't know, that I didn't know about Rene and how much he shared not only, and served not only our community and our city the last number of years, but our country. So, thank you. You know, the, just one, one comment that I did want to, want to make earlier in the, in, it seems like a long time ago, and I guess it was, but the beginning of the meeting, when we talked about, when we're dealing with our consent calendar items, there were, there were a number of items that we discussed with regard to Bike Safety Month, and at the beginning of the meeting, some recognitions that we had here. And I go back to some of the conversation that we had last meeting when we're talking about priorities for the city and dealing with the challenges. There was an agenda item that Councilmen had put on with regard to spike in some of the activities that have been going on out in the, throughout the city, and concerns around safety. And one of the items that, that was discussed, some of the members of the, of the public community came out and were encouraging us as a city to invest in our young people as a way of prevention, as a way of long-term public safety. And I, it came to mind because some of what was discussed this, at the beginning of this meeting, was the investment that we made, a very intentional decision by the part of the council, by, by the council, to prioritize active transportation, where we had an active transportation coordinator position created. We've seen, we're seeing the results. One of the comments that was made, $30 million that have been identified and that have come in as new dedicated grant monies towards active transportation, pedestrian and bike safety. When we think about our safe, when we think about our city, we think about investing in, in long-term public safety and in the youth of our city, some of other members of the, of the council here have mentioned the priorities that have been laid out, some of those in our, in the fiscal, in the budget, trial budget presentation, one of the priorities was youth services and, and again, investing in our youth. So, I just wanted to bring back, I know we gave some direction to staff to look at some of the options, one of those potentially identifying a position within the city that would be specifically geared toward similar to the active transportation coordinator, some type of, of youth services coordinator that would pull together and communicate and, and highlight and prioritize services towards youth, coordinating services at nonprofits, have out in the community, services within the city, so that, again, we look at the long-term support of our young people. I just wanted to make sure that, that we didn't, you know, lose sight of that, that possibility, and wanted to bring that back up to staff for consideration as we look into budget preparation and such. So, that's my, my only comment. I think it's just timely for us to discuss that as we discuss budget and we discuss just the, yeah, certain concerns and opportunities within the city. So, with that, just want to thank all speakers and council for our work tonight, and our staff for hanging in there with us. With that, have a good night. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Viegas.
Real quick, I want to just thank the staff, especially Hrardam White, Robert, all the staff here for the hard work on that presentation today, and I'm sure there's more, more work to come. Thank you very much.
Councilman Solario.
Yes, thank you. Just a few things. Yeah, first two, I want to also thank Hrardam White, who's still in the city, you know, is back to be in Parks and Rec. He does an outstanding job, and I know he worked a lot on this budget presentation and, you know, great handing off of the baton to acting city manager, Robert Cortez. And I know Francisco Gutierrez isn't here right now, but he and his staff were here earlier. Fellow anteater, it's a great, great job, everybody, putting this presentation, and, you know, you're laying out the facts and the information, and, you know, as policymakers up here, hopefully, will make some good decisions. We're going to balance the budget. It's not going to be easy this year or next, but, you know, I know we have the, the willing commitment to, to do that. I do want to also wish everybody a happy Cinco de Mayo. Enjoy the Cinco de Mayo. We have a, a great celebration in, in the downtown. Just don't drink and drive, don't text and drive. And, you know, with that, I just want to thank my colleagues also for another long meeting, but I think a productive meeting. So, thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Jose. And I will be very quick. I did want to give an update on our gun violence convening. It was a, a successful one. We actually had a post-meeting today at 2:00 at the Santa Fe High School District, and we're scheduling another meeting with those that signed the sign-in sheet, that wish to participate and have greater participation in what we're trying to accomplish. And so, that meeting is going to be set for May 19 at the Life Center, and more details will be coming soon. But I did send the note, I actually took notes on behalf of the city there today, and I, I sent that to our staff. And so, definitely, with the notes that we're taking at the convening, the notes that I took today at the meeting with the Santa Fe High School District and some of the other partners, if you can, please share that with the city council. And in that discussion, we did agree, Councilman Benavides, and the community also agreed that they wanted some form of, from the city, somebody that can coordinate the efforts in regards to prevention intervention in the city. And so, we heard that loud and clear at the convening. We talked about that today. We really believe that is something that we should move forward and other things. But one of the things that I think we tend, that we didn't really talk about at the gun violence convening, and we were able to push it, but is the intervention component. We always talked about the prevention and the suppression side, but there is an intervention component that we need to really hone in on and focus on, because I think we've made commitments to the, a lot to the prevention side. When you look at the school district's resources, all the nonprofits that are here, you know, when you add up all the resources, there's a lot. And I think what we had a discussion about is that how do we leverage and create those linkages with those nonprofits, with the faith base, create some kind of toolkit of, of all that information? And then also, from our CDBG perspective, possibly adding some additional criteria. We're talking about jobs and how do we make sure that some of the nonprofit organizations create jobs, so when we provide them money, that there's a criteria, that they have to have internships that are paid, so that we have a pipeline for future folks within the nonprofit sector. So, we had that discussion. We think it's something that, you know, brought our discussion with the city and the other partners, but our real focus is the intervention and wanting to create some kind of initiative where we partner up with the public safety, we partner up with the County of Orange Social Services Probation, partner up with some of the faith-based community and those intervention, identifying who's doing intervention work. And so, that's where we're at. There was about 50 to, 52 people that signed on, that had interest, and so, we're going to be meeting with them and doing some kind of workshops with them and trying to identify some other key areas, but really coming back. And we're really trying to be very focused on really what can we do and what results, because you could have many meetings and get nothing done. And so, wanting to be very intentional, and so, that's what we're doing. But we are going to be convening on May 19, and hopefully, our staff could share that information. The other thing that I did want to talk about, because I did go on a tour in regards to the food produce and, and the taco trucks, and I know the item has been continued, but it's quite amazing when you actually go out into the community and you actually go visit. Sometimes, we, we pay attention to things that others may not pay attention to. One thing that I did observe, and that really is a public safety hazard, but I believe that there are resolutions and solutions to helping the food produce and trucks, is that they have generators, and those generators are on for eight to 10 hours. And that is emitting carbon dioxide, it's emitting CO and NOx in particular, and those two last items that I'm mentioning of CO2 and NOx have major health implications, in particular into the deep of our lungs, that create asthma. And we all know the statistics here in the Santa Fe High School District here in this city, we have high asthma rates, in particular for our schoolchildren. And so, we have a lot of these food trucks, we have a lot of these food produce trucks that are near our schools. And so, I brought that to the attention of Hassan and his staff and others, that we have to address that. You know, having those generators for eight to 10 hours, we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint, very supportive, but we also have to take into consideration these other health impacts and finding out ways of how can we help. New York, I did, I did research, and New York has changed all its, you know, food trucks and, into CNG, and they created opportunities. I sit on the Mobile Resource Pollution Committee, which is called the MSRC, and they, we provide funding every single year for, for companies and, and, and government who want to, to, to move to CNG and other forms of renewable energies. And so, I want to make sure that if there's opportunities... And so I want to make sure that if there's opportunities, how can we have those conversations with the food trucks and the food produce so that, one, we can move them into that direction and have a plan because I don't believe that they can continue to really operate this way. It's not, it's not, it's not safe and it's not healthy. I'll tell you that the 20 minutes there that I was eating a taco and I had a taco and a tostada at two of the trucks and the food was great, but, you know, my head, I started to get a headache. And I was just like, wow, you know, you're eating that and you're, all those fumes coming in and I told them, look, I'm not here, I don't want to penalize you, but did you know, you know, these are some of the health hazards. They totally get it and so we need to come together and how we can help them address this because we don't want them, we want, you know, we want to make sure they were able to assist these entrepreneurs, but at the same time, the quality of life of our residents is very important. Yes, Jose?
Yes, Peter, my, one quick point, I do want to have a second meeting with Hassan, this one with Hassan and Code Enforcement Director Alvaro Nunez on the draft ordinance. I too did a recent mini tour and ate some cheese quesadillas that were very good, very tasty. The one there by North Market on South Main Street. And one idea came up with respect to the generator as an alternative and it'd be more expensive, but maybe something that they'd be worth, willing to pitch in and that is just hardwiring and having some access to some electrical hookups nearby. You know, easier said than done, but doable, you know, with some resource and I think that would address also the issue that you're having, but for them to, having to carry all this stuff and the heat and the issues associated and the lack of availability of that or wires, etc., isn't ideal either. So as a midterm thing, something for us to consider and I think that addresses safety, business and health concerns. So just wanted to put that on their radar and maybe when we meet later this week, we can also talk about that as well, thank you.
And I just, the locations that we went, very clean, very active. And I also talked about possibly doing some pop-ups for some of these food trucks where they're with private business and how can they partner and put chairs and tables and additional trash, you know, receptors. You know, I think place matters and being able to congregate around these food trucks, the excitement, especially over in the business sector where in particular UCI is by the courthouse, you saw a lot of the folks from the UCI Medical Center coming out and that's how they eat lunch and so we have to be creative and definitely supportive, but making sure that we move in the right direction. And so I know we have a bigger approach in how we're going to move forward from a land use perspective and our general plan. And so I know we're in good hands with you Hassan and your staff, so definitely respect the work that you do as a practitioner. And then finally, just want to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. Mother's Day is coming up and I know we tend to sometimes, yeah, I always seem to bring that up. You know, I lost my mother seven years ago and not easy discussing that, but, you know, wanted to wish Sonia a happy Mother's Day. Maria left ill and just wanting to wish you all, wish all your wives and your mothers alive and the rest of the city who are mothers and also fathers that actually are raising kids without their mothers. And so I think when we talk about the traditional aspect of a mother or father, we have different roles here in this community because sometime it is the male and there's not a female and they are raising their children as well. So I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. And with that, we're going to adjourn in memory of Renee D. Guzman. Renee passed away a few weeks ago, we want to publicly acknowledge his life and legacy by adjourning this evening's meeting and his memory. Renee was a very active member of our community and the face of the Riverview West Neighborhood Association as well as the West End COP organization. His commitment to the community extended beyond his neighborhood and to the children as a member of the San Antonio High School District Quarterly Bond Oversight Committee. For all his involvement, he received a Neighborhood Hero Award in 2016. We extend our heartfelt condolences to the Guzman family and for the numerous family and friends that were touched by his warm smile and helping hand. Over my 10 years in office, you know, Renee was tough and, you know, I will say, but a gentle soul and someone that was always active and truly cared about this community and so he will be missed. And if we can please send the adjournment to his family, it'd be greatly appreciated. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.